It was a wonderful sight to see the world leaders pay respect to the father of the nation at Rosghat. They all endorse the universal idea of peace and non-violence espoused by Mahatma Gandhi and its relevance in today's world. Prime Minister has himself made a strong pitch for reform of the international institutions, which must keep pace with the changing times. This is important for true multilateralism in a divided world to ensure stability, growth, and development. The focus of the G20 has moved from a mere economic-centric to a much broader human-centric approach. The priority accorded to realizing sustainable development goals, reforming international financial institutions, establishing digital public infrastructure, promoting a green development pact, encouraging women-led development, taking global initiative on digital health, recognizing the role of tradition, medicine are praiseworthy. The energizing of the international economy, availability of greater resources for development, expansion of tourism, global workplace opportunities, stronger food security through millet production and consumption, addressing the skill gaps and mobility, mapping global value chains, supporting MSMEs, and a deeper commitment to biofuels are among the prominent outcomes of the G20 summit that will benefit the entire nation. The launch of India-Middle East Europe Economic Corridor and the Global Biofuels Alliance during the summit are significant. These initiatives have sowed the seeds for a connected future in which India will continue to play important role. India's climate leadership was visible with the adoption of high-level principles on life for building pro-planet people and recognition by the developed world to substantially scale up investment and climate finance to meet climate goals. India's presidency achieved new milestones in setting up new G20 working groups on women and disaster risk reduction as also a new G20 engagement group on startups. The Deccan High Level Principles on Food Security, Gandhinagar Road Map on Land Initiative, Goa Road Map on Tourism, Chennai High Level Principles on Blue and Ocean Economy, and the Kashi Cultural Pathway will provide global guidance in various sectors for times to come and make our people proud. Honorable Members, next month, our parliament would have the honor to host the Parliament 20 Forum as part of our G20 presidency. I request each member of this August House to participate in welcoming the world to the mother of democracy and building on the theme Vasudev Kutumkam, One Earth, One Family, One Future. I am confident that this August House will join me in commending Prime Minister's leadership and recognizing the enthusiasm of the people of India and appreciating the contribution of all organizations and individuals on this historic achievement. Papers to be laid on the table, Secretary General.
Sir, with your kind permission, I rise to lay on the table a statement in English and Hindi showing the bills passed by the Houses of Parliament during the 260th session of Rajya Sabha and assented to by the President.
Honorable Members, I extend you warm greetings on the beginning of 260 first session of Rajya Sabha. Honorable Members, this session makes available a befitting opportunity to reflect and introspect on parliamentary journey of 75 years, starting from Svidhan Sabha, achievements, experiences, memories, and learnings. Traversing over seven-decade journey from Svidhan Sabha to the present day in Amritkal, these hallowed precincts have witnessed many milestones. Honorable Members, this journey had historical moments from tryst with destiny at midnight of 15th August 1947 to unfolding of innovative forward-looking GST regime at midnight of June 30, 2017, and now this day. Delibrations in the Constituent Assembly in various sessions, spread over three years, exemplified, decorum, and held the debate. Contentious and highly divisive issues were negotiated in a spirit of consensus. There is enough takeaway from this for us all. Healthy debate is hallmark of a bosoming democracy. We must eschew confrontational posturing, weaponizing disruption and disturbance as a strategy would never secure sanction of the people. We all are constitutionally ordained to nurture democratic values and must so justify and vindicate the trust of the people. We owe it to the nation to optimally utilize the opportunity and time to subserve public interest. Honorable Members, this is also an occasion to recall and glorify our tenacious freedom fighters. They were the pioneers in truce sense to fight for democratic rights. Our erudite constitutional forefathers, they were far-sighted visionaries who after much deliberations and discussions provided us a constitution which has stood the test of time. Our statesmen and politicians have time and again respected and abided by constitutional ideals and have democratized the constitution itself by taking assistance to the masses. The civil service, the bureaucrats who have been steadfast day in and day out in ensuring that the state machinery works in a free and fair manner. And finally, it is the masses whose deep faith and unflinching belief in the parliamentary democracy sustained it and thwarted the worst possible attempt to deny democratic values. The success of our democracy, honorable members, is thus a collective concerted endeavor of we, the people of India. Expectedly, the honorable members during the course of the day would unleash the house and enlighten the people at large as regards our 75-year journey and unfold vision for years ahead. Honorable Members, use of wit, humor, sarcasm, and even acerbic comments inside parliament are important inalienable facet of a vigorous democracy. These days, we don't get to hear such light-hearted exchanges. Hopefully, we'll see the revival of wit, humor, and scholarly debates. The hallowed precincts of parliament for years have witnessed highs and lows which we need to reflect and deliberate so as to take our Bharat to its rightful place in 2047 when it celebrates centenary of independence. I now invite the honorable leader of the house, Siripu Shigal, to initiate the discussion on parliamentary journey of 75 years, starting from Svidhan Sabha, achievements, experiences, memories, and learnings.
Before that, we wanted to tag that because it is special session, we wanted special items also with taken in. This is what we said in this, we are welcoming this, we are not trying to discuss.
Dr. Keshav, please address the chair.
We wanted to say that.
No.
We just said, I'm not trying to.
No, no.
I will put it down.
Anyone who raises will suffer the consequences. Have it from me, honorable members, have it from me, put it on the table immediately. Everyone who does it is in breach of rule and regulations. Don't force my hands. Don't force my hands. Dr. Keshav, this was least expected. How can you on earth get it?
Tell the method, how do we try to communicate with you?
No, no, but what is this?
I want to really know from.
No, I'm so sorry.
I'm very serious on this issue.
I'm so sorry.
How do we communicate with you?
I'm so sorry.
You don't hear us.
I'm so sorry.
The only thing is I show some kind of placard.
I'm so sorry, Dr. Keshav, please, 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 don't do it. Please don't do it. For my sake, don't do it.
I'm not doing it.
I can assure, I can.
I said this was.
I can assure the members, please take.
Two hours in the leaders of the first meeting.
Each of the members who has done it is cautioned by me not to do it. I am one of you. I depend on your wisdom, on your talent, on your knowledge to exemplify the best conduct which can be approved by the people outside. Let us not make mockery of it, please. We are at a time when we are having great moments. Our country is defining global discourse. These are not political issues. All I say is, we, you will have the occasion, Dr. Keshav, take your seat, take your seat, take your seat. You will, you will have the occasion to, to fully indicate agenda has been spelt out. Mr. J, you will know it. Jaram Ramesh, the least you can do is, if you want to address the chair, you can gentlemanly rise and make your point, not in a cozy chair like this. One side. No. Honorable, hon, one side, leader of the position, honorable leader of the position.
And before I say something to you, I will tell you that what I said about wit, humor, I did, you are not related to it. You have shown wit, humor, sarcasm, you have shown, that was because of my words.
No, no, I, I thought this because of the rush of the night, I got here at 1:30. I understood that today is a very good day and our chairman will not be angry with us and will not scare anyone and will bring everyone with great love. This was my hope. At the end, you had been angry, they cried, so this is happening. So, at least today is a happy day. Our Sanjay Singh and Chaddha came to our house. No, two members are out. Sir, two members are out. If the first day is important, special session.
Amritkal.
Yes, Amritkal. No, Amritkal, say, say for me, Viskal, say, but I am not denying you. Out of members are not allowed, not feeling bad. Then you give a little kindness, you will do it and show a big smile, decrease the anger, work, work well.
Honorable Members, we are having discussion on a very important issue and it will be for six-hour discussion and everyone will get an opportunity. Apart from the floor leaders, we have presence of very distinguished members who have seen more than three decades of parliamentary performance. I am quite sure and I have no doubt, the contribution by honorable members will enlighten the people at large and therefore let us have a scholarly debate dictated only by decorum and contribution. I call upon leader of the house, Pushe Goyal, to me.
Sir, it's a special sessions or 261st session of Rajya Sabha.
Which one is correct?
Will the special sessions be counted as a session? Kindly please enlighten, then I think I can.
Okay, so it is 261st session is special session. Mr. Pushe Goyal.
Mania Adhikshi, my pleasure is that today, on the basis of Ganesha's charity, we have all gathered here in such a beautiful atmosphere for discussion. First of all, I would like to congratulate all my companions, friends, and citizens of India, all of us, to have a great celebration of Ganesha's charity and good luck. Mania Adhikshi, Parliament, Mahamahim Rashtrapatiji, and both bodies, Lok Sabha and Rajya Sabha, are three of them. Our House, House of Elders is called Uchse Sadan, and my pleasure is that the biggest honor is that the largest population of the world, the National Party, has given me this opportunity to serve in the Uchse Sadan, and I will always be there. And the people who learned, who understood, who came up with the job, on the basis of today's discussion, this will give us more encouragement in the future as to how we can help our country in its development. Mania Prime Minister Narendra Modi ji said that our National Party is a kind of a dream machine, it gives us dreams. Our committee is, it gives us more ambition. And Parliament, which is the heart of the citizens, which is the soul of the citizens, is the most right institution to build up the National Party. If there is a big platform for the National Party, it is our support. Mania Subapatiji, this country's population, 140 crore people, are making the National Party strong, making it successful. The main reason why the National Party is a family is based on the foundation of the country. Because when people from the Gullahs, from different countries, died, there are very few big countries, which are still in the National Party, in the countries of the West, the National Party cannot stop, there are different kinds of problems. But in such a big country, even after the Gullahs, the National Party continues to be strong day by day, is also my pleasure and it has been done by both bodies. The country which we all believe in, in the ancient Vedic texts, we also see this word in it, Saba, Samiti, Sansad, this word was used hundreds of years ago in India, spoken in India, used, heard. We didn't only use this word, it is also present in bodies, in Lok Sabha, Rajya Sabha, and I think that there is no need for us to go far, Mania Adhikshi, G20's Indian Party 's success story is. The feeling of Vasudev Kutumkam to the whole world, that we are not a country, we are a family, and we are the country that cares about all of us, this feeling is leading the Indian Party to a successful end, and the leader summit is ending, and November 30 will be our time of power. We must, in the whole world, give a big shout, the Indian Party's power, the Indian Party's sovereignty, and Prime Minister Narendra Modi ji's, in such a way, in the whole world, is a acceptance, his leadership is showing the esteem, he is giving the citizens the respect of the country. Mania Adhikshi, Constituent Assembly, which was organized, there were debates, its ground was very high, we read a lot of things about it, so we can see, hear, many, many people were, at that time, when Constituent Assembly debates were going on, they said that the two bodies are necessary. Big, big persons, such as Mania Shri Mohammed Tahir, Mania Shri Shivanlal Sikseena, Mania Shri Loknath Mishra ji opposed that there is no need for two second chambers, only one chamber will happen. But, Mania Shri Gupalswami Ainger, Dr. Bharat Ratna, Dr. Bhimrao Ambetkar ji, and Shadesh Sarvepalli, Radha Krishnan ji also, this was avoided, this was considered, that there should be two bodies, the Uchse Sadan is its own place, and after that, in April 1952, 1952, this body was built, and its first Saba, 13th May 1952, was a kind of 71st century practice, today we will do this discussion. Rajya Sabha's community, this was a surprise, that a good discussion will be, good debates will be, and in the context of discussion and bargaining, and in a way, above bargaining, we will keep the country in front, Rajya Sabha will go. Mania Prime Minister Narendra Modi ji also said that whatever debate is, whether it is in the body or outside the body, there is one thing, one thing is clear, that our ability, the ability to serve the country, and the ability to protect the country's interests, we will give it a lot, we will keep it in our hands, and I think that we all have done our duty, in our own account. In this 71st century practice, many people have done their own duty to protect the country, to protect the National Party, gave their own responsibility. Many, many presidents, 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 none of them know, but some, who immediately enter the name of the president, Dr. Sarvepalli Radha Krishnan ji, Dr. Zakir Hussain ji, Justice Sidhaya Thurla, Dr. Shankar Dayal Sharma ji, Shri K.R Narayan ji, Shri Bhero Singh Shekha wad ji, Hamed Ansari ji, Shri Venkya Naidoo ji, and now our prime minister, Shri Jagdeep Dhankar ji, all of them have done their own work, built this body, built this body and brought new people to it, gave a very good responsibility. Venkya Naidoo ji's story remains, because many times, we talked about it, many times, we tried to understand the situation in a very good way, I remember, once they said, and I quote, "People want the house to discuss, debate, and decide three D's. They do not want the other D, that is disruption." And I think that we all tried every day to make this body go smoothly, and in the body we can serve the country in a good way. Many, many wise men, many, many people, many, many members who are nominated, many, many presidents have built this body, and they have given a lot of advice about how this body has done. Today, our nominated bodies, one by one, in different areas, they have done a lot of service, given a lot of responsibility, and I think that is also a part of this body, that in different ways, whether it is in the field of sports, whether it is in the field of artists, in the field of music, in the field of drama, in the field of, many, many people have built this body. Mania Adhikshi, this body has taken many important decisions, which have been taken in our lives and for the country, and may remember them until the end of the century. Many debates, very interesting debates were made in this body, whether it is Atel ji, Adwan ji, Sushma ji's debates here, whether it is Dr. Karan singh ji, or VP singh ji, Chandrasekhar ji, our prime minister, president, president of the National Party, Dr. Shri Devi Ghoda ji's, in different, very important debates, many, many people have gone, many times, many fears of debates were made, bargaining was growing, but it was simple, very tense bargaining, also, the opportunity to stay, that how, how we can all work together. Once, in a very hot, hot debate, Mania Atel Biyari Bachpai ji gave an approval, that we all should work together, share, share, work together, keep our own thoughts, ideas, and keep it in mind, we find the way, go forward, and for the country and the heritage, we do our own work. I remember, Mania Adhikshi, a president was of the Communist Party, Shri P. Rajiv, then went to Kerala, became president, CPIM's, the leaders of the body were very good, prepared to come. And new, new things, which hardly we thought about, that this body is also responsible for, these, these new things, many times, Shri P. Rajiv came, I still see him, so I am happy, whether it is in Kerala, or maybe in Delhi, and in such a way, if we all can solve each other's problems, we can be mete, but if we stand above the mete, and keep the mete with the charlene, then I think that what our old presidents did, here, as an example, showed good, good things, and the bodies of the body also did their own work, are trying to work together, this will help the country move forward in a fast way, give our own important field. Mania Adhikshi, Dr. Sarvepalli Radha Krishnan ji said in 1955, a thing was kept, and I would quote it, it is 1955's thing, and we are, hardly 68 years ago, today, this body is very relevant. Dr. Radha Krishnan ji said, "We want to maintain good name and dignity of this house. I do not want it to be said that sometimes these discussions suggest that we are not behaving like serious responsible MPs, but rather like irresponsible professional agitators." Different, different ways, our leaders have taught us a lot, explained, but my belief is that we all have the feeling, and we all have the mind, that this body goes smoothly, in this country, new, new things, how to move forward in this country, in this Amritkal, that Mania Prime Minister ji gave us an approval, that India is a victorious country, we will have our own role, the opposition also has a very important role, that it is in the administration, the government's role, that it is new laws, new policies, new ways to change the direction and direction of the country, and I think that all, Mania presidents, even if we are responsible, try to do our own work, go forward, do it. Many times, if I remember, Atel ji's, the habit of saying stories, many times, she said, she was reading stories, Mania Arun Jettli ji, who is the leader of the house, she was before, she was the leader of the opposition, she had a huge problem, and in her own way, very, very carefully, very good way, she kept the issue, as they said, this is the new normal. This kind of, different, they also have beautiful memories, Mania Venkya Naidoo ji's, in Telugu, she used to say proverbs, they kept it in between, Mania Gulam Dabi Azad ji, in Shero Shairi, she was very brave, she was born. शेरों शायरी में काफी माहिर थे निकल पढ़ते थे कई बार मान्य खरगे जी भी आजकल शेरों शायरी बहुत करने लग गए पर यह यह सदन की गरिमा रही है की हम सब कई बार गर्मा-गर्मी में भी विषय को बहुत सुंदर तरीके से संभाल लेते हैं आगे बढ़ते हैं और इसी से लोगों का दिल भी जीतते हैं मान्य अध्यक्ष जी मुझे याद है जब मान्य प्रधानमंत्री जी ने गुलाम नबी आजाद जी को उनकी टर्म खत्म होने पर फेरवल स्पीच में याद किया था गुलाम नबी जी का और प्रणबदा का मान्य पूर्व महामहिम राष्ट्रपति जी श्री प्रणव मुकर्जी जी का जो काम सरकार में रहते हुए एक विपक्षी सरकार गुजरात में थी उस समय भी किस प्रकार से उन्होंने गुजरात के लोगों को कश्मीर से पुनः वापिस जाने के लिए मदद की जब आत्मवाद चरम सीमा पे था उस समय के जो अनुभव प्रधानमंत्री जी ने यहीं से बताए थे एक प्रकार से हम सबको एक संदेशा देता है की हमने सब ने अच्छी बातें याद करके अच्छी चीजें करने के लिए अपना-अपना प्रयास करना चाहिए प्रधानमंत्री जी ने तो वास्तव में यह भी कहा था की मैं सलूट करता हूं गुलाम नबी आजाद जी को और आगे भी मैं आपसे सलाम अशुरा करते रहूंगा और यही एक मित्तता की भावना से हम सभी सत्तादन या विपक्ष इस मित्तता की भावना से आगे भी काम करते रहेंगे यह हमारा सबका विश्वास है और एक प्रकार से सदन की गरिमा उसी में होगी की हम देशित और जन्नित को अगर सर्वोपरी रखते हैं तो स्वभाविक रूप से सदन की भी गरिमा बढ़ते जाएगी और अच्छा काम होते जाएगा ऐसे मुझे याद आते हैं जब मैं पहली बार मीडियन स्पीच देने के लिए उठा था मैं नया-नया सदस्य था जुलाई 2010 की बात है और मान्य पूर्व प्रधानमंत्री मनमोन सिंह जी जहां अब बैठे हैं उसी के बाजू में नासिर हुसैन की सीट पे जहां तक मुझे याद है मैं वहां पे बैठा था और माया सिंह जी हमारी चीफ विप्ति आई बोला की परसों तो मैं आईआरडीए और सेबी का कुछ वाद-विवाद चल रहा था डॉक्टर मनबोद सिंह प्रधानमंत्री थे और प्रणबदा वित्त मंत्री थे तुम्हें उसकी डिबेट को शुरू करना है और मैं एकदम हैरान हो गया दो ही दिन हुए थे मुझे सदन में है शायद तब तक तो कुर्ता पजामा और जैकेट भी नहीं सिलवाया था जब माया सिंह जी ने कहा की दो दिन बाद तुम्हें यह डिबेट शुरू करनी है और मैं भी थोड़ा परेशान हुआ मैं उसी दिन रात को मुबई गया क्योंकि सब्जेक्ट भी मेरे लिए नया था इंश्योरेंस या के बारे में बहुत ज्यादा जानकारी थी सेबी तो समझता था फिर भी तो वाद-विवाद समझने के लिए पूरे दो दिन उस दिन से लेके अगले दूसरे दिन तक दिन-रात रिसर्च करते रह और पुरी समझी की क्या यह विषय है क्या समस्या है क्या विवाद है और उसके मुझे फायदा भी हुआ उसमें मुझे कई चीजें मालूम पड़ी की जो निजी इंश्योरेंस कंपनियों की पॉलिसीज़ होती हैं वो कैसे एक तरफ़ होती थी उस समय मुझे विश्वास है अब तो बहुत बदलाव ए गया होगा पर नहीं-नहीं इंश्योरेंस कंपनी जारी शुरू हुई थी और एक तरफ़ पॉलिसीज़ होती थी तो उसका मुझे व्यक्ति का दलाब तो यह हुआ की मैंने कई मेरी पॉलिसीज़ कैंसिल कर दी जो निजी कंपनियों की ली हुई थी जब ध्यान में आया की कैसे वो हमारे खिलाफ का उद्भोगता के खिलाफ जाती थी और फिर मैंने मीडियन स्पीच जो दी उस समय मीडियन स्पीच में समय का सीमा नहीं होती थी तो काम लगभग 40-30-40 घंटे मेहनत करके पढ़ाई की थी तो स्पीच भी लंबी चली लगभग 40-42 मिनट तक मैंने अपनी बात रखी पर उसका इतना समाधार मिला जब उस समय के मान्य वित्त मंत्री ने उस स्पीच के बाद जब डिबेट पर रिप्लाई कर रहे थे एक प्रकार से कुछ वाक्य लेके मैं वाक्य में तो नहीं पूरा पढ़ना चाहूंगा पर उन्होंने जिस प्रकार से मुझे एप्रिशिएट किया जिस प्रकार से मुझे इंकरेज किया वो वास्तव में मेरे लिए मेरे स्वरन में जिंदगी भर रहेगा और और उस समय उनकी बात में जो भाव था जो एक प्रकार से एप्रिशिएशन में उन्होंने कहा की जिस प्रकार से मैंने विषय को रखा था मेरी मीडियन स्पीच में और पूरे सब्जेक्ट को स्टडी किया था वो आगे चलकर मुझे पार्लियामेंट की सेवा करने में मदद करेगा उन्होंने यहां तक कहा था दिस इस डी चेंबर दिस इस डी सिस्टम वेयर वी एग्री तू डिसएग्री देयर विल बी डाइवर्जेंस ऑफ व्यूज़ देयर विल बी डिफरेंसेस ऑफ ओपिनियन एंड थ्रू दीज़ डाइवर्जेंसेस थ्रू दीज़ डिफरेंसेस ऑफ ओपिनियन थ्रू डिस्कशन वी विल अराइव आते सलूशन यह उनका वाक्य मेरे लिए जिंदगी भर एक प्रकार से दिशा दिखाता है की कैसे हमने आगे चलकर अपनी-अपनी बात भी रखनी है दूसरों की बात से भी सीख रहा है मुझे याद आते हैं डॉक्टर मनमोन सिंह जी हैं सामने एक बार एक कैश फॉर वोट्स का स्कैनल हुआ था उसके ऊपर बड़ा गंभीर चर्चा भी चल रही थी मान्य मनमोन सिंह जी ने उर्दू के शहर मिर्जा गालिब जी को कोट किया था हमको है उनसे वफा की उम्मीद जो नहीं जानते वफा क्या है और उसी समय तुरंत मान्य सुश्मा स्वराज जी जो उस तरफ़ बैठी थी उन्होंने जवाब में कहा कुछ तो मजबूरिया रही होंगी यूं ही कोई बेवफा नहीं होता यह जो भावना थी दोनों तरफ़ यह वास्तव में सदन की गरिमा बढ़ाती थी और यह है जो छाप मैं समझता हूं जो यादें हम यहां से लेके जब नए सदन नए सदन के नए प्रांगण में जाएंगे नए वास्तु में जाएंगे तब ये यादें लेके मैं समझता हूं हम सभी प्रयास करेंगे की और अच्छी तरीके से हम आपके अपना-अपना काम कर सके अटल जी ने एक बार मई 1996 1996 में अपने भाषण में एक बहुत ही ऐतिहासिक भाषण में कहा था सत्ता का तो खेल चलेगा सरकारे आएंगे जाएंगे पर बाटियां बनेंगी बिगड़ेंगी मगर यह देश रहना चाहिए इस देश का लोकतंत्र अमर रहना चाहिए और मैं समझता हूं की हम सब फिर कभी ना कभी रिकंसाइल करना पड़ेगा की परिस्थितियां बदली है और हम हम कोई भी एंटाइटल नहीं यह जो सेंस ऑफ एंटाइटलमेंट कई जगह पे देखने को मिलता है कई जगह पे अनुभव होता है उससे जब देश उठेगा तो मैं समझता हूं सही माने में देश की सेवा में और अच्छा काम कर सकेंगे छोटी-छोटी प्रतीक होते हैं जैसे लाल बत्ती खत्म कर दी गई थी सब मंत्रियों की छोटे प्रतीक लेकिन बहुत बड़ा मैसेज देश को की सेंस ऑफ एंटाइटलमेंट किसी के लिए भी इस देश में अब नहीं चल सकता 2014 में हमारी सरकार बनी वो भी एक ऐतिहासिक मौका था की पहली बार गैर कांग्रेसी सरकार पूर्ण बहुमत के साथ देश ने चुनकर भेजी थी कई सारे बड़े लैंडबार्क लेजिस्लेशन्स पास किए गए हैं सदन में 2014 से अभी तक जिसका देश की विकास यात्रा में और सामाजिक समरस्था समाज को और आगे लेके जाने में बहुत बड़ा योगदान है मैं समझता हूं कोई भी इस बात को इनकार नहीं कर सकता की 9 वर्ष का समय एक बड़ा ट्रांसफॉर्मेटिव देश के बदलाव का समय रहा है आज भारत विश्व की पांचवी सबसे बड़ी अर्थव्यवस्था बनी है मान्य प्रधानमंत्री नरेंद्र मोदी जी के नेतृत्व में मान्य वित्त मंत्री निगरा जी के नेतृत्व में और हम सब ने एक प्रकार से उस प्रवाह में अपवर्ष लोकतंत्र के मनाएंगे मान्य अध्यक्ष जी जब हमने 5 अगस्त 2019 में आर्टिकल 370 और 35A को समाप्त करने का एक बड़ा ऐतिहासिक निर्णय सदन में लिया सही माने में एक प्रकार से देश को जोड़ने के लिए देश को एक बनाने के लिए जिस देश में हमारी सबकी इच्छा थी की एक सम्मिदान रहे एक ही कानून व्यवस्था रहे कानून व्यवस्था सभी के लिए समान रहे
इतिहासिक दिन सदैव रहेगा। एक प्रकार से सरदार वल्लभ भाई पटेल की जो देश की एकता और एकजुत्ता को मजबूत करने का तीव्र इच्छा शक्ति थी, इच्छा था, काम था और प्रयास था, उसको हमने उस दिन पुरी तरीके से संपन्न करके देश को एक बनाने का काम पूरा किया। ऐसे तो जब आर्टिकल 370 लगाई था, तभी उस समय के वर्तमान प्रधानमंत्री जी ने इच्छा जाहिर की थी कि यह तो टेंपरेरी प्रोफेशन है, कुछ वर्षों में निकल जाएगा और कुछ समय लगेगा, जम्मू-कश्मीर को अपना खुद का भविष्य भारत के साथ अच्छी तरीके से बनाने में, वो कुछ समय थोड़ा लंबा समय हो गया, पर हम सबके लिए आनंद की बात है कि हमने वो निर्णय 2019 में लिया। मान्य अध्यक्षी कुछ ऐसी चीजें ध्यान आती हैं, जैसे उत्तराखंड, छत्तीसगढ़ और झारखंड बनाने का विषय था। कितनी सुंदर तरीके से, लगभग सबकी सर्वसम्मति से और एक साथ मिल-जुल के ये तीन नए राज्य बने, तीन नए राज्यों को एक अपना अपने आगे का भविष्य तय करने का मौका मिला और कंसेंसस के साथ पीसफुली ये डायलॉग और डिस्कशन के माध्यम से ये तीनों राज्य बने। थोड़ा बहुत दुर्भाग्य की बात है कि कुछ कई ऐसे विषय होते हैं, जहां पे हम ऐसी सर्वसम्मति नहीं बना पाते। और मैं समझता हूं कि उसमें भी हम शालीनता से अपनी-अपनी बात रख के आगे चले तो ज्यादा अच्छा रहेगा। मुझे याद है, मैं भी इस सदन में था, जब तिलंगाना का नया राज्य बना, वो दृश्य शायद एक भद्दे के रूप में, एक बहुत खराब उदाहरण के रूप में इस देश के स्वरण में रहेंगे और मैं उम्मीद करता हूं कि आगे कभी हमारे नए भवन पे कभी ऐसा दृश्य देश और दुनिया को देखता ना पड़े। मान्य अध्यक्षी 2017 में एक इतिहासिक गुड्स एंड सर्विसेस टैक्स, जिससे वन नेशन वन टैक्स स्थापित हुआ और ये इसलिए इतिहासिक कहता हूं क्योंकि लगभग एक प्रकार से इसमें भी सर्वसम्मति से बना था। पूरे देश की सम्मति, देश के हर राज्य ने इसमें अपना-अपना सहयोग दिया और वियादी हाउस ऑफ एल्डर्स रिफ्लेक्टिंग डी स्टेट्स विशेस एंड डिजाइंस, तो इस प्रकार से सभी राज्य मिल के हमारे पास ये प्रस्ताव लाए और वो जो 2017 का दिन है इतिहासिक मिडनाइट सेशन 30 जून, पहली जुलाई की रात को 2017 में सेंट्रल हॉल में हुआ और आज उसका लाभ पूरा देश अनुभव भी कर रहा है, व्यापार, उद्योग को नया बल मिला है। बहुत तेज गति से देश आगे बढ़ रहा है। कई सारे ऐसे निर्णय जो बहुत महत्वपूर्ण रहे, अबोलिशन ऑफ़ प्राइवेट पर्सेस वो एक विषय रहा है जिसमें अलग-अलग व्यू पॉइंट्स थे और पार्लिमेंट पे उसको पास करके एक बड़ा अच्छा संदेश दिया। इसी प्रकार से ट्रिपल तलाक को जब क्रिमिनलाइज किया, उसका कानून 2019 में लाया गया। हमारी बहनें, माताओं को अपना सनमान मिला और एक बड़ा सिग्निफिकेंट रिफॉर्म का मेजर था जिसने जेंडर डिस्क्रिमिनेशन को समाप्त करने के लिए अपना-अपना योगदान दिया है और इसी प्रकार से हमारी महिलाओं के सम्मान के लिए ये सरकार तटपर रही है और लगा था। एक के बाद एक 9:30, 9:40 वर्षों में इतने सारे बड़े निर्णय हमारी बहनों के लिए, माताओं के लिए, हमारी बेटियों के लिए इस देश में किए गए हैं। राइट फ्रॉम डी डे वन, बेटी बचाओ, बेटी पढ़ाओ से लेके आज तक और भविष्य में भी भारत हमारे बहनों को और अच्छा सनमान मिले, और अच्छा स्थान मिले। हम ऑलरेडी देख रहे हैं कि बड़े पैमाने, बहनें काम में ए रही हैं, दे आर ज्वाइनिंग डी वर्कफोर्स और भारत की अर्थव्यवस्था में भी और भारत की आगे के भविष्य में उनका योगदान बढ़े। ये मुझे लगता है हम सबका, एक प्रयास है, हम सबका इच्छा भी है। मान्य अध्यक्षी कुछ थोड़े खराब हमारे सामने उदाहरण भी है जिससे सीखने को मिला, जैसे पार्लिमेंट पे जो अटैक हुआ था, उससे हम सबको और ज्यादा चौकन्य रहना पड़ेगा और सुरक्षा के जो प्रयास किए जाते हैं, सुरक्षाकर्मी जो अपना काम करते हैं सुरक्षा हमारी और हमारे देश की आन-बान और शान संभालने के लिए जो सुरक्षाकर्मी काम करते हैं मैं समझता हूं उसमें हम सबका भी योगदान हो, हम भी कोऑपरेट करें। और हम भी थोड़ा सेंस ऑफ़ इंटाइटलमेंट से ऊपर उठ जाएं तो शायद हमारी भी सुरक्षा और देश के सनमान की सुरक्षा और अच्छी हो पाएगी और 2001 जैसे अटैक कभी नहीं आ पाएंगे। उसके बाद हमने एक पूरे देश को संदेश, एक यूनिटी का संदेश तो दिया कि हमारी, हमारा लोकतंत्र को कोई हरा नहीं सकता। आर डेमोक्रेसी इस इनविनसिबल, परंतु मुझे लगता है इसको पुनः हम स्वरण करते रहे और आगे भी कभी हमारे देश की एकता और एकजुत्ता पे कोई आहत नहीं आए, ये हम सबका सामूहिक प्रयास रहना चाहिए। मान्य प्रधान, मान्य प्रधानमंत्री नरेंद्र मोदी जी के नित्यतों में आज भारत एक बहुत आत्मविश्वास के साथ, बहुत तेज गति से विकास की प्रवाह में आगे बढ़ रहा है। इसमें कई सारे मौके आते हैं हम सबको, जिसमें एक आवाज़ से देशित और जन्नित को अब आगे लेके जा सकते हैं। और मैं समझता हूं जो हमने पुराने लेसन सीखे, उससे हमें आगे के भविष्य को बनाने में और अच्छा बल मिलेगा, जैसे कि जब इमरजेंसी आई थी और एक प्रकार से भारत के लोकतंत्र के कई सारे प्रावधान रोक दिए गए थे, उनपे अनकुश लगा दिया गया था। तब मान्य अटेल बिहारी वाचपैजी जी ने कहा था, अनुशासन के नाम पर अनुशासन का खून भंग कर दिया गया संघ को, कैसा चड़ा जनून। और मैं समझता हूं ये एक बहुत वेकअप कॉल था पूरे देश के लिए, कई सारे हमने इसमें से सबक सीखे और आगे चलके जो 40 सेकंड कांस्टिट्यूशनल अमेंडमेंट था, उसको भी फिर पुनः बदला गया 44th अमेंडमेंट 1978 में आने से, 1978 में जो फंडामेंटल राइट्स हमारे अधिकारों के ऊपर जो अनकुश लगा था, उसको पुनः एक बार स्थापित किया गया और बाद में तो कई सारे मौके आए जिसमें सदन में भी और कोटों ने भी, भारत की जो बेसिक प्रिंसिपल्स हैं, हमारी आजादी के, हमारी सम्मिदान के, उसको कोई आहत ना पहुंचे, उसके लिए कई सारे कदम हम सबने और देशवासियों ने उठाएं। मान्य अध्यक्षी, कई सारे ऐसे कानून थे जो पुराने गुलामी के समय से चले ए रहे थे। हम एक प्रयास कर रहे हैं कि उन कानूनों को भी बदला जाए, उनको कंटेंपरेरी, आधुनिक बनाया जाए, आज के बदले में, परिपेक्ष में कैसे वो रेलेवेंट हो, उसके लिए प्रयास सभी सरकारी करती हैं। कंपनीज एक्ट पहले 1956 में था, जो पुरी तरीके से लाइसेंस राज को बल देता था, उसको बदला गया 2013 में और कई सारे मेजर्स लिए जिससे उद्योग, व्यापार को और बल मिल सके, उसमें भी समय-समय पे कई सारे और बदलाव 2014 से 2022 तक लाए गए हैं, जिससे आज इज ऑफ़ डूइंग बिजनेस को और इज ऑफ़ लिविंग को हमने अपनी प्राथमिकता बनाते हुए देश को आगे बढ़ाने का काम किया। जो नई पार्लिमेंट की बिल्डिंग बनी है, ये भी अपने आप में, देश के लिए एक बहुत गर्व की बात है, हम सबके लिए गर्व की बात। ये हम सबका सदन। आधुनिकता से पूरा योग और आगे भविष्य की जो जरूरत है, उसको पूरा करने वाला ये नया वास्तु मैं समझता हूं, पूरे विश्व में एक भारत के लिए एक नई उत्साह और उमंग के साथ आगे जाने का एक संदेश पहुंचाएगा। ऐसे ही पिछले दो महीनों में भारत मंडपम, जो पुराना प्रगति मैदान था और एक द्वारका में स्थित नया यशोभूमि, दो और बड़े सेंटर्स का उद्घाटन मान्य प्रधानमंत्री नरेंद्र भोजी जी ने किया है। ये दोनों नए भारत के प्रतीक के रूप में देश को आगे लेके जाएंगे। अब हमारा देश विश्वस्तरियत, फेयर्स, एक्सिबिशंस, कन्वेंशंस, कॉन्फ्रेंसेस कर पाएगा और उसका हमने जीता-जागता एक शुरू, जीत 20 लीडर्स समित में भी देखा। ये सब निर्णय, अब इस देश को आगे लेके जाने के लिए समावेशी और एक प्रकार से पारदर्शता के प्रतीक के रूप में, लोगों की आशा, या पेक्षा पूरा करने के लिए सबका प्रयास है और हम सब मिल के इस प्रयास में जुड़े देशवासियों का विश्वास जीते और देशवासियों को एक कर्तव्य भावना से जो पांच फ्रंट मान्य प्रधानमंत्री जी ने आजादी के अमृत पौंछव में लाल किले से दिए थे कि हम सब 140 करोड़ देशवासी कर्तव्य भावना से देश की एकता और एकजुत्ता को संभालें, देश को गुलामी की मानसिकता से निकालें। हमारे इतिहास से जो सीखने को मिला है, जो हमारे इतिहास में, हमारी परंपराओं में, हमारी जो रिच कल्चर और हेरिटेज, पारिवारिक वैल्यू सिस्टम्स है, उन सबसे जो हम सीखते हैं उस सबको कर्तव्य भावना से आगे लेके जाएं, नारी शक्ति का सनमान करें और एक घ्रष्टाचार बुक भारत भारत को विकसित भारत बनाने के लिए हम सब संकल्प लेके आगे चले, इस इच्छा के साथ इस सदन में भी ये आज का विषय हम सब चर्चा करें, हम सब डॉक्टर बाबा साहब, अंबेडकर जी का, जो एक सम्मिदान सभा कांस्टिट्यूटियन असेंबली में भाषण था, जिसमें उन्होंने कहा था, एंड आई कोट, वेयर कांस्टिट्यूशनल मेथड्स आर ओपन देयर कैन बी नो जस्टिफिकेशन फॉर अनकांस्टिट्यूशनल मेथड्स। मैं समझता हूं, ये एक बड़ा अच्छा वाक्य है, जो हम सबको याद दिलाता रहते हैं कि आगे चलके भी ये सदन अपनी गरिमा रख के, इतिहास के पन्नों से बहुत कुछ हमें सीखने मिला। हमारे सबके अपने-अपने अनुभव रहे, अच्छे-अच्छे विचार आते हैं, जब हम पुराने दिन इस सुंदर सदन में याद करते हैं, इस बहुत महत्वपूर्ण कक्ष में जो-जो पल गुजरे, हम सबने मिल के उन सबको जब यादगाश के रूप में हम सवारे, लेकिन जब नए भवन में जाते हैं, नए वास्तु में जाते हैं नई सोच के साथ इस देश की दिशा और दिशा को नया रूप देने के लिए, भारत के 140 करोड़ लोगों की आशा, या पेक्षा को पूरा करने के लिए। हम सब संकल्प लेके, प्रतिबद्धता के साथ नए सदन में प्रवेश करेंगे कल, उसके लिए मैं आप सभी को तहे दिल से बहुत-बहुत बधाई देता हूं और नए सदन के शुभकामनाएं देता हूं। धन्यवाद।
धन्यवाद मान्य पीयूस कोएल जी। अब लीडर ऑफ़ अपोजिशन मान्य स्त्री मलिक आरजून खड़गेजी।
सर, आपको आपका मैं आभारी हूं क्योंकि मुझे आप जल्द बुलाए और अपनी बात रखने के लिए मुझे मौका मिला, इसलिए मैं आपका आभारी हूं। मैं इस शब्द से शुरू करूंगा ताकि कोई ये ना समझे कि हमारे लिए ही ये बोल रहे हैं। मैं कहा, आम जनता जो बोलती है वही बात मैं यहां रख रहा हूं। और सम्मिदान आगे ये भी बोलूंगा कि सम्मिदान कैसा बना और सम्मिदान के तहत हम कहां तक चल पाए और सम्मिदान ने कितनी हमको आजादी दी है, उसका हम कहां तक, किस ढंग से, अच्छी तरीके से देश को बनाने में हम इस्तेमाल कर रहे हैं। ये बहुत बड़ी बात है। ठीक है, आपके भाषण में तो आपके अच्छूमेंट भी आए, आपकी अनुभव भी आए और आप जो चाहते थे, उसको यहां पर रखने की कोशिश की है। लेकिन मैं इससे शुरू करता हूं। बदलना है तो अब हालत बदलो। बदलना है तो अब हालत बदलो, ऐसे नाम बदलने से क्या होता है? देना है तो युवाओं को रोजगार दो, सबको बेरोजगार करके क्या होता है? दिल को थोड़ा बड़ा करके देखो, लोगों को मारने से क्या होता है? दिल को थोड़ा बड़ा करके देखो, लोगों के मारने से क्या होता है? कुछ कर नहीं सकते तो कुर्सी छोड़ दो। बात-बात में, बात-बात में डराने से क्या होता है? बात-बात में डराने से क्या होता है? अपनी हुकुमरानी पर तुम्हें गुरुर है, लोगों को डराने से, धमकाने से क्या होता है? बदलना है तो अब हालत बदलो, ऐसे नाम बदलने से क्या होता है? और यहां से वहां जाने से और क्या होने वाला? सर तो सबको गर्व है देश पे और इसीलिए मैं एक कहूंगा कि जो सम्मिदान आजादी के बाद बनी और इस सम्मिदान के तहत हम सभी को चलना है और देश को देश के लिए हम कुछ करना है और इसमें मैं एक ही बात कहूंगा कि इस पार्लिमेंट्री जर्नी में 75 साल जो सम्मिदान सभा का ये जो सम्मिदान करके हुआ और उसके अच्छूमेंट, एक्सपीरियंस, मेमोरीज, लर्निंग्स इस पे ही हमको बात करना था। तो मैं इसी पे थोड़े शब्दों में बोलूंगा कि एक मेरी भी जर्नी 75 साल में, असेंबली और पार्लिमेंट मिल के 52 साल हिस्सा है मेरा भी। लेकिन मुझे यहां ज्यादा समय नहीं मिला, मेरे को वहीं पर रखना पड़ा, बैंगलूर में ही था। यहां बहुत से नित्यों के भाषण सुनने को मुझे कम मौका मिला सिर्फ 14 साल मिले, कहां जा रहे? मैं बड़ी गड़बड़ी में जा रहे थे तो मुझे लगा, बड़ी गड़बड़ी में जा रहे थे तो मुझे लगा तो उसलिए पूछा।
ये अट्टस करना, कानून का उल्लंघन भी है।
अब ये साहब, हमारे हाउस में उल्लंघन बहुत होते हैं, फिर भी आप दिलदार हैं, उसको संभाल लेते हैं। उसीलिए मैं बोला उसको संजय सिंह को और उच्च डाकू बुला लो। आगे है, आगे है। कोई चिंता थी मेरे, उधर गए फिर था। सर ये सम्मिदान सभा ये भवन आजाद भारत के सारे बड़े फैसलों का गवाह है। और इसी भवन में हमारी सम्मिदान सभा 11 सत्रों में 165 दिन बैठी। उसने 9000 शब्दों अला, जो सम्मिदान बनाया, वो 26 जनवरी 1950 को लागू हुआ। जब 26 जनवरी, सवारी नवंबर 1949 को सम्मिदान सभा ने इसकी मंजूरी दी। वहां की भैंसों बहस सुनने के लिए करीब 53000 लोग आए थे, विजिटर्स यानी इस मौके पे। सभापति जी, आपने अपने जयपुर के पिटासीन अधिकारी सम्मेलन में सम्मिदान सभा के 11 सत्रों के व्यवदान रहित संचालन को एक आदर्श स्थिति कहा था। यानी किस ढंग से वो चला और कितनी अच्छी थी, ये आपने जयपुर के अपने मीटिंग में सवारी अपने वक्तों में कहा। तो ऐसा वो एक-एक वक्त था, जो सबको लेके लोग चलते थे और लोकतंत्र को ठीक ढंग से, ठीक रास्ते पे ले जाने के लिए, कितनी कोशिश से होती थी, इससे ये आदाज़ा लगता है। उस वक्त कौन थे प्राइम मिनिस्टर? पंडित जवरलाल नेहरू।
नहीं सर, आपकी आदास बहुत अच्छी है, इधर क्यों देख रही?
नहीं, इधर
ये टैक्टिकल है। मतलब ऐसे लगता है कि बहुत अच्छा स्क्रिप्ट किया हुआ है।
साहब, साहब मेरे
आपको याद दिला रहे थे।
साहब
सर, आपको याद दिला रहे थे।
जरा नहीं, नहीं। बिल्कुल ऐसा ही था क्योंकि तब राष्ट्र की बुनियाद रखने का काम हो रहा था। बुनियाद रखा, और बुनियाद के अंदर जो पत्थर जाते हैं, वो दिखते नहीं। और जब मोहल पे आप नाम लगाते हो, कोई दिखते हैं। आप कभी भी जाइए साहब, आप तो दो-चार अनेक कोर्ट तो उद्घाटन किए होंगे अब तक, कहीं भी जाइए। जो बिल्डिंग ठहरती है बुनियाद पर, वो अंदर के मजबूत पत्थर किसको भी नहीं दिखते हैं। लेकिन वो ऊपर का नाम
मान्य खड़गेजी, मैं हाल में भारत मंडपम गया था।
हाँ
नियम भी देखी, उन ऊपर भी देखा।
यही मैं बोल रहा हूं, आप बहुत से, लेकिन देखते
दुनिया के नित्यों ने जो मुझे कहा आपकी रसिकित हो गया।
सर, बोले दीजिए।
उसकी नियम का भी आदास समझ में ए गया, ऊपर का भी समझ में ए गया।
उसीलिए साहब, इतने, इतने बिल्डिंग्स, आप कौन से भी इमारत बनी होगी, राज्य-रजवाड़ों के महल बने होंगे और हमारी पार्लिमेंट बनी, पहले की पार्लिमेंट है, नहीं है और कुछ कल जाने हुए अभी वो दिक्कत थे, कौन देखे, कौन नहीं दे, हमारी जगह कहां है, वो भी ढूंढना पड़ेगा।
उसमें मैं आपकी मदद करूंगा।
अच्छा
और आदि करूंगा।
चलो जी।
सर, लेटर्स दिया।
सर, लेटर्स सम्मिदान सभा ने चुने गए विभिन्न धाराओं के लोग महान नायक थे उसमें। अपने दौर के महारथी थे, उनका बड़ा जमीनी अनुभव भी था। स्वतंत्रता, समानता, न्याय, मानवी गरिमा और लोकतंत्र उनकी नसों में समाया था। क्योंकि उसके लिए ही तो वो लड़ रहे थे। इसीलिए सम्मिदान निर्माता उन्हें, हमें जो सम्मिदान दी है, वही हमें आज भी एक बनाए हुए हैं और उसी ने राष्ट्र के लिए सशक्त ढांचा तैयार किया है। इसी कारण लोकतंत्र के सिद्धांत और व्यवहार, आज जनता के स्वभाव का अभिन्न अंग है। भारतीय सम्मिदान हमारा सबसे बड़ा मारदर्शक है, इसी के आधार पर संसदी प्रणाली के हक में फैसला हुआ और एडल्ट फ्रेंचाइज़ जो हमको मिला इसी के आधार पर संसदीय प्रणाली के हक में फैसला हुआ और एडल्ट फ्रेंचाइज़ जो हमको मिला वो सबसे बड़ी बात है क्योंकि आपको तो मालूम है पहले जब वोटिंग पावर थी 1935 के इस एक्ट के तहे जो टैक्स देते हैं, जिनके पास जमीन है, जो पढ़े-लिखे हैं, जो इनकम टैक्स पे करते हैं, ऐसे लोगों के लिए ही वोटिंग की, एक वोटिंग का अधिकार था। लेकिन हमने जो समिदान बनाया पंडित जवरलाल नेहरू जी और डॉक्टर बासा बंबेडकर बल्लभ भाई पटेल, जितने भी मानने था, उस वक्त इस कांस्ट्रूट असेंबली में थे, उन्होंने एडल्ट फ्रेंचाइज़ दिया। आप लिखो या आप पढ़े हो, या अनपढ़ हो, आप गरीब हो या अमीर हो, सबको एक ही वोट और उसका वैल्यू भी एक ही।
Correct
जो एक बड़ा अमीर आदमी फर्ज करो आदानी की जजह उसको भी एक ही वोट, उसका वैल्यू भी एक ही वोट। लेकिन आज हमारे जो कर्मचारी है, छोटे लोग हैं, काम करते, उनको भी एक ही वोट। ये किसने दिया? ये कांस्टीट्यूशन जो बनाने वाले कांग्रेस के, उस वक्त आजादी, जिन्होंने आजादी के लिए लड़े और ये दिलाए और ये ढांचा बना। इसीलिए आज भी एडल्ट फ्रेंचाइज़ से ये देश जिंदा है, एक है और इनक्लूजिव है। और इनक्लूजिव बोले तो थोड़ा सा डर होता हूं। इनक्लूजिव बोले तो फिर इंडिया, उसको क्या करते हैं, छोटा करने के लिए, हमारे नद्दा साहब इंडी, इंडी बोलते हैं। ठीक है, इसीलिए तो बोलो नाम बदलने से कुछ नहीं होता। इंडी बोलो, इंडी बोलो और कुछ भी बोलो, हम हैं इंडिया। अरे आप कुछ भी बोलो, हम सब इंडिया, अरे भाई को अरे आप क्यों बात करते, बैंगलूर से आए हैं, चुप्पा डू
राजस्थान से बैंगलूर
हमारे नायकों ने बहुत मनतन करके जो समिदान दिया, वो जनता की आकांक झंकू खराब होता रहा है। बाबा साहब, समिदान सभा के अपने अंतिम भाषण में उन्होंने ये कहा था, मैं ये कोर्ट करना चाहता, अगर आपकी इजाजत है। इजाजत है? मौसूदा, मसोदा समिति का कार्य बहुत ही कटिंग हो जाता। यदि ये समिदान सभा, विभिन्न विचार वाले व्यक्तियों का एक समुदाय मात्र होती, विभिन्न विचारधाराओं के लोगों का एक समुदाय होता, एक एक उखड़े हुए फर्श के समान होती, जिसमें कहीं एक काला पत्थर होता तो कहीं सफेद और जिसमें प्रत्येक व्यक्ति या प्रत्येक समुदाय स्वयं अपने को विदिवेता समझता शिवाय उपद्रव के और कुछ नहीं होता, तो उस वक्त बोल रहे हैं की इतने सब रहने से उपद्रव के कुछ नहीं होता सभा में, सभा में कांग्रेस पक्ष की उपस्थिति सभा में कांग्रेस पक्ष की उपस्थिति ने इस उपद्रव की संभावना को पूर्णता मिठा दिया। और इसी के कारण कारवाहियों में व्यवस्था और अनुशासन दोनों बने। कांग्रेस पक्ष के अनुशासन के कारण ही मसोदा समिति ये निश्चित रूप में जानकर की प्रत्येक अनुच्छेद और प्रत्येक संशोधन का क्या भाग्य होगा, इस समिदान का संचालन कर देगी। तो ये कांग्रेस के लिए बाबा साहब बंबेडकर ने कहा है, कैसा समिदान बना? क्योंकि उस वक्त इतने डिफरेंट लोग थे, इंटेलिजेंट लोग थे और एक दूसरे से वो अगर लड़ते भी तो बाहर आकर एक होते थे। वो कभी किसी के ऊपर कुछ नुक्ताचीनी करके बैठते नहीं थे। सर, मैं और एक आपको बात बताना चाहता हूं की ये बाबा साहब बंबेडकर ने ड्रॉप्टिंग यानी समिदान बनाने के लिए कितनी कोशिश की है, बहुत लोगों को मालूम है। चुपी ये कहते, ड्रॉप्टिंग कमेटी चेयरमैन थे, वो क्या, ये क्या, ऐसा बोलने वाले बहुत हैं। क्योंकि कोई व्यक्ति को हम नहीं चाहते, एक खासकर ये हमेशा ये दिल्ली देव की हालत होती है, तो जब उन्होंने इतना कष्ट करके रात-दिन बैठ के, जो समिदान उन्होंने बनाया, इसीलिए उसमें एक टीटी कृष्णमाचारी का एक कहवा, अपना स्टेटमेंट है, मैं आपके सामने पढ़ के। समिदान का निर्माण करने वाली चुनिंदा, सात सदस्यों की ड्रॉप्टिंग कमेटी में सबसे बड़ी भूमिका डॉक्टर बंबेडकर ने बना। सात लोगों। इसमें क्या होता, क्योंकि उसके एक सदस्य ने वो साथ में एक सदस्य त्यागपत्र दिया। कितने बजे हैं? छह। एक सदस्य का निदंत हो गया, कितने बजे?
पास
जबकि एक अमेरिका चले गया। एक सदस्य रियासत के कार्यों, कार्यों में व्यस्त रहे। और दो सदस्य दिल्ली से दूर थे, उनकी शहद खराब होने के कारण कम मौजूदगी होती थी, तो सारा दारों मदार बाबा साहब बंबेडकर ये इत्यास है, हम इसको कभी नहीं कहते, ये बार-बार यही बोलते, ड्रॉप्टिंग कमेटी के ये थे, सब मेंबर्स ने मिल अब ये टीटी कृष्णमाचारी जो मेंबर थे, उसके कांस्ट्रूट असेंबली के और खासकर इस ड्रॉप्टिंग कमेटी के मेंबर थे, उन्होंने ये बात की। तो एक व्यक्ति, देश बदलने के लिए, समिदान को मजबूत करने के लिए, लोकतंत्र को मजबूत करने के लिए और कांस्टीट्यूशन को जीवित रखने के लिए, सबसे कंसर्ट करके कंसंसस जो बनाते हैं वो किसके जमाने में हुआ, वो कांग्रेस ने किया। उसकी रक्षा के लिए हम लड़ रहे, उसी के लिए हम तैयार हो गए। सब कुछ, हम ये नहीं समझते, हम जो कहेंगे, वो हमको मिलेगा। हमारी, हमारा एक, सभी का एक इरादा है की जो चीज इतने कष्ट से, इतने महीनत से कमाई हैं, उसको हम घुमाना नहीं चाहते। तो इसीलिए सर, आपको और एक यही बात करूंगा की इसके बाद 1950 में भारत ने जब लोकतंत्र अपनाया, तो बहुत से विदेशी विद्वानों को लगता था की यहां लोकतंत्र विफल हो जाएगा। क्योंकि ये करोड़ों, अंगूठे छाप लोग हैं, तब ब्रिटिश प्रधानमंत्री आपको तो मालूम है, फिर मैं बोलने की आवश्यकता नहीं है, फिर भी चर्चिल ने यहां तक कहा था अंग्रेज चले गए तो उनके द्वारा स्थापित न्यायपालिका, स्वास्थ्य सेवाएं, रेलवे और लोक निर्माण का पूरा तंत्र खत्म हो जाएगा। ये चर्चिल ने कहा। यानी इतना अंडरमाइंड किया हमको, की ये लोग अनपढ़ है, अंगूठे छाप है, ये लोग क्या करेंगे? डेमोक्रिसी को कैसा टिकाएंगे? लेकिन हमने टिका क्या दिखाया? हमने इसको मजबूत करा, इसका सुरक्षण किया और बार-बार हमको टोका जाता है। 70 साल में आपने क्या किया? अरे 70 साल में तो यही किया हमने, इसको मजबूती दिए। इसको मजबूती दिए हमने, लोकतंत्र को बचाया हमने और समिदान को लेकर हमने आगे बढ़े। और बार-बार आपके पास कुछ नहीं बोलने के लिए ये बोल दो जाओ, और कितने दिन बोलते-बोलते सर तब वर्ल्ड वर्ड टू में, उसके बाद में सात आजाद हुए, देशों में सैनिक तानाशाही थी, फिर भी हमारे लोग मजबूती के साथ इस देश में इस समिदान को टिकाया, डेमोक्रिसी को टिकाया। लेकिन हमारे यहां सत्ता का हस्तारण बोली या बंदूक से नहीं हुआ। महात्मा गांधी जी, हमें जो आजादी दिलाए, वो सिर्फ नॉन वायलेंस, नॉन कोऑपरेशन से। और इसीलिए हमारी, जो समिदान में, हमारी जो जो आदर्श हमारे सामने है, उनके वजह से आज सभी लोग इसका पालन करते हैं और इसको आगे ले जाते हैं। दूसरी बात मैं कहूंगा की इस 9575 सालों के दौरान देश की किस्मत बदली है। और देश की सूरत बदलने वाली तमाम कानून है, यहां बनी है। जमीनदारी अपोलिशन, छुआछोत मिटाने का, ओबीसी का आरक्षण के लिए कानून यहां बने, यहां तक की ईडब्ल्यूएसके भी बने। सभापति जी ने, मैं पहले प्रधानमंत्री नेहरू जी का खास तौर पर जिक्र करना चाहता हूं। उनका मानना था की संसद सभी तभी तक प्रासंगिक है, जब एक समय की बदलती जरूरतों के मुताबिक निरंतर विकसित कतिशील संस्था बनी रहती है। तेजी से बदलाव के दौर में संसद की तेजी से काम करना होगा। ये नेहरू जी का कहना है, तो हम तो कोऑपरेट कर रहे, तेजी से काम करने के लिए, लेकिन कभी-कभी झगड़िया की बात ही ज्यादा होती। सर, नेहरू जी के पहले कैबिनेट में, कैसा, यानी मैं ये बता रहा हूं की पहले कैसे डेमोक्रेटिक वे से पहले चलती थी। नेहरू जी के कैबिनेट में वो सबको अपने साथ लेकर चलते थे। उन्होंने जो पहली कैबिनेट बनाई, उसमें सबसे योग्य लोगों को शामिल किया। जो कांग्रेस में नहीं थे, वैसे पांच लोगों को शामिल किया। साहब, उन्होंने तो पांच अपोजिशन के लोगों को शामिल किया, उनसे समति नहीं होती थी, उनको किया। आप तो हमारी चाय भी नहीं देखना चाहते। उन्होंने पहली कैबिनेट बनाई थी, बाबा साहब और शाम प्रसाद मुकर्जी साहब, समय पांच दूसरी दूसरे धारा के, विचारधारा के लोग थे। अब हो सकता सा
ये कब तक चली सर?
हाँ?
ये, ये प्रम्पा कब तक चली?
नहीं, ये नहीं, देखिए, जब तक, नहीं, उसके बाद में तो हर पार्टी, हर विचारधारा के लोग अपना-अपना फ्लैग लेकर निकला। जब झंडे अलग हो गए, लेकिन इसको बुनियाद डालने के लिए, सान करने के लिए, सबको लेकर जाने के लिए, ये काम उन्होंने किया। अब तक तो चल रहा है, लेकिन एक की आप अपोजिशन को सान नहीं करते, उन्होंने सान करके अपने कैबिनेट में लिया। हाँ, बाबा साहब बंबेडकर, वो देखो, नहीं, अरे सुनो जी, तुमको क्या, तुमको क्या इत्यास मालूम है, मैं बताता हूं। जब कोई भी पार्टी बनाते हैं, तो अलग-अलग पार्टी में होते हैं, तो वो बाद में भैंस करता हूं, मैं आपसे, आओ मेरे पास में सब सबूत है। सर, नेहरू जी के बारे में बहुत बातें बोलते हैं, अपोजिशन के लोग, खासकर बीजेपी के लोग। ये छोड़ दीजिए, जो आदमी 16 साल जेल में रह कर, सब कुछ सान करके, देश के बुनियाद डाल के बड़े-बड़े कारखाने बना के, पब्लिक सेक्टर बना के, नौकरियां दे के, इतने बनाए। वो बुनियाद डालने के बाद देश बड़ा और पांची साल में हम आगे बढ़े। तो मैं आपको आगे थोड़ा सा दिखाऊंगा की किस ढंग से देखिए, बोलते हैं, नेहरू जी के कितना बड़पन था की अपने राजनीतिक विरोधी धारा को, नेता शाम प्रसाद जी को केंद्र में इंडस्ट्री और सप्लाईज़ मिनिस्टर बनाया। नेहरू जी संसद का बहुत सम्मान करते थे और अक्सर अपने सहयोगियों को और युवा संशोधन के लिए एक उदाहरण के रूप में उन्हें डिबेट्स के दौरान धैर्यपूर्वक बैठकर सुनते थे। धैर्यपूर्वक बैठकर सुनते थे, अब अंदर भी नहीं याद है। वो तो धैर्य के अनुसार सुनते थे, लेकिन यहां अंदर भी नहीं याद है प्राइम मिनिस्टर।
दर्शन नहीं मिलती
हाँ, दर्शन तो हमको क्या, क्या भगवान है क्या दर्शन तो हमारे को, यहां कम से कम डेमोक्रेटिक तरीके से आनेन के लिए बोलो, थोड़ा गोयल को भी रिलीफ मिलेगा। नहीं तो हर बात को डिफेंड करना पड़ता है, वो गोयल जी उठना पड़ता है, थोड़ा उनको जरा बिठा के प्राइम मिनिस्टर जरा बोले, अरे हम भी बोलेंगे, हमारे प्राइम मिनिस्टर आए हैं, देखेंगे, इस बार के बहुत दिन हो गए उनको देख के। तो अगर कोई पूछे के, तुम्हारे प्राइम मिनिस्टर कैसे हैं बोले, तो हम मैं क्या हूं, अपोजिशन लीडर हूं। तो ये सर, ये इसलिए कह रहा हूं की एक संसद को जानकारी अरे, क्यों भाई, आपका तारीफ किया हमें?
जब प्रधानमंत्री जी यहां पे आते हैं, तो आप लोग बाहर चले जाते हो।
नहीं, अब ऐसा है, जब वो, नहीं, वो जब वो आते हैं, हम बाहर चलते हैं ना, तुम पहले ही भगाते हो हमको। कुछ कह के झगड़े निकल के, चलो छोड़ दीजिए। नेहरू जी, अरे सब मालूम है, आप कहां बिठाते, कैसा करते? सुनो आप नेहरू जी महत्वपूर्ण मुद्दों पर लगातार विपक्षी नेताओं से मिलते रहते थे। प्रमुख मुद्दों पर भैंस के दौरान सांसदों की बातें ध्यान से सुना करते थे। नेहरू जी ने तो यहां तक कहा था, मुझे इस सदन की शक्तियों से इर्ष्या है और मैं नहीं चाहूंगा की कोई उन शक्तियों को सीमित करने। यानी इतना बड़पन, मैं किसी को सीमित करना नहीं चाहता, सुनना चाहता हूं। सबकी उपीना लेना चाहता हूं, तो ये बात रूनी कही। आज क्या होता है, कोई सुनने, हमारे को सुने, तो भी हमारी बात सुनने के लिए कोई नहीं याद है। बार-बार यही कहते हैं की अब उन्होंने कहा, नेहरू जी के विचार था, मजबूत विपक्ष न होने का अर्थ है व्यवस्था में महत्वपूर्ण खामिया है। अगर मजबूत विपक्ष नहीं है, तो वो ठीक नहीं है, नेहरू जी का कहना। अब जो मजबूत विपक्ष है, तो उसको ईडी, सीबीआई कमजोर कैसा करना? कमजोर कैसा करना, इधर है, अगर कोई है भी है, इमीडिएटली उसको लेना, कमजोर करना, फिर वाशिंग मशीन में डालना क्लीन हो के बाहर आ जाता, वहीं पर परमानेंट है। सर लेकिन आज क्या हो रहा है? ये सब देख रहे हैं, संसद में पीएम साहब कभी कबार आते हैं, जब आते हैं तो इवेंट बनाकर चले जाते हैं। मणिपूर साहब, आपको तो मालूम है, तीन महीने से आज तक दंगे चल रहे हैं, आज तक लोगों को मार रहे हैं, घर जला रहे हैं, आज एक मर गया। तो कितने, इसके बारे में एक स्टेटमेंट दो, हमने इतनी कोशिश की, इतनी कोशिश की, साहब जरा
कोशिश तो मैंने की थी?
नहीं, आपने
कोशिश तो मेरी तरफ से थी।
साहब, नहीं, नहीं
की हर आवत में चर्चा हो
नहीं, नहीं
आधी रात तक चर्चा हो बोले, बोले दीजिए
सर, नहीं, आप, अरे भाई, तुम क्यों ये उनको इरिटेट करते हो? सर, आप तो कोशिश की है, लेकिन आपके बातों को भी वो नहीं मानते। ये मुश्किल है ना, आप हमको बोलते हैं, इसीलिए हम बार-बार आपके तरफ देखते हैं, तो जब हम आपके तरफ देते हैं तो फिर आप उनके तरफ देखते हैं। तो इसीलिए
खड़किया जी, खड़किया जी, मैं मजबूर नहीं हूं, मजबूत हूं।
आप मजबूर
मेरी बात को मानते, तो लोकसभा से पहले चर्चा होती, ज्यादा सार तक चर्चा होती।
साहब, डेमोक्रिसी में
प्रधानमंत्री और ग्रह मंत्री ने लोकसभा में कहा, मैंने बड़ी कोशिश की की इस सदन में व्यापक चर्चा हो, आपने होने नहीं की सर?
नहीं, नहीं
हाँ, होने दी आपने नहीं
ये देखिए
267, सर 267
ये देखिए, ठीक, अरे वो बात गई, जाने दो, बात गई और रात गई सर
चम्मच भी नहीं आते
लेकिन आज क्या हो रहा है, ये सब देख रहे हैं। सर वो देश के कोने-कोने में जाते हैं, लेकिन मणिपूर क्यों नहीं जाते?
सर, पहले आपको शिकायत थी की वो आपकी कॉन्स्टिट्यूट्री में क्यों गई?
नहीं बोल
आपने यहां पर कहा
मैं नहीं बोला
मानने के लिए आपने इस सदन में कहा था की वो मेरे कांस्टिट्यूट्री में क्यों जाते हैं
नहीं 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 साहब वो आने दो मेरे कान सुन से मैं कुछ कम करके दिखा के कुछ तो करते नहीं लेकिन खैर डेमोक्रेसी में हार-जीत तो अलग है लेकिन आते हैं तो इवेंट बनाकर चले जाते मैं चाहता था वो गुलबरगढ़ में एक डिवीजन बने मैं चाहता था वहां एक फैक्ट्री मैंने बनाया था उसको शुरू करें मैं चाहता था वहां पर सेंट्रल यूनिवर्सिटी है वो कुछ इंप्रूव करें और कहां हमारे यादव साहब कहां है हमारे लेबर मिनिस्टर उनसे तो मैं आते-जाते नमस्ते करता हूं साहब मेरा क्या हुआ एक एम्स बना के दो वहां बहुत बड़ा हॉस्पिटल बनाए तो वो उनके कंट्रोल में है उन्हों क्यों उसको इंटरेस्ट नहीं ले रहे जब तक मोदी साहब का परमिशन नहीं मिलता तब तक नहीं देंगे मेरी मुश्किल यह है की आप सरकार के ऊपर सरकार को क्यों रिक्वेस्ट नहीं करते रिक्वेस्ट नहीं वही दबाव डाले तो भी नहीं कर रहे और आते-जाते मैं समझता हूं पचास सलाम तो हो गए होंगे मेरे
पचास सलाम
हान पचास मेरे बाजू में आए ना फिर तो यह ऐसा और अच्छी बिल्डिंग है उन्हों खुद देखे हैं देखकर खैर जाने दो हमारी किस्मत अच्छी नहीं मेरे लोगों की किस्मत अच्छी नहीं वहां के लोग पहले ही बैकवर्ड है और भी उनको दूर रखे तो यह मणिपूर्व को जाना था वहां पर उनके दुखदर्द को देखना था लेकिन आप किसी वजह से वो जा नहीं सक रहे लेकिन इससे यह अच्छा नहीं हो सर सभापति जी अटल जी ने अपने कार्यकाल में 21 बार बयान दिया अटल जी ने अपने कार्यकाल में 21 बार बयान दिया 6 साल में डॉक्टर मनमोन सिंह जी ने 30 बार बयान दिया केवल हमारे मौजूद पीएम साहब मौजूदा पीएम साहब ही ऐसे हैं जो सदन में 9 सालों में कस्टमरी बयानों को छोड़कर केवल दो बार बोले ये डेमोक्रेसी ये डेमोक्रेसी है साहब अब इसको क्या कैसा सुधारते हैं मैं आपको ही छोड़ देता हूं सर दूसरी
थोड़ा सा ज्ञानवर्धन कीजिए ये कस्टमरी बयान कौन सा होता है
हान कस्टमरी बोला तो ये अपने राष्ट्रपति जी का ये जो ऐसे इश्यूज रहते ना
कस्टमरी नहीं
बोलना ही चाहिए
सबसे महत्वपूर्ण तो वही है दिगविजय सिंह जी ये महत्वपूर्ण मुद्दा है की ये भी अगर प्रधानमंत्री उन कस्टमरी मुद्दों पर बोलते हैं वो कितना होशित है I am not in I am not in defence of anyone but I am on hard facts मैं तो समझता था की मानने खड़के जी को शिकायत होगी की प्रधानमंत्री जी इतना ज्यादा क्यों बोलते हैं लोकसभा में राजस्व
साहब नहीं साहब सोचो नहीं साहब
I will ask the secretary yet
नहीं
Have full update on this and inform leader of the opposition in next 3 days
आप अपने स्टाफ को पूछिए अटल बिहारी बाजपेई 21 बार बयान दे बयान देना अलग है कस्टमरी जो उत्तर देना हर चीज पे जो राष्ट्रपति के इस पे भाषण देना वो अलग है तो ये 21 बार बयान जो बाजपेई साहब ने दी अलग-अलग ओकेजन पे दिए सो है वैसा ही मनमोन सिंह जी ने 30 बार दी ये अलग-अलग ओकेजन में दी ये बात मैं बोल रहा हूं वो भाषण देते नहीं बोलते नहीं बाहर भूत बोलते हैं इतना बोलते हैं वो हंस भी नहीं होता हमको इतना बार बोलते हैं साहब वो आपने बोला की मैंने तो चांस दिए तो भी आप लोग नहीं बोलते हैं चर्चा नहीं करते सर हमने पहले 267 में सात बार इसके इस सदन में 267 में सात बार चर्चा हुई क्वेश्चन अवार्ड सस्पेंड करके 10 बार चर्चा हुई
कितने सालों में
हान
कितने सालों में
कितने सालों में
In how many years
देखो मैं कह रहा हूं ये सदन में जो हुआ है लेकिन आप एक बार भी नहीं कर
मुझे कटकरे में खड़ा कर रहे हैं इसलिए आपसे सरकार मांग रहा हूं की जो फिगर दे रहे हैं आपके हाथ में जिन्होंने फिगर दिया
ठीक है मैं उनसे पूछिए
की कितने दशक नहीं है वहां है
नहीं नहीं मैं 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 डेट वाइस
मैं बहुत नरम नरम दिल का आदमी हूं
फिगर देते होंगे सुन लीजिए
Have respect for your leader
ये बैठो भाई आपको चेयरमैन साहब को ऐसा नहीं सताना चाहिए
सर पहले तो आप उखाते हो और फिर उनको डांटते हो
बेच मां ऐसा बीच में बोल
आपने पहले बारी बात भी बहुत सही कही थी I became the first chamber where leader of opposition declined to see him in the chamber at my request yes I noticed
सर संसद और विदानसभा जनता की सर्वोच्च प्रतिनिधित्व संस्थाएं जिनके माध्यम से जनाकांक्षाओं को अभिव्यक्त अभिव्यक्ति मिलती है और बदलते समय में जनता की अपेक्षाएं बढ़ रही है लिया जा सदनों में स्तरीय चर्चा होनी चाहिए इन चर्चाओं को पूरा देश लाइव देखना चाहिए इसको जरा ठीक करिया तो मेरा दिख रहा है बाकी के वक्त तो किसी अपोजिशन का आता ही नहीं ज्यादा वो जरा क्या कंट्रोल हमारे गोयल साहब करते हैं और फूल करते मुझे मालूम नहीं लेकिन वो बोल दीजिए कम से कम हमको तो बाहर चांस नहीं मिलता यहां तो चांस मिलता है तो जरा दिखाते दीजिए जनता के जनता के सवाल उठा सकते हैं अब जब भी हमारे ये अभी तेलंगाना के नेता उठा रहे थे ऐसा उठते रहते हैं हम डांटते रहते हैं लेकिन वो जो कहते हैं कम से कम यहां अगर रजिस्टर हुआ तो बाहर भी मालूम होता भाई हमारी बात कोई रखे हो अब इसीलिए ऐसी चीजें समिदानिक ये मुख्य है और समिदानिक तरीके से हम जो कम करते हैं उसको आपका प्रोत्साहन मिलना चाहिए और सरकार का भी हमको देने का ये कोशिश होनी चाहिए और ये संसद लोगों के हितों तथा अधिकारों का सौरक्षक है और आप हमारे गार्डियन है गार्डियन है और अगर हमारे ऊपर कुछ अन्याय हो रहा है फौरन आप हमारे अपने को सुरक्षण देने वाले आप ही हैं नहीं तो हम इतने कम लोग हैं उतने सब लोग अगर हमको मारते फिटते रहेंगे तो फिर बाद में आपके पास कौन रहेगा हमें रोना पड़ता तो इसीलिए जरा आपका सुरक्षण जरूरी है और मैं यह कहूंगा करोना के महामारी में भी बहुत कुछ कमियां थी फिर भी हमारे देश में उसको भी ठीक ढंग से निभाने की कोशिश हो गई लेकिन चंद जगह जैसा यूपी है दूसरे स्टेट से उसमें जो भी कमियां थी वो भी यहां पर हमने पहले चर्चा में लाए थे और उसका पूरा जिक्र यहां पर हुआ पहले का जो 33 दिन का था 20 में फिर उसके बाद 21 में 58 दिन था फिर 22 में 56 दिन था ये करोना के जो बड़े-बड़े जो भी ये थे वो तो खरम सर सभापति जी दुनिया भर में वैसे तो 19वीं सदी में निर्वित दो दर्जन संसद भवन उपयोग में लाया जा रहे भारत में लोगों की दिल दिमाग पर 144 कम्बों वाली एक गोल इमारत छाई हुई है यही देश की आजादी के बाद से 75 सालों में सारे महत्वपूर्ण फैसले यहां पर हुए इस इमारत की वस्तुकला पर भारती परंपरा की छाप है लेकिन इसको नफरत से नहीं देखना चाहिए क्योंकि इस सदन में नेहरूजी बैठे थे अम्बेडकर बैठे थे और बहुत से नेता बड़े-बड़ा वाला भाई पटेल ये सब बैठे हैं इसलिए भूल ही जाना उधर ही जाएंगे ऐसा शुरू है कल लेके जा रहे हैं सर हमको अभी मालूम नहीं हो गया सर सभापति जी संसद का सबसे बेहतरीन कम का पहली लोकसभा में मैं बता रहा हूं 1952 से 1957 के बीच सिर्फ 5 साल में माना जाता है की जिसमें 600 677 बैठ के 319 विरेक पारित हुए 5 साल में और उसे दौरान कानूनों पर हुई भैंस जिदनासा और खेदर बनी हुई संसद का मुख्य कम कानून बनाना है लोगों को सशक्त बनाना है इसीलिए ये नीतियां यहां पर सही होती थी और सभी लोग एकमत से ऐसे नीतियों को सपोर्ट करते थे सर राजसभा और लोकसभा में एक से एक अनुभवी संसद आज भी है पहले भी थे और उसके लिए सबको जरा बोलने की आजादी भी मिलनी चाहिए क्योंकि अगर बोलने की आजादी नहीं मिली सिर्फ हम लोग हो सकता है मेरी भी गलती हो सकती है नहीं बोल के नहीं बोलता लेकिन मेरी गलती एक छोटा गलती को मेरे छोटे गलती को आप बहुत बड़ी सजा देते हैं और वो इतना बड़ा गलतियां करते हैं सारा देश देखता है सब उधर माफ कर देते हो तो इसीलिए मैं कृपा करके दोनों बैलेंस करके चले दोनों बैलेंस करके अगर चलेंगे तो हमको भी एक मौका मिलेगा बार-बार आपके आपको कहने का विनंति करने का ये सब चीजें होती सर और एक कानून बनाते समय बिल्लों की स्टैंडिंग कमेटी में छानबीन के लिए नहीं भेजा जाता तो कम से कम ये तो करना चाहिए सर ये तो आपको हक है नहीं 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 इस बिल में खामिया है इसीलिए इसको स्टैंडिंग कमेटी को भेजना चाहिए और इसके लिए सभी लोग मैं आपको उदाहरण के तौर पर चंद चीजें बता कमेटियों को भेजे जाने वाले बिल्स का प्रतिशत 2009 और 14 के दौरान 71% था 71% था वहीं 16वीं लोकसभा में 2014 से 2019 के बीच घटकर 27% हो गया रह गया और 2019 के बाद इसमें इतनी गिरावट आ गई 13% रह गया साहब कहा 71% और फिर पूछते हैं आपने क्या किया क्या किया यही की हम 71% स्टैंडिंग कमेटी को भेजा छानबीन करके और आपने क्या किया 13% 27% ये इससे बिल कैसे स्क्रोटनाइज होंगे वो दैसा दिल में आया वैसा हो जाएगा फिर बाद में हम पस्ताएंगे फिर सुप्रीम कोर्ट बोलेगा इसको छानबीन करके नहीं लाए और वहां के सभी एमपी और राजसभा के मेंबर लोकसभा के मेंबर शायद अनपढ़ भून गए समझते नहीं वैसा ही भेज दिए तो उधर से एक तिप्पणी हमको सुप्रीम कोर्ट से बाकी के जनता लोग ये कहते हैं की भाई हमारे बारे में ये सोचते नहीं सोचकर कानून नहीं बनाते लेकिन आप गड़बड़ी में इतने कानून भेज देते हो वो बुलेट ट्रेन से भी फास्ट आता है बुलेट ट्रेन से भी फास्ट फिल पास होते हैं तो इसीलिए सर मैं अभी 5 मिनट लूंगा फिर आपको बोर नहीं करूंगा
आपने देखा समय खत्म हो गया 5 मिनट से
आज आलम यह है की सरकार विदेशियों को सीमित समय में पारित करने से लेकर सदनों की बैठक कम से कम करने की कोशिश हो चाहिए इस कारण कानून की गुणवत्ता वैसी नहीं रही थी जो व्यापक विचारमंतन या छानबीन से गुजरे कानूनों की होती है आज आलम यह भी है 2021 में भारत के प्रधान न्यायदेश ने कहा की बिना व्यापक 22 के जल्दबाजी में संसद में कानून बनाने से गंभीर खामिया रह जाती है कहीं पहलू अस्पष्ट रह जाते हैं वही बात मैंने कहा और ये इसका हालत ये नहीं होती थी की लोग यहां पर बॉर्डर पे किसान हमारे बैठ नहीं सकते थे तीन कृषि कानून ऐसी जल्दबाजी में किए की वो तीनों कानून फिर बाद में एजिटेशन होने के बाद फेरना पड़ा तो ये ऐसे करने से किसान भी है आज हमारे ऊपर नाराज है की पार्लियामेंट ऐसा क्यों करती है और एक सर 30 जनवरी 2011 को तत्कालिन विपक्ष नेता अरुण जेटली जी ये भाग किए संसद का क्योंकि हमारे बार-बार वो बोलते हैं आप गए भाग गए नहीं सुने ये बोलते हैं लेकिन हम जब अपनी बात रखने की कोशिश करते हैं हम ये नहीं है की किसी से झगड़ा करना डिस्टर्ब करना शांति के साथ जब अपनी बात को नहीं रख सकते तब लोग हमारे इरिटेट होते हैं की हम इतनी कोशिश करके लोगों के मुद्दों को आपके सामने रखना चाहते हैं मौका नहीं मिल रहा ये होता है किसी से दुश्मन ही नहीं है हम सब एक ही है और सभी मिलकर ही देश को देश के भलाई में सोचते हैं तरीके अलग-अलग होंगे सर राजसभा में इस जगह बैठ सी थी तत्कालिन नेता विपक्ष अरुण जेटली ने 30 जनवरी 2011 को कहा था संसद का कम है चर्चा करना लेकिन कई मौकों पर जब मुद्दों का अनदेखी होती है तो अवरोध पैदा करना लोकतंत्र के हित में होता है मैं और एक बार पढ़ूं आगे पढ़ो अच्छा होती है अवरोध पैदा करना लोकतंत्र के हित में होता है लिया जा संसदीय अवरोध को लोकतांत्रिक नहीं कहा जाता नहीं कहा जा सकता तो ये उन्होंने जो शिकाया वही कम जब हमारे तरफ से होता है हमारे को ठोकते जाते हैं तो सर ये जो अवरोध पैदा करना लोकतंत्र के हित में होता है लिया जा संसदीय अवरोध को लोकतांत्रिक नहीं कहा जा सकता ये उनकी बातें हैं और मैं ये भी आपको कहूंगा की उसे हाउस में सुषमा सौराज भी यही बात कही थी संसद को ना चलने देना भी अन्य तरीकों की तरह लोकतंत्र का एक रूप है तो ये सारे चीजें वहीं से आए और मैं आपसे ये विनंति करूंगा की खास करके दिग्गस नेताओं को यहां पर जो उनके बारे में उनको जो समय देना चाहिए और मैं और एक छोटी सी बात दो-चार रख के मेरे भाषण को खत्म कर विपक्षी नेताओं के कई प्रमुख तत्यों को सत्ता पक्ष की मांग पर कार्रवाई से बाहर निकाला जाता है और उसके लिए ही मैं आपको पहले आते ही विनंति किया छोटी-मोटे चीजें जब होती है आप तो ऊपर हैं हम सब से हम नीचे हैं तो हमारे ऊपर पहला हाथ आप ही कहता है क्योंकि हम नीचे रहने से तो ये जो है
सर आज तो आपका पूरा अटैक मेरे प्रिय है आप मूर्ति से भटक गए
नहीं
आप खुद देखेंगे की आपने क्या कहा है अब तक विषय से बिल्कुल भटक गए सर
नहीं
दूर-दूर तक चलेंगे
साहब ये तो
मैं और देश की जनता उम्मीद करती थी की यहां से ऐसा मैसेज जाएगा की आगे का रास्ता कैसे होगा
देखो साहब
आपने खड़के जी कहा कौन बोल रहे हैं You must learn to be decorous He is ill dead He is ill dead पहली बार सदन में कुछ डेकोरम हो रहा है तो परेशानी क्यों होनी चाहिए You will get the chance sir You are a very senior member you will get the chance Subsequent good idea It's a good idea But that I will do at 1 o'clock That I will do at 1 o'clock खड़के जी मैं मानने सदस्यगण को अपील करूंगा और लगातार मैंने बात कही है और गैंच चिंतन और मंत्र के बात कही है की कब तक हम की कब तक हम पास्ट प्रेसिडेंट को लेकर हाउस को disturb करते रहेंगे कब तक हम disturbance को justify करते रहेंगे आप अंदाज़ा लगाइए खड़के जी मेरे पर क्या बीतरी होगी जब आप बोल रहे थे की मुझे बोलने नहीं देते हो आप मैं इतना आकलन करता हूं और दुखी होता हूं की जहां पार्टिसिपेशन हो सकता था वहां आप लोग थे ही नहीं मतलब आप अंदाज़ा लगाइए इफ लीडर ऑफ डी ओपोजिशन वुड राइज ऑन दिस क्रिटिकल ओकेजन तू सेंक्टिफाई disturbance disruption आपने खुद कॉन्स्टिट्यूट रिसेंबली को कोर्ट किया है जयराम जी दिस इस नॉट अन गुड हैबिट नो नो यू आर अन विक्टिम ऑफ दिस हैबिट डोंट अन दिस हैबिट नो दिस इस नॉट अन व्हेन डी ओनरेबल एलओपी हैव इल्डेड व्हाय आर यू बीइंग सुपर एलओपी यू कांट बी इट डोंट नीड असिस्टेंट नो नो यू वांट तू लिसन तू हिम बट इट इस रेगुलेटेड बाय डी चेयर अदरवाइस कम और सिटी यहां और कंट्रोल इट एवरी टाइम एवं इफ यू हैव एवं इफ यू हैव देयर इस अन मैकेनिज्म नो प्लीज 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 टेक तुम माने खड़के जी दिस इस अन रेयर हिस्टोरिक ओकेजन वेयर आफ्टर टेकिंग नोट ऑफ 75 इयर्स वी आर रिक्वायर्ड तू अनफोर्ड अन विजन फॉर नेक्स्ट 25-50 इयर्स आई नो इट आई नो इट व्हाट इट नोस एंड इन डी एंटीर डिस्कोर्स यू हैव फोकस्ड ऑन तू थिंग सर आई 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 फाइंड इट डी प्रॉब्लम इस डी प्रॉब्लम इस व्हेन देयर इस टाइम तू पार्टिसिपेट आई हैव सीन अप्सेंस डी प्रॉब्लम इस व्हेन एन इश्यू हैव तू बी डिबेटेड डिस्कस्ड डिलीब्रेटेड यू हैव वोकेट आउट ऑफ डी हाउस प्रॉब्लम इस प्रॉब्लम इस सिर्फ आई हैव सेड वैन सेकंड दिग्गिजा जी सर लेट हिम स्पीक विद माय मोडस अंडरस्टैंडिंग आई कैन टेल यू एंड आई एम अन ग्रेट जजमेंट ऑफ मी सेल्फ आई सेल्फ जज आई कैन टेल यू आई एम नॉट अन स्टेकहोल्डर इन पॉलिटिक्स आई एम सर्टेनली स्टेकहोल्डर डी दिस सुपर हाउस डी हाउस ऑफ एल्डर्स कंडक्ट इट्सेल्फ इन अन मैनर सो डेट इट अर्न्स रिस्पेक्ट ऑफ अदर्स वी मस्ट डिप्लोमा आर कंडक्ट बाय डेकोरम डिसिप्लिन वैन सेकंड वैन सेकंड वैन सेकंड सर वुड यू अप्रूव डेट तू ओनरेबल मेंबर शुड एवरी टाइम कम तू डी रेस्क्यू ऑफ एलओपी इट इस नॉट अन इसर्ट तू डी पोजीशन ही होल्स पुट सन पीपल इन डिसिप्लिन कोर्ट आई वुड आर्च इफ यू डोंट कर्व डी टेंडेंसीज ऑफ अदर मेंबर्स लेट मी टेल यू थिंग्स विल गेट ऑन अन टेंडेंशियल रूट एंड देयर वाज एन ओकेजन व्हेन यू वांटेड तू स्पीक एंड सम्बंधी सेड गिव दिग्गिजा सिंह जी एन अपॉर्चुनिटी इन डी प्रोसेस डी ओनरेबल मेंबर वाज इंसुल्टिंग यू इंसुल्टिंग मी वी डोंट वांट डेट सो आई ऑल आई से इस ऑल आई से इस वी हैव हैड सन डिस्कशन वी हैव तू इमानेट फ्रॉम दिस थिएटर अन मोस्ट इंपॉर्टेंट मैसेज तू डी वर्ल्ड आउटसाइड कंकुर सर ओनरेबल मेंबर्स विद डी सेंस ऑफ डी हाउस वी आर कंटिन्यू ड्यूरिंग डी लंच रिसेस एस वेल
सर थैंक यू सर क्या टॉलरेंस सर सभापति जी मैं अब ज्यादा बात नहीं करना चाहता हूं क्योंकि अब टेंशन में ए रहा है मांग रहा तो सर हम बहुत दिन से यह कोशिश कर रहे हैं सभी की इच्छा है की महिला रिसर्वेशन का बिल आना चाहिए और महिलाओं को देना चाहिए जो ड्यू है आज तक हमने सब कोशिश की लेकिन अब मैं समझता हूं जब आप यह मुद्दा उठाएंगे तो जरूर आपके बात को मान्यता वो दे देगी तो मैं ये आकड़े इसलिए देता हूं थोड़े से सर सभापति जी दुनिया बदल गई है इस समय राजसभा में 10% और लोकसभा में 14% महिला सांसद है विधानसभाओं में महिलाओं की भागीदारी 10% है 1952 में नेहू जी के प्रधानमंत्री काल में पहली लोकसभा में केवल वो भी 5% सांसद महिला है थी लेकिन 70 साल के बाद भी आज 14 15 10 के अंदर ही है महिला थी तो अमेरिकी मैं और भी आकड़े देता हूं की महिलाओं को दूसरे जगह भी ऐसा ही हो रहा अमेरिकी सांसद में 2% ब्रिटेन में 3% महिला सांसद थे आज अमेरिका की सांसद में 28% और ब्रिटेन में 33% महिला सांसद आज है तो इसीलिए मैं आपसे गुजारिश करूंगा की इस महिलाओं का जो बिल है इसको आप यह कर दीजिए और दूसरी चीज अनइंप्लॉमेंट की बात चल रही है की क्योंकि इस 75 साल में हम जब बात करते हैं इधर-इधर अनइंप्लॉमेंट इतना पद रहा है इतना बड़ा 8 करोड़ लोग एजुकेटेड वो आज रस्ते पे है और इन्फ्लेशन तो सब पद रहा आपको मालूम है वो कोई टमाटर डाल के आए तो आपने बहुत उसको डाटा वो हकीकत थी ₹400 ₹500 शायद आप आप मकान में नहीं पूछे शायद की आजकल टमाटर की प्राज की तेल की दाल की क्या किमत है वो हिसाब आप नहीं पूछ रहे क्योंकि पूरा जुम्मेदारी उनको वहां छोड़े और बाकी का जुम्मेदारी आप यहां लिए इसीलिए जरा मुश्किल होगा लेकिन यह जरूरी है इन्फ्लेशन कंट्रोल करना इंपॉर्टेंट है नहीं तो डिस्ट्रॉय हो जाएगा डेमोक्रेसी अनइंप्लॉमेंट अगर पढ़ती गई तो डेमोक्रेसी नहीं रहेगी इसीलिए मैं आपसे विनंति करता हूं की इन चीजों को कुछ उत्तर दे फिर हमने वो किया यह किया यह ठीक है जी 2 ठीक है नहीं क्योंकि वो जीरो में कमल का फूल ही दिखता अब देखिए सब वो आप आप देखिए आप देखिए वो कभी भी अडवर्टाइजमेंट
तो मेरवानी करके जी 20 की बजात मत थोड़ा ये जी 20 लेकिन लेकिन सर शायद माने लीडर ऑफ डी ओपोजिशन कांग्रेस के अध्यक्ष भी है उनको तो सिर्फ 2G ही दिखता है 1G एंड सन जी
ये देखो सर मैं ईमानदारी के साथ कहता हूं देश की जब बात आती है उसमें हम सब लोग एक है उसमें कोई फर्क नहीं लेकिन तुम बार-बार वो बुत्ता मत लो तुम भी पैट्रियोट हो पैट्रियोट हमारे लोग हैं जान हमारे लोग दिए मर गए हमारे लोग मजा आप उठा रहे हो और हमको सिखा दे हो सर आखिरी आखिरी एक बात करके मैं खत्म करता हूं
आप बहुत दुश्मन वाले
सर हमारी वतन परिस्थिति के अनगिनत तारीखें हैं हमारी वतन परिस्थिति के अनगिनत तारीखें हैं बेशुमार हिस्सा है हो भी क्यों ना वतन से मोहब्बत हो भी क्यों ना वतन से मोहब्बत ये तो हमारे ईमान की हिस्सा है तो धन्यवाद सर आपने इतना टाइम दिया
आपने खड़के जी आपने आज पढ़े शुरू में और आखिर में और पहले भी पढ़ा था तो माने वंकय नायुजी का फेयरबल था और आपने कहा मौसम कैसा होगा इतना सताएगा उसी
आपका अट्यूट देने के बाद रियली मौसम फिर जो पीछे गया पहले का जो था वो आ गया
ओनरेबल मेंबर्स ओनरेबल एलओपी हैव रिफ्लेक्टेड आई वुड अगेन अपील तू एवरीवन इट इस नॉट अन टाइम फॉर अस तू बी एजिटेड वी हैव तू सेंड अन मैसेज फ्रॉम दिस प्लेस हो आवर भारत विल मूव फॉर नेक्स्ट सेवरल डिकेट्स एंड देयरफॉर व्हेन व्हेन वी मेक लाइट ऑफ सर्टेन थिंग्स लाइक जी 20 जी 20 कांट बी रिड्यूस्ड तू जी 2 एंड दें लोटस आई वैन सेकंड वैन सेकंड डी वर्ल्ड ओर्डर हैव बीन डिफाइंड फॉर डी फर्स्ट टाइम जी 20 हैव बीन सो इंपैक्टफुल डेट ग्लोबल ओर्डर हैव बीन डिफाइंड इनक्लुजन ऑफ अफ्रीकन यूनियन इस बीइंग ग्लोबली अपलोडेड
कहीं वो मत डालना मैं इसलिए मैं जो वहां फोटो डाल रहे हैं उनकी बात कर रहा हूं जी 20 का मैं भी जी 20 में शामिल हो गए हैं लेबर मिनिस्टर के हैशएप से 10 जी 20 मीटिंग में गया अमेरिका अमेरिका गया इटली गया ब्राजील गया लुला का जो उसे वक्त आज आपने हैंड और किया लुला को वो पहले प्राइम मिनिस्टर थे मैं कैसा रिस्पेक्ट देना देश के बारे में मैं पहले ही बोला देश के विचय में देश का जब भी कोई ये आता है हम पहले लोग हैं उसके लिए सर के ऊपर रखते हैं तो इसीलिए आप ये मत बोलिए जो लिखा हुआ बोल रहे हैं वो बोल
नहीं देखिए माने खड़के जी मेरे को भी सोभागे मिला दुनिया के नेताओं से चर्चा करने का एंड हो प्राउड आई फेल्ट डी वर्ल्ड बैंक का प्रेसिडेंट कहता है आवर अटेनमेंट इन 6 इयर्स इस समथिंग विस कांट बी अटेन्ड इन 50 इयर्स श्री मोहम्मद नदीमूल हक
सर थैंक यू वेरी मच फॉर गिविंग मी डी चांस तू स्पीक ऑन दिस
4 मिनट्स टाइम रोटेड
थैंक यू फॉर लिमिटिंग थैंक यू फॉर लिमिटिंग मी अलसो सर सर डी वर्ल्ड फेडरल इस नॉट मेंशन इन डी कॉन्स्टिट्यूशन एवं वंस यदि इट इस डी स्पिरिट एंड सोल ऑफ दिस कंट्री रिमेंबर डेट दिस इस नॉट डी हाउस ऑफ एल्डर्स इट इस डी काउंसिल ऑफ स्टेट्स डोंट डू अन्यथिंग डेट विल हर्ट फेडरलिज्म डोंट डू अन्यथिंग डेट विल कंप्रोमाइज डी स्टेट्स डोंट असॉल्ट फेडरलिज्म फेडरलिज्म इस अन नेशन्स प्रेशियस असेट सर डिप्राइविंग डी स्टेट ऑफ फंड्स इस अन थ्रेड तू डेमोक्रेसी लेट मी गिव यू एन एग्जांपल ऑफ माय स्टेट बंगाल लेबरर्स वो वर्क अंडर मनरेगा फ्रॉम 2021 तिल नौ हैव नॉट बीन पेड डी वेजेस अमाउंटिंग क्लोज तू 4000 करोड़ रुपीस इफ वी इनक्लूड डी नॉन वेज कंपोनेंट डी अमाउंट गोज अप तू 7000 करोड़ रुपीस सर और मैडम 11 लैक्स 36000 बेनिफिशियरीज हैव बीन डेनाइड डी ग्रामीन आवास योजना अंडर डिफरेंट स्कीम्स डी यूनियन गवर्नमेंट हैव ब्लॉक्ड 10000 ऑफ़ करोड़ तू बंगाल दिस इस नॉट फेडरल दिस इस अगेंस्ट डी स्टेट्स 75 इयर्स अगो डॉक्टर बीआर अंबेडकर सेड एंड आई कोर्ट डी इंडियन कॉन्स्टिट्यूशन इस अन फेडरल कॉन्स्टिट्यूशन इन एस मच एट इट इस एस्टेब्लिश व्हाट मेबी कॉल्ड अन डुअल पॉलिटी विच विल कंसिस्ट ऑफ डी यूनियन आते डी सेंटर एंड डी स्टेट्स आते डी फेरिफेरी ईच एंडॉयड विथ सोवरेन्ट पावर्स तू बी एक्सरसाइड इन डी फील्ड असाइन तू डेम रिस्पेक्टिवली बाय डी कॉन्स्टिट्यूशन एंड कोर्ट रिमेंबर डेट डी डबल इंजिन गवर्नमेंट डेट यू प्रपोज इस अगेंस्ट डी फेडरलिज्म डेट अन फाउंडर्स एनविजन फॉर दिस कंट्री इट इस अगेंस्ट डी वेरी स्पिरिट ऑफ इंडिया सर मैडम टुडे इन 2023 आई कोर्ट अरुण धुति राय एंड आई कोर्ट इट इस नॉट लोंगर जस्ट डी लीडर्स डेट वी मस्ट फेयर बट अन होल सेक्शन ऑफ डी पापुलेशन डी पेनलिटी ऑफ इवेल डी नॉर्मलाइजेशन ऑफ इवेल इस नॉट मैनिफेस्ट इन अन स्ट्रीट्स इन अन क्लासरूम्स इन वेरी मेंे पब्लिक स्पेसेस डी मेंस्ट्री प्रेस डी 100 ऑफ़ 24 आवर्स न्यूज़ चैनल्स हैव बीन हार्नेस्ट तू डी कॉज ऑफ़ फाशिस्ट मेजोरिटारियनिज्म इंडिया कॉन्स्टिट्यूशन हैव बीन इफेक्टिवली सेड असाइड डी पेनल कोड इस बीइंग रीडिटन एंड कोर्ट मैडम इन कंक्लुजन आई मस्ट से डेट इंडिया की इक्विलिटी डिपेंड्स ऑन फैर प्ले डोंट पेनलाइज डोट स्टेट्स डेट हैव डून बेटर इन सक्सेसफुल इंप्लीमेंटेशन ऑफ स्कीम्स बट ओपोज यू पॉलिटिकली पॉलिटिकल पार्टीज कम और गो प्राइम मिनिस्टर्स विल कम और गो बट इंडिया इट्स पार्लिमेंट एंड इट्स कॉन्स्टिट्यूशन विल रिमेन फॉरएवर थैंक यू वेरी मच
श्री आरके राजेश कुमार ईसक्रीम पत्र
गोइंग थ्रू अन चेंज मैन वील कम इन डी सेकंड सीक्वेंस वील कम लिटिल लेटर इन डी सीक्वेंस वी कम लिटिल लेटर इन डी सीक्वेंस
श्री अमरपत नाज एसके निरंजन रेडी रामनाथ ठाकुर अब्सेंट अब्सेंट शक्ति सिंह गोइल
थैंक यू मैम मैं आज यह बात करना चाहूंगा की हम जिस तरह से संसदीय परंपराओं की पार्लामेंट्री प्रोसीजर की बात करते हैं तब मैं तो गुजरात से आता हूं जब फर्स्ट स्पीकर ऑफ लोकसभा गणेश पवसुदेव माउलंकर जी जिसे माउलंकर दादा के नाम से पहचाना जाता था वो उसे थे महाराज से परकर्म भूमि गुजरात की होने के नाते गुजरात में एक बहुत बढ़िया परंपराएं वहां बनी और उसी को चलते देखते हुए आज जब मुझे यहां बात करना है तब मैं सबसे पहले तो यही कहूंगा की भवन बदलने से कुछ नहीं होगा दिल की भावना बदलनी चाहिए इन परंपराओं को ठीक करने के लिए जो कम हमें करना चाहिए उसकी आज जरूरत है लोकतंत्र में सर्वोपरी सबसे अच्छा दुनिया में माना जाता है लोकतंत्र को की डेमोक्रेसी इस डी बेस्ट सिस्टम फिर भी हम क्या कहते हैं की राम राज्य हो तो अच्छा ये क्यों कहते हैं हम क्योंकि वो एक ऐसा राजा था जो लोगों की आवाज़ सुनता था एक धोबी की आवाज़ निकली प्रशासक के खिलाफ राजा के खिलाफ तो राजा ने उसको देश द्रोही नहीं माना राजा ने यह नहीं कहा की ये धोबी उसके वहां इडी सीडी सीबीआई भेज डन राजा ने कहा की राजा शक से परे होना चाहिए हम बात करते हैं राम राज्य की क्यों बात करते हैं क्योंकि वो शासक वो राजा ऐसा था की झूठे बेर एक शबरी मां के आए तो महिला सम्मान में वो शासक विश्वास रखता था वो झूठे बेर उसे मां शबरी के उन्होंने खा लिए और हम आज क्या बात करते हैं मणिपुर में एक महिला के पर अत्याचार होता है सुप्रीम कोर्ट फटकार लगती लगती है तब तक हमारे शासक को उसे महिला सम्मान की चिंता नहीं होती है तब जाके हमें चिंता होती है हम बात करते हैं लोकतंत्र की मैंने एक कहानी सुनी थी वो कहानी यह थी की एक गांव में एक शासक था बड़ा ही डिक्टेटर था पर वो पूरे गांव को इकट्ठा करता था और फिर कहता था मैं यह करना चाहता हूं और गांव के लोग हां बोलते थे एक दिन उसी गांव का एक आदमी का बेटा जो बाहर के राज्य में पढ़ने गया था वो आया और उसने सुना की बड़ी अच्छी बात है हमारे राजा तो हमारे शासक पूरे गांव को पूछते हैं और फिर तय करते हैं मैं भी आऊंगा उसके बाप ने कहा बेटे आना है तो आ पर जो सब कहते हैं उसमें हां हां बोलना और कुछ मत बोलना गया बेटा वहां शासक ने कहा बकरी ले गई ऊंट को पूरे नगर ने कहा हां जी हां जी वो लड़का खड़ा हो गया की बकरी इतनी The kid was standing there, thinking, "How can I bring such a small bag of rice? I don't agree with you." The council was destroyed. As soon as he came home, his father shouted, "What have you done?" He said, "I told you honestly." He said, "No." "Bring a bag of rice, yes, yes," is required. Because this is the bottom of the ruling class. And after a while, he came. The police officer, "You ruined the festival." He took the baby and brought him. A while later, the income tax rate was raised. A while later, the EDI. A while later, the CBI. The whole house was destroyed. So this man is also a ruler. People say, "Bring a bag of rice, yes, yes," is required. To live in that village. I want to say, that when the council meeting happened, Baba Sahib Ambedkar gave that speech. You will see it. I request you, through you, and thank you, Speaker Mira Kumar, Congresswoman Agavai, the UPAs, who made a documentary, a very good film, about the council meeting. I will finish in two minutes. Ma'am, when Ambedkar gave this speech in the council meeting, and said, that when we came, when we came, I became a member, and understood that we should talk about some people. I was surprised when I became a member of the drafting committee. I was more surprised when I became chairman of the drafting committee. And when all these things were over, I was more surprised. But for all things, I believe in the Indian National Congress Party's discipline. I give it my best. And I will end this conversation in one line. When they say, "Nehru," I say, that Atal Bihari Bajpai, who said a few words for Nehru, we should read them one time. We should remember them one time. Those who spoke were the people of the opposition. Bajpai, who said, "Nehru," I should remember him as a minimum. Then, you will never speak against Nehru. Life is precious, the environment is precious. We have to raise the frontier, and protect the parrots. Time is limited. So I will not talk long, but I will finish my conversation.
Director MK Thammeeturi.
Madam Deputy Chairman. I rise to participate. Three minutes, sir, can, what can I say? I don't know. Madam, as some members expressed, this is not an elderly's house. This is a Rajya Sabha, representing the state's representatives. We are aware, come over here. To see the federalism has to be established. That is the history. For that, only this house is there. I served as five times Lok Sabha member there, and also two times deputy speaker of Lok Sabha, and preceding officer, also 15 years I have done that. That the history is there. I want to say, sir, first of all, madam. In this house, our founder, Driven Party leader, Per Anna, was, came here and sat in this house. He fought, he was a single member at that time. Driven Party came at that time. Then, two Lok Sabha members at that time. Now, afterwards, the development took a different way. My leader, Prachit Alavi Amma, created history, Indian history, bringing 50 members of the parliament. Thirty-seven member Lok Sabha member, thirteen Rajya Sabha members, like that, 50 members, we have developed in this history. In the Lok, in parliament, the parliament. Thirty-seven Lok Sabha member, highest member, we got the Driven Party. Then, thirteen members here Rajya Sabha. That total 50 members, we started. When we Anna started, but number one, and took, like that, history took place. Madam, however, when Anna was here, he fought for the federalism under the language issue. Because here, the language is one of the important issue we have wanted discussing. Every time, the federalism is not respecting the regionalism. Especially for Tamil Nadu, we all fight for our language. Per Anna said, "We are fine, we are want, Tamil has to be made as the official language of this country." That is the spirit of the thing. Not only Tamil, whatever the eight scheduled languages, all the languages must be the national language of this country. That is what he raised here. We don't know what is going to be implemented and going to achieve. Madam, at the same time, I want to make some other points. Then afterwards, our democracy has developed. We have, 1967 onwards, our only Driven Parties are ruling Tamil Nadu. But National Party cannot enter. That is the situation is taking place. Because the regionalism is also important. That is why we are representing in the Rajya Sabha, the rights of the states. That shades are treated, some kind of stepmenian treatment, and they are not, you are not to get sufficient amount. During my present, General Secretary of ADMK, Eda Padi Palinsami, was the chief minister. He raised many occasions, we wanted more funds from the state, but we could not get. In spite of that, he ruled very well and got the good name. Four years, he established a good government in Tamil Nadu and became appreciated by everyone. So I am telling, because even though we are now some limited members in the Rajya Sabha, we are still fighting for our Tamil Nadu people, for Kaveri issue, like the important issue which is suffering now, the Kachetvi issue. They, despite without approval of the parliament of the both houses, that 1972, 74, 75, at that time, the Congress people only given the Kachetvi to the Sri Lanka government. Still, it is part of India. It is not approved by this parliament. We are fighting for that. ADMK is fighting for that. Our Amma, I went to the Supreme Court and filed at the time, this Kachetvi is a part of our India because our Tamil fishermen is suffering that. There are this kind of rights we have to fight. And this history, we are going fighting, madam. Madam, and also, apart from that, now we are facing so many problems. But the parliament also, we raised regarding, for example, take pandemic situation. At that time, we all united together, how to solve this one. Our former, our Prime Minister, Narendra Modi G., successfully has done so many wonderful things. And also, state government, Eda Padi Palinsami, during this period, implemented a lot of schemes to save the people of India. Because central government also gave a lot of assistance to the state governor at this, cooperating with us, with the help of our Honorable Prime Minister, Narendra Modi G., and order Eda Padi Palinsami, done excellent work at that time, as a democratic way, because the history shows how the parliament is functioning and how we are playing the game for the welfare of the people. Therefore, even though the building is, we are seeing that, sometimes they say it is built by British people. It is not, it is our Indian property we are having here. Even though we are moving from this building to another building, the site is also on the same area where the British people established our building. It's not, somewhere not removed from this place to any other place. Therefore, conveniently, we are moving to that place. I am appreciating our Modi G., has come forward to establish a new building to accommodate more members and also with the good facilities. For that, we are going to move that building, not any other sense. Therefore, democracy in the 1975 years, we have come, joined, we have so much journey, so many obstacles we had, so many times, we tried so many issues. The parliament also. At the same time, madam, I am very grateful that you have given sufficient time also. But still, I am going insisting that federalism must be protected and giving the more rights to the states, not only Tamil Nadu, other states also. And also, I request, whatever Per Anna raised the issue, make all Tamil my language and other Telugu and other Malayalam and other Malayati, other all languages, especially the official language of the country. That is the spirit we have to see for whatever we got for freedom. This is the highest of parliamentary system. In the journey, we are risking to respect the states and culture of the various states, where Murindran Modi G. always praising Tamil and other things. Same way, we are requesting, the parliament has come forward to see that, the languages, all the languages of the eight schedule must be saved, languages of the national, that is one of the things. That is the spirit of the democracy and also federalism. That is the parliament which we have to make the thing. Once again, I thank my leader, Prachit Alimjiar, send me the parliament. And as medium, deputy speaker at that time, Rajiv Gandhi was at that time, Prime Minister. Afterwards, Amma made me the central minister in watch by government. And afterwards, and Modi G. and also Amma made me deputy. Once again, 2014, this kind of experience had mine for throughout life, had the opportunity to serve this parliament. And hope that, that this spirit of the parliament democratic system must continue. We know, whatever opposition people raised in democracy, there must be some kind of opposition will be there. The ruling party also, they want to say, implement that programs. Therefore, the both has to come together. There must not be any difference between them. Because government, the ruling party, as they say, has to say, to implement, that is why they elected, they have to implement program. Opposition can raise it as a discussion, must not disturb the things. Therefore, this kind of democracy has to continue. The parliament, 75 years after freedom, we have done. As I said once again, as our forefathers thought that federalism must be very important, because we are speaking, it is Rajya Sabha, it is not elderly's house. It is not, I am not elderly man. He may be elderly man, he is not elderly man. There are young people also there, it's not elderly house. This is the Rajya Sabha, state representatives are here. Therefore, whatever state issues are raised here, that must be given importance. That must verify that, that cannot therefore. And second, thank my leaders, Prachit Alimjiar and Prachit Alamma, Eda Padi Palinsami, my general secretary, has sent me to the Rajya Sabha as a member. I once again, thank all my leaders to have the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Sri K. Keshav Rao.
How much time you want to give me, madam?
12 minutes.
5 minutes?
12 minutes.
12, 12, thank you very much, ma'am. Whatever it is, you have the time. Ma'am, get up to speak on this 75 years. Everybody knows, we have really done. We have achieved great strides of progress during this period. There is no doubt about it. I don't want to politicalize the entire thing. But let me tell you, our journey has been a tragic journey. It has a beginning. We thought of independence for a nation, but we got two nations. It would have been all right if there were two nations. But unfortunately, it became two people. It would have been all right if there were two people, it had become two races. So entire world has started fighting against each other. This is one thing we could not withstand, nor could win over during last 75 years. This really hurts me. Today, the hangover continues. Today, the people are getting identified more by their religion and caste region than themselves. This is something, the 75 years of independence could not get it. Although economically, we have done very, very good, better than many of the states, we are forced going nation. But this kind of divide that we still have, which the British had took advantage at one time, to differentiate those two people, Hindus and Muslims, that was the divide they depended on, had, is still continuing, its shadows are still lingering. This is something which really hurts us today when we are standing to gain out of it. Madam, to really speak, it is not what is severe. It is 1930 when the Congress Party declared itself as an independent and passed the resolution. And there were all over the country, their celebrations of independence at that time. Anyway, whatever it is. But we did not have at that time, when we had partition. When Nehru went to give his stirring speech of "Tis with destiny", where he had said, "We are promises to keep, not if totally, at least substantially." And we have really done substantially well during the past 75 years. I'm not talking this 10 years. Even this 10 years might also might have done good. This morning, we were hearing a statement made by the chairman, a resolution. I don't know what, in what kind it came, but it did come. It spoke very well. The wording was good. I only hope that we followed it in our country, to give rise to the people's voice, as you want to do it internationally, when you want all the 125 countries to do it. This should have been really good, ma'am. That is the feeling one carries along. Madam, the, when we think of Nehru's speech, there is some guffey in that. Nehru, after the speech, went to give his list of ministers to Governor General. You know, when they gave an envelope, an empty envelope, there were no paper at all inside. There were no names of the ministers. It was only before, 15 minutes before the real swearing-in, that they found the paper and found it. Why I'm mentioning this is, please look at the kind of quality we had at that time. It might be Gandhi G., Gandhi G. who said, "We got independence for the nation, not to the Congress." We had in that cabinet, where people who were adversely opposed to Congress, absolute, who had aversion, who did not participate in the Freedom Suggle at all, three of them. But yet, Nehru did not have any groupings, any reservations in including them. I am taking Ambedkar or Shamprasan Bukhar G., who were against the Congress and who were against the, they were supporting the rulers. But I'm not trying to please Remnisard, Delud, the impatience. But I'm telling you, the kind of mind we had, the broad mind, the, that time government had, it wanted to take all people, it wanted to be inclusive. That, as I said, is being lost today. In the name of, you call Indutwa, whatever it is. Today, majoritarianism has come as a mass mobilization movement, which is wrong. We have never thought of majoritarianism of Hindus. We knew it had to 82% of people. But today, it has become a mass movement. That also is something which we must still fight for. So, as I said, it was Sun who said, Amrisha Sun who said, "Indutwa movement that seeks to convert the religion of the majority in identity of mass mobilization." He says, "Secureanism, as it is practiced in India, to some degree, the working of Indian democracy, which remains the best guarantee of Indian pluralism, have served to create the pastures of India's various particularisms." India was a particular. If you had looked through the each decade, it had its own map. We had, we had, the second thing that we had to do after getting the independence was, not only get this kind of inclusive cabinet to govern, but we had also wanted to get all people on the board. This is what exactly Congress did at that particular time. Because there is no other party, so let me not talk about it. But at the same time, we had what is called the other challenges that it had to see. The challenge of language, challenge of caste, where the challenge of religion, the challenge of the states, which has turned out to be the issue of federalism, the class, rich and poor. This was very important. These are things which had to do, then, then, then. Sir, I will go and first try to tell you, the class approach are the class situation that we inherited at that time. Some being rich and some poor. What did we do in this 75 years? We did not bridge it at all. We are allowed it to continue. So much so, today, in a given developing situation, it, it shows you more cracks than the bridging elements. This has to be understood. I'm only trying to point out it because I don't want to take much time. Because we can talk much about rich and poor divide and how the 1% of people are holding the 40% of the nation's wealth. All this can be discussed, but I'm only trying to mention, because all of you in this house, who have discussed these issues earlier, know it better, that what exactly is the situation as well as the class is concerned. We always talk about the caste. caste is there. The Varnas system that we have inherited is something which is a debate, which is an insert to a nation. Yesterday, I was trying to raise in the leaders' approach and meeting, something about Sanadhar Dharma. Because I'm a student of Hindu philosophy. Let people sitting that side know, that you are not, you are not the monopolist of the Hindu philosophy. Because Hinduism is a word which came only in 6th century. All right, let us forget. When, when we talk about Sarada, I'm talking to you because the constitution speaks about it. The constitution, its preamble ensures, although it not use the word secular, it said, when it said about equality of religions, it talked about secureism. But I should congratulate, yay, later, this government, this nation, for bringing the 42nd amendment, wherein they made it specific, a secular, a socially secular nation. These were the two things which were missing, although they were practicing. This nation was essentially a socialist nation. We must understand, at least 64% of people were really poor, 36 below the party line. At the word socialist, meant the equidistribution of the nation's wealth. This exactly we realized and we brought in an amendment to the constitution itself in its preamble. This is another great achievement that we have done. Having brought that, did we do anything? Did walk the talk? We did not. The system did not allow. Today, unfortunately, when we are talking, trying to talk about 75 years journey, I tell you for the last 10 or 12 years, or even 15 years, let, let me say 91. When we thought of liberalism, even repugnance, we had given, if not total goodbye, we have started diluting the importance of looking to poor and looking to the development from the socialistic angle. We had a socialistic view from the awadi session, where Congress moved the social pattern of society. Even Communist Party had to close down their shutters. Because you do everything that the nation wanted ideologically, came from them. And all of us who were in the schools in those days. I am a witness to this 75 years journey, sir. Because I'm today 84, but I have seen this 75 years journey. At the time when the awadi session came, as a socialistic pattern of society, it was what we did not talk about socialism as such, because there was a crisis at that particular time. This is a part of 75 years journey. We must understand, their debate went on, whether we should be go totally on the Russian model or should have a socialism of our own. Because Amman, Loyajee and other, other socialists in this country thought that socialism can be caught for the Indian ethos. Be confused by this kind of, if not dichotomy, a discourse, schism. Pandi G. thought, we will say same thing, but as a pattern of society. But he committed the society to develop on the basis of socialistic ethos. When he said this, this has come. The third thing that we have achieved, great thing, was during BP Singh's time. When BP Singh came, the bundle issue was there earlier. The reservation to BCs was there in the Congress session. I was the minister during the Congress regime. We knew that we brought in. We knew that we brought in fifteen percent to twenty-five percent in states, but yet, accepting at a national level, as these people whom you under Varna system, considered as something lawyer, I would not say okay, because I assist the very word Varna. So, we, so BP Singh is the one person who has got this, this is something goes to the cake and goes as a feather in the cap of the Indian achievements. Sir, when we come to, poor unfortunate part, is time over?
Yeah, twelve minutes.
Sir, we come to the part of religion. Today, as I said earlier, today we are trying to, we identified more by our religion rather than by our nation. Mussozzi, the great Italian writer said, "Italy we got, but Italians we not had got it." Not that Nehru is the person who has made all us idiots, we were idiots. They were cynics at that time, when we got our independence, like Sachi, like Churchill, like Kipling, Kipling. Many, Duve, who are not, name them the Yugejan. All of them thought that India will not be able to sustain democracy at all. It will go back to the age of barbarism, age of invasion of the middle classes, as this kind of thing. But India not only sustained, not only democracy lived, but lived so well that other nations are looking to us for democracies. It is because we had a democratic tradition from this millennia. In Mawrya's time, we had done, ran up as republics, something, two-hundred-and-sixty republics in the Mawrya Empire. What we talked of today as caste was a Jati at that time, was something like three thousand Jatis at that time. But there was no kind of clash as we find today. This is how we have not been able to manage. This is a recent phenomenon, let me also tell you. We had real communal tension, we had a communal violence, but in the present, it has become some kind of pride. As I said, majoritism has become an issue for mass movement, mass mobilization. So, when, once it comes, it really troubles you most. Sir, when you, I come to Hinduism, I am not trying to take on the fundamental Hinduism, because there is not really a fundamentalism at all in Hinduism. Take it from me, Hinduism is a way of life. Anything that transcends time and space is called truth. What you said today, if after a hundred years people believe the same thing, and anywhere else in the world is the same thing, it remains a truth. That is Gandhi reduced very aspect of God as a concept and said, "Truth is God." This is what Hinduism is all about. It is only because, not because I should believe in Rama or I should believe in Krishna. Just now, the DMK, A-DMK man was telling me, in Metra's, we had a movement, we totally opposed it. Today, we have people who don't believe. We have, if Hinduism is all that big, there wouldn't have been a need for Zoroastan. If Zoroastan is all that big, there wouldn't have been a need for Christianity. If Christianity is all that big, there wouldn't have been a need for Islam. If Islam is all that big, there wouldn't have been a need for the Sikhism. So, all this time and space taken, they included truth, that is what exactly Hinduism has done. I consider this as one of the greatest thought processes. Hinduism is one of the great thought processes, which takes everybody to truth. I have a charvaka in me, if I believe in God, I am a Hindu, sir.
Your time is over.
If I don't believe in God, I am charvaka, sir, I am a Hindu, sir. If I believe in somebody who really is good, I am a Buddha, I am a Hindu, sir. If I am Jaina, all of you are Buddhu, sir. Karnataka, yesterday I was standing in the leaders' opposition, they have, what, their pants? They don't believe in God, they believe in Shiva, they believe in... So, what is Hinduism is self-realization. So, let us all believe that. Let not the Prime Minister of the day say that the all Sanatanis should join night, as if it is a war crime. We, I think, at this age, this is not something which is good for, to come from a people, because we accept all, all religion. Yesterday, Mr. Chidambaram was saying something, no, Swatsat. Chidambaram was saying, he was quoting Madhavacharya, sixteenth century saint, Indian saint. When he said, "Sarva Dharma, Samahavah", so, same thing, it is quoting Madhavay, all other saints. But all the believers, Indians believe that all of it. That is why we say, "Ekam, ekam sat, vipra bhoudavadanti." People may call it by different names, but truth is only one. We believe in it, unlike others, I am not trying to criticize other religions at this time. They believe that mine is there, there is no Mr. Christ or no Mr. Muhammad or no Mr. Zoroaster or no Mr. Perkushan. We had an Hindu thought process as such. So, this, I don't know, we are losing track, we must get on to that. We must build a nation, Indian nation as such. We are first Indians, last Indians, we are Indians, there is no question of first or last. Saying, like Saratan is saying, there is no beginning, there is no end. If there is no beginning, where is the question of it being there? So, let us not think, it is there, it is truth, it is all pervading. So, I tell you, sir, the seventy-five years journey has been really rewarding, has been very good. I also congratulate, we had beginning, I told you, Tadig, the G-twenty was a welcome thing. But as I suggested earlier, let us learn to live with what we always boast of. We have today, morning here, that big statement, I think you give score for expression from all sides. Then what I call freedom of expression, that should be respected, the people's arjus should be respected. You should not use your own agency because you are powerful. If that were to be the case, earlier regimes would have done that. We have, nobody has done it, they have respected tradition, we have allowed the nation to grow. As Gandhiji said, independence is not for Congress, independence for the nation. Let us all think, this nation development is for the entire nation, not for one party or one thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Roshan. Now, Mr. GK Vasan, three, four minutes.
Sir, thank you, sir, for giving me an opportunity. We all understand, sir, historic poli, historic Parliament building, today is the last day of our speech in this building. Maybe tomorrow, we are all moving to the new Parliament, sir. This is the time to salute and respect our leaders who fought for our independence and got independence for us. This is the seventy-fifth year of our independence, sir. We remember the father of nation, Mahatma Gandhi, and all our leaders, from various parts of India, who were with Gandhiji and who fought for this country's freedom, and who taught us Ahimsa in this country, sir. Sir, we also have to be very proud that we are the largest democracy in this country, sir. We have genuinely, sir, preserved the sovereignty, integrity, security, solidarity of this country with pride, sir. We have made remarkable progress in the seventy-five years, in the field of education, agriculture, healthcare, industrial growth, economic equality, and even in scientific space research, sir. Above all, as Indians, we are all proud today that our nation is looked upon by foreign countries for our helping hand and support, even in international problems today, sir. This is the Parliament where legends have spoken, sir, in various subjects for the interest of this great nation, sir. We should be very thankful to our regional leaders, sir, who have been in this Parliament, spoken for the interest of the country. From Tamil Nadu, sir, I would like to proudly quote Rajaji and Kamaraaji, sir, who have been the pioneers, pioneers, and even today, sir, they are leaders, who are the icons for youth in this country, sir, especially Tamil Nadu, sir. The national approach and outlook of leaders from the south, sir, has been great in the development of this country, sir. I must also pleasant record, sir, that India has achieved great heights during this nine years under the Prime Minister of Modi ji, sir. To conclude, sir, I would say that schemes, plans and programs launched by the government has embraced every citizen and have enhanced and improved the living conditions of every Indian, sir. With this, sir, I conclude my speech. Thank you very much, Chairman, sir, for giving me opportunity.
Thank you. Ramnath Thakurji.
Ask the chair, when our chances will come? No, it's, I just, that's a question.
I was told that he will speak after half an hour.
No, 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 who, who said? I did not say.
I also said like a commentator.
No, it, no, yeah, it is good that we should make new traditions, but then we have to follow the traditions also, how the house runs.
Yeah, please let, let him speak.
Ramnath Thakurji.
But I have, but I, I have a right to ask a question to the, Siriman. Siriman, no, I, I, I appreciate your support, but then, but then, in the process, our chances not coming.
This is no discrimination. He will also get you a chance.
Siriman.
Yeah, please.
मैं आपको धन्यवाद देता हूँ कि आपने इस महत्वपूर्ण सदन पचात्तर वर्ष के...
He will get you a chance, no, no worry.
पचात्तर वर्ष मेज़े इस सदन का कर्म रही है, जितने, जितने महान पुरुष इस सदन के सदस्य रहे हैं, पीलू मोदी, राधा कृष्ण, अम्बेडकर, डॉ. अम्बेडकर, चंसेखर, राजनरायण, उन महत्वपूर्ण सदस्यों ने जनता की आवाज़ को जो उठाने का काम किया है, उसी संदर्भ में मैं आपसे निवेदन करना चाहता हूँ कि समाजवादियों का जो धे था, समाजवादियों की जो मांग थी, उस मांग को यहाँ प्रस्तुत किया गया था, काका कालेरकर का जो रिपोर्ट था, जो नहीं, उस रिपोर्ट को प्रकाशित किया गया था, 1978 में इस रिपोर्ट को प्रकाशित किया गया और बिहार में पहला राज था, जन्नायकरपुरी ठाकुर जी ने आरक्षण लागू करने का काम किया. 1990 में मंडल आयोग के इसी सदन में जो दबाव पड़ा था, इसी सदन की बात है, जो दबाव पड़ा था, उस दबाव के चलते मंडल आयोग लागू हुआ. मैं, मैं कहना चाहता हूँ कि बिहार का मॉडल जो था, वो जातीय गणना का पूरे देश में होना चाहिए था, बिहार ने इसको लागू करने का काम किया. महिला को, महिला को गैरपरावरी 2005 से जो नगर निगाहे में, पंचायत में जो आरक्षण दिया गया था, उस आरक्षण को बिहार ने लागू करने का काम किया. Siriman, हम आपसे निवेदन करना चाहते हैं कि नए भवन में जो हम लोग shift हो रहे हैं, जा रहे हैं, तो क्यों नहीं सरकार महिला को 33% आरक्षण दे करके इसमें लागू करे? मैं तो समझ रहा था, मैं तो समझ रहा था कि जो विशेष सत्र बुलाया गया है सरकार के द्वारा, उस सरकार में यह मनीपुर पर चर्चा होगी, मनीपुर के समस्याओं को सरकार दूर भगाने का अनाउंसमेंट करेगी, लेकिन अभी तक मनीपुर के बारे में कोई काम नहीं हो सका. मैं दो-तीन बातें कह करके, अपने सुझाव को रख करके आपके सामने रखना चाहता हूँ. यह पचात्तर वर्ष में, नौ वर्षों में जो सरकार काम किया है, हम आपके माध्यम से सरकार से निवेदन करना चाहते हैं कि जेलों में जो बंद कैदी है, जो, जिन पर कोई आरोप नहीं है, गरीब हैं, दुखी हैं, वंचित हैं, पैसे नहीं हैं उनके पास, कि अपने को वो बिल करा सकें और केस लड़ सकें? तो हम आज पचात्तर वर्ष के उपलक्ष में जो आपने जो यह सत्र बुलाने का काम किया है, तो जेल में बंद हुए कैदियों को छोड़ने का काम करें, यहाँ आपसे हम निवेदन करना चाहते हैं. दूसरी बात, हम आपसे निवेदन करना चाहते हैं कि इसी तरह विशेष सत्र बुला करके या विशेष दिन रख करके महंगाई, महंगाई पर चर्चा होनी चाहिए और उसका निरांत करना चाहिए. इसी तरह, आपको चाहिए था जो बेरोजगार है, बेरोजगारी जो बढ़ी है, बेरोजगारों के लिए, नौकरी के लिए आपको अनाउंसमेंट करना चाहिए, आपकी सरकार की उपलब्धि बढ़ती. इसीलिए, हम आपके माध्यम से एक निवेदन करके अपनी बात समाप्त करना चाहता हूँ कि सब लोग देख रहे हैं जहाँ वो हैं. सब लोग देख रहे हैं जहाँ वो हैं, हम देख रहे हैं, देखने वालों की नजर देख रहे हैं. इन्हीं चंद सदों के साथ, हम आपसे, आपके माध्यम से सरकार से निवेदन करना चाहते हैं कि जिन-जिन मुंदों को हमने उठाने का काम किया, सरकार ध्यान दे और उस पर अमल करने का काम करें. धन्यवाद.
Dr. John Britas, six minutes.
Thank you, sir. Sir, when we are having a discussion with regard to the Amrtagal, I would say that I have a three-dimensional view of the Indian Parliament. I used to watch the Parliament from outside, from above, and now I am being part of this Parliament, sitting below, sir. Sir, when we speak about Parliament, the basic aspects which we need to keep in mind, that is parliamentary democracy, that is very important. Sir, what is the tenet of parliamentary democracy? The fundamental cardinal principle of parliamentary democracy, as Kargesab said, accountability of executive to the legislature. Have you ever seen an accountability of the executive to the legislature? Have you ever seen? Now, the opposition leader was speaking about the presence of the Prime Minister. I was trying to dissect that. You know what is the presence of the Prime Minister in Parliament? Point zero zero one percent, point zero zero one percent. So, that is the, that is the period in which he attended the Parliament sessions, sir. Sir, the leader of the House was very vocal, but he missed many crucial names, sir, including Jawarla Nehru. Inertial, inertial. And I know that when Darbendra Sabhi is speaking, he would deliberately fill those void and would bring in Jawarla Nehru, Ambedkar Sabhi. Sir, I am telling you, sir, the names which have been missed by PU Shgoelji, you will have to spell out when you are speaking, Darbendra Sabhi. Sir, the exercise would be meaningful, if you discuss about the dreams and goals of our architects of Constitution. Sir, I will just dwell on the preamble of it, sir. Sir, it speaks about, say, what does it say? Liberty, equality and fatality. Sir, if you take justice, you will notice that we have reached the bulldozer era, that is justice now. The justice that is being imparted is the bulldozer era. Sir, if it is economic justice, sir, we don't want to speak about the Oxfam report because that's not a good company for, good organization for the present dispensations blacklist. You see the inequality that is spiraling up, sir. Sir, the liberty that has been assured, where has it reached, sir? Now, it is more manifested in the form of sedition and UAP, that is a liberty... Now it is more manifested in the form of sedition and UAP, that is a liberty we just reached. Sir, another cardinal principle is equality of status and opportunities. This government is honest to say that, they don't believe in it sir. Ambedkar, who they try to appropriate now, was absolutely clear when he said that, democracy is not the law of majority, but the protection of minority. Yaajit Adhresaghrasab, protection of minorities, it's not said by John Brittas, by Ambedkar sab. Sir, what is the representation of 20 crore Muslims in executive, in legislature, judiciary, even in medias? PT Ushaji, you know that, the representation of Muslims, Christians, minorities in Kerala. What is the situation in Delhi, in parliament, in executives sir? Sir, we all talk about, this government's pet topic is to, I mean, discuss about mughals. I see they talk about mughals more than the Indians now, actually. Sir, in Akbar's court or even in our Auringesiv court, more than fifty percent of the ministers were Hindus. Neeraj sab, Birbal, aapko jaan de na kon Birbal tha? He was a Hindu sir. Can you support somebody in this equity now? What is, what is the status of the representation of minority sir? Sir, Nehru's cabinet, that is the first ministry, it was a modal government. It had given representation to every segment. Dharmendra Prasad sab, two Muslim cabinet ministers. You know Maulana Asad, Rafi Hamad, John Muthai, that was a Parsi, Sikh, everyone. Of course, Shama Prasad Mukherjee. And even not having ideological, I would say together. I know Derek sab, representation from Bengali of course. Sir, it was Maulana Asad who stood on the steps of the Jumma Masidad said, this country is ours, we have built up this country, there is no need of going away from this country. You want to obliterate the last set of memory about Maulana Asad, you scrap the scholarship. Dharmendra Prasadji, you scrap the scholarship. Not you, I think Smiti Rani ji, I think. Even that, no, not he, he didn't scrap. Sir, come into fraternity. Sir, what is the new usage of fraternity? Madam, you know what is the new usage of fraternity? Go to Pakistan. Go to Pakistan. If somebody speaks, they will say you go to Pakistan. Sir, we are part of this country. We are as patriotic as yours sir. Sir, maybe more. Sir, now G20, there have been lot of discussions, fanfare about G20. We appreciate if India get a standing amongst the other nations. But if you look at indices, Yaajit sab, what is indices? Per capita GDP, human development index, hunger index, hum laste, bilkul laste. And is that the reason why you brought in African Union to the G20? So that we, we did not be last? Anyway, I appreciate that. Sir, coming to the preamble again sir, sovereign socialist secular democratic republic sir. Sir, what is sovereignty now? Hugging western leaders from Trump to Biden doesn't mean sovereignty? You finished off now, because Nehru's name is there. You don't want Non-Alignment Movement to be there. Just because Jawarla Nehru was instrumental in setting up Non-Alignment Movement. Now sir, the second word socialism, what is socialism sir? Socialism must become adanism. That is a new word, adanism. PT Usha madam, socialism badar gaya, adanism hogaya, chupcha payta aap? You should be standing up and talking about that. Now sir, secularism, sarathik sir. See, secularism. You know, a gentleman sitting in prime minister's office had the audacity to say, Dharmendra Prasad sab, Dharmendra ji, suniyeh sir, Vivek Debroi, this constitution has become useless. Only seventeen years it can stand. And he said he doesn't understand the meaning of socialism and secularism. A gentleman heading the Economic Advisory Council of the Prime Minister, had the audacity to come and say that, he doesn't understand the meaning of secularism and socialism. I would have expected a cabinet minister, the stature of Dharmendra Pradhaji to say, shut your mouth. Did you say sir? You should have said it. Sir, now, another word sir, democracy. See, many of the members think sir, democracy has turned to be namocracy or modiocracy. Sir, namocracy or modiocracy because we don't see the prime minister. My daughter was asking, did you get an opportunity to sit with the prime minister? I said, no, very rarely only I get sir. So, what does it mean sir? Democracy means accountability of the executive to the parliament and parliament being accountable to the people, that is democracy sir. Sir, republic. I know, where is Ragesh Naji? For Ragesh Naji and others, you know what is the meaning of republic? Vice chairman sir, you know what is the meaning of republic? Arno Ghosami. That is the meaning of republic for many of the Treasury benches people. Sir, that is the state of affairs of this country. Dharmendra ji, please don't look me like this. You will, sir.
Please conclude.
This time you will have to give me.
Please conclude.
I will leave sir, I will leave.
Adyak ji, abhi mere mitra John Brittas aache bolte hai. Aur unki, moon se hum log Nehru ji ki prasansa sun dete achi hai. Mereko laga John Brittas thoda acha rehta. Rajya Sabha me jab Nammudripadji ki sarkar ko Kerala me pehli baat toot diya gaya tha. Rajya Sabha ne kya debate kya hoga? Unki party ne kya view liya tha? Abhi bahut to nashihat democracy ke bare me de reh the. Abhi unki bare me, un jis vichar pehli baar communist party ki logon ne jite Kerala me. Unki sarkar ko, jin ki aja kasida pad reh, unhone unko, barkhas kya, elected government ko, Nammudripadji ki government ko barkhas kya. To us samay me, Rajya Sabha me, CPM ki mitron ne kya bola hoga? Thoda agar light daltay, to sahaj John Brittas hum ye peksha kar reh the. Ye mukhari John Brittas, you are very enlightened and very knowledgeable person. Don't laugh at your colleagues. You may get box news in the Indian Express, but I will, I will expect some good light, good view of yours. When Nammudripadji was dismissed from the Kerala, what was the view of CPM and Rajya Sabha? Please enlighten us.
Thank you sir, sir. Thank you Dharmendra ji for reminding me about the dismissal of EMs Nammudripad. For such misdeeds, they have been punished, they are sitting here. Precisely that is the reason. Otherwise, do you think that they would have been put here? But you are repeating the same mistake. You are calling us, depicting us as Somalia. Say extreme poverty, let us look at. Extreme poverty in UPN Bihar is thirty forty percent. In southern states, it is ten percent. In Kerala, it is almost zero. Yes, yes, almost zero, extreme poverty. Sir, it is because, it is because, sir, 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 so much of disruption sir. I want your protection sir, I want your protection.
You have my protection.
Yes sir. Sir, sir. This happened, this, this happened because, oh. Mister Murliidaran seems to be a Keralaite. Seems to be a Keralaite, but his only job is to act against Kerala. His only job is to act against Kerala. Sir, sir, when we talk about seventy-five years of Indian democracy, we cannot forget the name of Mahatma Gandhi. I was surprised that, nobody from the Treasury bench even referred to Mahatma Gandhi. Just because he held Gita, Quran and Bible close to his chest, he was assassinated. He was assassinated. Only because of that, I don't, everybody knows about. Sir, you are replacing Mahatma Gandhi with, with Savarkar. That's why sir, the new parliament has been inaugurated on the birth anniversary of Savarkar instead of Mahatma Gandhi. You should have, if you had some respect, you would have done sir. Sir, further sir.
Time allotted is over.
Sir, sir.
I wanted to say your time is over, but I came to know your time can never be over.
Two minutes, I will finish sir. Sir.
Two minutes.
Sir, the biggest business, sir, please. The main business of this government is to appropriate people. Sardar Patel, they think that Sardar Patel is there. Sir, Vasin Sardar Patel who banned RSS? After the assassination of Mahatma Gandhi? What did he say sir? The banning was to root out the force of hate and violence that are work, that are at work in our country. And embellish the freedom of nation and darken her fairness. Sir, another person who is being appropriated is Vivek Aranda. Didn't he say so? Secularism bigotry and its horrible descendant fanaticism have long possessed this beautiful earth. They have filled the earth with violence, that is what Vivek Aranda said sir. Sir, the unfortunate part sir, sir, you are a legal luminary. We are very happy that you preside over this house sir. You are rich knowledge. Sir, I have seen you as a minister in 1989, when you came to Lok Sabha sir, I was in the gallery sir. With huge admiration, I have been observing you and watching you sir. Sir, but unfortunate part is that sir, the demolition of every institution in this house, in every institution, from parliament to election commission.
Please conclude now, please conclude.
Sir, I, sir, I am talking about you also sir. Sir.
That is why you have to conclude.
Sir, I am going to talk about you also sir.
Continue, conclude.
Every institution in this country is being demolished, from parliament to election commission. Sir, what is election commission now? Now they are, they are bringing the status of the election commissioners from the Supreme Court judge status to cabinet secretary. And day after tomorrow, Dharmendra Pradhaji will bring a bill to make them in Chaprasi. That is going to happen sir. Sir, every institution is being disbanded sir. Sir, article one, sir, one, last one.
Sri Waiko.
Sir, I am just, one minute.
One minute.
One minute, sir, one minute. He says that India, that is Bharat, shall be unionized, sir. Sir, federalism sir. Kerala contributes one rupee and gets back twenty-five paisai. That is the status of federalism in this country sir. Yes, it has turned to be like that. Sir, sir, I would say that, you told me sir.
Once again.
Chairman sir, you wanted us to have a chat.
The, the honourable member has made a statement of fact.
Yes sir.
He will authenticate.
I will, I will authenticate sir. Sir, Kerala contributes one rupee to the national kitty gets back twenty-five paisai. I repeat it, I will place the document on the table of the house.
During course of the day.
Sir, and sir, last thing sir. Sir, it's good that we are taking stock of this country, democracy, institutions, parliament in this Amr dgal sir. Sir, structure doesn't matter sir, new parliament or old parliament, the process matters, the content matters. Can we enrich the parliamentary proceedings? Can we enrich the democratic process in this country? You can build mansions, structures, but sir, that will not strengthen the democracy, democracy in this country. Unless enriched sir.
Please, conclude, conclude.
I would urge upon the Treasury benches through you sir, let us all resolve to enrich the democracy of this great nation. Thank you sir.
Okay. On a point of information from you, have you been to statue of unity? Have you been to statue of unity?
Sir, I will go, sir, I will go.
I strongly suggest you go there once.
I will go sir, I will go sir, if you give invitation, I will go sir.
It takes great effort to appropriate someone.
Sir, if you give an invitation, I will go sir.
I have been there.
Sir, and sir, I will be happy to go with you sir.
No, I'll go with you.
Sir.
Mr. Waiko.
Sir, let me have a towering personality beside me when I go.
Let us hear Mr. Waiko.
Mister Chairman, I am extremely thankful for giving me this opportunity to participate in the discussion on parliamentary journey of seventy-five years. Starting from constituent assembly, achievements, experience, memories and learning. It was also a long journey for me, having entered parliament in 1978 as a member of Rajya Sabha. Now it is my fourth time in the Rajya Sabha. Apart from being a member of the upper house, I had the honor to be a member of the Lok Sabha for two times, in the 12th Lok Sabha and the 13th Lok Sabha. There were many swings and waves the nation has witnessed in the last seventy-five years. But what is shocking me, why the name is changed as Bharat? And when the G20 meeting took place, before the prime minister, the name was Bharat, not India. So we are not representing India, then you call it United States of India, that should be called. We, all the states should be given equal opportunity. Bharat, where it came from Bharat? From Upanishads, from Sanadhana, from Sanadhana and Hindu Rastha. So, they are trying to take this country towards Hindu Rastha. But one thing, I would like to tell them, you never entered our area. Gupta's never entered, Mauria's never entered, nobody from enter to Tamil Nadu. But we have come to Kansas, we have come to Himalayas. Sir, I am very sorry, the prime minister of India, he has putting Bharat instead of India. So hereafter, we have to call India, why he is afraid of India? The formation of India has threatened them, the formation of India has threatened them, therefore they have put their name as Bharat. Sir, I don't want to take much time because you have given me a privilege to take this time. I demanded installation of Ambedkar portrait in central hall of parliament. Allowing army men belonging to Muslim community to offer Jammah prayers on Friday. Sir, secularism is under threat, the Muslims are under threat. The Sanadhana forces are threatening them. They are afraid because you live India, you Muslims India, this is not your country. This is the voice of the Hindu Rastha people. In this way, the country will be balkanized, I today warn you on this particular day, it should be noted that it will, it will become Soviet Union. What happened in Soviet Union, this will happen in India. India will be balkanized into so many states and therefore I said United States of India. But at least you make a, make a name United States of India, otherwise India will not be one where you want to celebrate, centenary celebration of independence. But 2047, there won't be any such India, thank you sir.
Honourable members, there have been enough reflections on Dr. B.R. Ambedkar. Leader of the opposition was very focused, I hope he was here. But it was a glorious moment for me as a member parliament in 1989, that it was during our tenure of ninth Lok Sabha, that we could give the great man something that was long overdue, Bharat Ratan. Professor Manoj Jha.
Shukriya. Shukriya, Subapatii Mohade, bahut bahut dhannwad. Aaj ka din behad mahatpurn hai aur is mahatpurn din ke din, din ke. Shukriya, madam, madam, meri shubkamnay swikaar kare, main yahan se bol raun. Idhar, idhar, main yahan se bol raun. Shukriya, bahut acha avasar hai, aap yahan aaiye, kitni khushi ho rahi, ye bata nahi sakta. Aaj Subba, Manniya Subapatii Mohade ne kaha tha ki humor waghira hamari zindagi se chala gaya. Mujhe smaran hai, ye kitab me ek hi kitab leke aaya hu, aisi pahunch kitabe hai. Conscient assembly debates ki, to isme sar paasi pahunch kitabe hai. Conscient assembly debates, so, Manniya Up Subapatii ji. Ek minute, please. Ah, Maniy Up Subhapatiji, 75 kaise banaya ja raha hai, meri samajh me nahi a raha hai. Kyunki agar hum Constituent Assembly se 75 jore, to 2021 me pura hota hai. Agar Azadi se jore, to 2022 me pura hota hai. Aur agar pehli Lok Sabha se jore, to vo 2027 me pura hota hai. To ye 75 ki ganna kaha hui, kis jyotishine ki mujhe nahi pata. Mere hisaab se 75 nahi hai, lekin 75 vali feel me apni baat rakunga. Haa, to Maniy Up Subhapatiji, huwa yu ki Sarojni Naidu ji ko bulaya gaya. Bolne ke liye, Sambhavta 11 December 1946 ko. Kam logoon ko yahan pata hoga ki Sarojni Naidu ji, Bihar se chun kar, Samvidhan Sabha me aai thi. To unko, chairman sahab ne kaha, ab bulbulay Hind, Nightingale of India aayenge, lekin kabita me apni baat kahenge, pros me nahi kahenge. Unhe thora buhra laga, majak me hi sahi, unhone kaha ki aapka ab ye vyahar, aapka ye kahna unconstitucional hai. To unhone kha ne fir bhi sunana hoga. To unhone ek chee sunai, jo main patient nazar kar raha hu, Maniy Subhapatiji ko, subah badi behsabri se wo kahre the ki humor chala gaya. To unhone sunaya ki bulbul ko gul mubarak, gul ko chaman mubarak, rangin tabiyaton ko rangge sukhane mubarak. To ye main, ye bata raha hu ki ye hamara dhay tha. Ab subah charcha ki, hamare leader of the house de, badi khubsura charcha ki aur zikr kiya Sarpalli Radhakrishnan ka. Yahan, yahan, thik samne Sarpalli Radhakrishnan. Unhone ek baat kahi thi aur main wo slok parana chahta hu. Nirduna darunan hanti, nirduna hantiya darunam. Nirduna darun hanti, nirduna hantiya darunam, na sathyan nirduna, kinchit tasmat, tivr tarang nirdu. Iska aashay ye hai, Maniy Subhapatiji, ki aggression se, aggressive behavior se, aap chee haasil nahi kar sakta. Is desh me, mere vidwan saathion udhar se uklab diya ginai. Hamare kuch vidwan saathion ne yahan se kamia ginai. Main dono ke bich me chunhotiyan ginana chahta hu. Chunhotiyon ki vaja se aaj hum yahan, aur sirf hum hi nahi hai. Ekso 40 crore logoon ka ye bhavan hai, chahe naya wala ho ya purana wala ho. To aaj ke din, ye meri or se ek vidai bhashan bhi hai, apne dal ki or se is imarat ko, jis imarat me Hindustan ki takdir likhi gayi Samvidhan Sabha ke maadham se. Aur vo takdir likhenne vale sankirne daaro me nahi sochte the. Main uspe aunga, thora, thora do minute ke baad. Mani Subhapatiji, bahut charcha hoti hai, 47 me batwara huwa tha is desh ka. Batwaray ke baavjuud, utni ghna, utni nafrat, pira ke baavjuud nahi thi. Abhi hal me ek Romila ji ki kitab aai, wo kahatiye badi khubsurti se. Have we moved from integrated nationalism to segregated nationalism? Kyaham ek ekrit, Raasthvaad se ek vihajit vikhandit Raasthvaad ki or badh rahe. Kyunki ye imarat, iski buniyad, mail jol pe hai. Iski buniyad me, batwaray ke baavjuud batwara nahi huwa. To main hat jod ke vinti karunga, sarkar jaroor banaiye. Agla chunao bhi ladenge, khub dil se ladenge. India bhi rehga, Bharat bhi rehga, koi me se ek choice nahi hai. Kyunki humko India Bharat karke jambu duh tak nahi jana hai. Main sirf itna kahunga ki vo jo mail jol ki cement hai, uska xatma huwa ra hai, usko bachaiye. Mani Subhapatiji, main do vaktiyon ke maadh me apni kuch baat rakna chahta hu. Samvidhan Sabha me objective resolution, Jawaharlal ji leke aaye. Aur Samvidhan Sabha me jab draft submit huwa, to B.R. Ambedkar ne vo draft submit kiya. To main sirf kahata hu, objective resolution me, bahut saari baatee thi, ye prestavna ke bare me, sovereign democratic republic ke bare me, kafi kuch bol chuke hai, sovereignty girvi na chali jaye. Maalik adhikaron ke maale me, hume aapke pich ek taraju hai. Vo taraju hume lagana hoga ki maalik adhikar me kaha puche. Sovereignty me kaha puche? Democratic republic ke masle pe kaha puche? High flying words, don't cover up our failures, let's not look for that. Aur ek masla aaya, unhone ek zikr kiya oath of tennis court. Mani Subhapatiji, French Revolution ke baad jab bari shiddat se log kam me lag gaye, adhikaron par baat karne ke liye, to raja ko shuru me parexani nahi hu. Lekki raja ko laga ki kuch aisa kar rahe, jisse khurafat ki bua rahe. Usne kya kaha, darwaje band karaa diye, jis hall me vo log bhette the. Vo chale gaye, dusre darwaje room me, usko bhi band karaa diya. Vo chale gaye tennis court, saari karwaii puri ki, usko kaha oath of tennis court. Oath of tennis court ka zikr, Jawaharlal ji ne isliye kiya tha ki hamare andar vo jazba ho. Imarat banane, bigarne se, imarat ne nahi badhni chahiye. Hamara jazba, vahi hona chahiye, jo oath of tennis court me, Jawaharlal ji, hamare first Prime Minister ne kaha. Ab aate hai ki Baba Sahab Bhimrao Ambedkar ji ne kya kaha. Mani Subhapatiji, aap jis ilake se aatiye, main jis ilake se aata hu. Wahan ye baate badi prabhal hai. Azadi ka mullyankar hoga, to is aadhar par hoga ki rajniti ka azadi, samajhi kaarthi ka azadi me, kitni tabdeen hu. Agar nahi hu, to kyun nahi hu? Unhone kaha tha ki ek din ek jawalamukhi ban jayega. Aur main us jawalamukhi ko banke dekha raha hu. Vo isliye banke dekha raha hu ki jab main dekhta hu ki Bihar ke jatega surveychand pe, desh ke solicitor general court me khare ho jate hai. To main dekhta hu block karne ki koshish ho rahiye. Ye aspirational work hai. Pichhre pichhno ki badi aabadhi, uske aspiration ko aap social democracy ke nazariye se dekhi. Jo Baba Sahab kaha gaye the, 31 me aakri hu. Uske baad Pakistan Bangladesh buna. Kyah is desh ko yahan ki sarkaro ko, rajio ki sarkar ko, vajyanika aakre nahi chahiye? Kyah aap aakre aasman se girayenge? Main samajta hu aaj ke din ye bhi hume surichit karna hoga. Ki hum in aakro ko lae, uske aadhar par apni niyatiya tay kare. Ek, Maniy Subhapatiji, Ambedkar sahab do aur chee kahke gaye. Preventing tyranny of majority. Main bar bar is sadan me kah chuka hu ki majority behad aavshak chee hai. Majority ki bina sarkar nahi chalti hai. Lekki majority or majoritarianism me fark. Ye fark agar hamari sarkar bhul jati hai, to bahut badi pira hoti hai. Jab mere mitra ne kaha, main akshar dekhta hu, hum jaise log choti aalochna bhi karte hai. Choti mohti aalochna, jo kabhi vaktikat nahi hoti hai, aap kahati ho ki Pakistan chale jo. Are kabhi dekha bhi yo, kitni jaga hai wahan? Wahan ka bhugol kya hai? Itne log nahi at paaenge. Man liye ki 55% logoon ne aapko pichli bar vote nahi kiya. Sabko Pakistan bhej do gaye, aisi ko vyavstha hoti hai. Yahi mail jol se rana, yahi milke rana hai. Aur ye saari chee, main nahi kah raha hu, khud Ambedkar sahab kahke gaye the. Madam, aapke taraf se main ek aur chee, ek do choti chee kah karke. Is desh ki ek badi aabadhi. Subhapatimohade, main aapka, Subhapatimohade, abhi bel mat, do minute luunga, jada nayaz, pehli bar hai, itne nazariye inad kar diji. Main sirf itna kahana chaunga ki berojgarhi ko lekar ke, hamara dhrishti ko nasaath hona chahiye. Sarkar me aap ho, hum ho, berojgarhi hum sabki politics khatom kar dega. Right to employment ke liye hum kya soch rahe hai. Aur is desh ki ek badi aabadhi, se desh bhakti ka jo pramaan patra hum mangte hai na. Madam, vo kahi chalega nahi. Main aakhir chee kah karke ek, ek sunana chahta tha. Main isliye kahata hu, ek, ghar me panch sadas hai. Usme har panchma sadas ya, us aabadhi ka hai. Agar us ghar me, us panchma sadas ya ko aap eliminate karenge, door karenge, ghar kabhi mahfuz nahi ra sakta. Aur aakhir me, main sahir ko jata hu aur wahi khatom kar dunga, aapko ghanti bajani ke zarrot nahi padti. Aao ke aaj ghair kare, is sawal par, dekhe the humne vo, hasi khab, kya huwe? Dolat badihi to mulk me athlas kyu badha? Khushhaaliye awam ke asbaab kya huwe? Jo apne saath saath chale kuve dar tak, vo dost vo rafiq, vo ahabab kya huwe? Kyah mol lag raha hai shaheedon ke khun ka? Kyah mol lag raha hai shaheedon ke khun ka, marthe the jin pe hum, vo sajai, yaap kya huwe? Bekas barhanki ko kafan tak nahi nasib, vo bada, aye atlaso ke mu khab kya huwe? Jamhuriyat navaz bashar dost amn khoa. Khud ko jo khud diye the, wal kab kya huwe? Mazhab ka roog aaj bhi kyun laa ilaj hai? Mazhab ka roog aaj bhi kyun laa ilaj hai? Vo nuskhaa aye nadiro naa yaap kya huwe? Har poocha shola ja raha hai, har shaar katla ga. Yak zehhti ya hayat ke aadab kya huwe? Sehraa tiirgi me bhatehti hai zindagi, ubre the jo fuk pe matab kya huwe? Mujrim hu agar main, to gunahgar tum bhi ho. Mujrim hu agar main, to gunahgar tum bhi ho. Rahbarane kaam, khatakar tum bhi ho. Jai Hinmaam and salute to all the freedom fighters, Samvidhan Sabha ke un tamam logoon ko. Aur main chaunga ki Sengol ke bagar me, ek badi aakriti me, inki tasviray wahan lagai jae, aur hume preidna dete rahe, jai hin.
Dhanyavat. Sri Birendro Prasad Boych. Sri Birendro Prasad.
Yes, I am here. Thank you, Madam Chairman, for allowing me to speak on the historic occasion. Today is the last day. If in our Parliament life, we are sitting, we all the members sitting for the last time in this building. Tomorrow, another journey will start. It is privilege for us, we are the person who got opportunity to speak, attend this old Parliament and we are going to get opportunity to speak in our new Parliament. I remember, sir, when I was a student of class eight, for the first time in my life, I visited Delhi. Sir, I am from Assam. You know, North Eastern region, more than 2000 kilometer away from the village. Definitely, as a school student, I visited here and we are travelling all the important parts, spots of Delhi and in class eight, in my life, for the first time physically, I seen our Parliament house. And it was from the outside, not from the inside. Sir, in 1996, I has elected Member of Parliament from Assam in Lukshava, sir. Madam, in class eight, physically I have seen the Parliament house from the outside and in 1996, physically for the first, I entered this house as a Member of Parliament. And fortunately, I was the took responsibility as a cabinet minister of the country in the year 1996. And it was my privilege to attend both the houses, Lukshava and Rajya Sabha. Although I was a member of Lukshava, but as a minister, I was attended this house also. It is painful, no doubt, from tomorrow, we are not here. But we are jubilant also, we are privileged, we are lucky. From the, from the next day, tomorrow, we are going to attend the new Parliament house with modern art and technology. The Parliament has a long history. I remember many things. This is, this is the Parliament, this is the building where first Indian financial budget was passed by then Prime Minister Jahalal Nehru. Again, I am speaking, I remembering. When China attacked my country, my motherland in 60s, then Prime Minister Jahalal Nehru given goodbye people of North Eastern region from India. This is the sentiment of us, this is the sentiment of. After them, many thing was discussed inside this Parliament. When China came to near to Texas, China came up to Bombay. People of Assam, people of North Eastern region, especially old national people, they are crying. We are not equipped to fight against China. And at that time, Assam was given, given farewell goodbye to then Prime Minister Jahalal Nehru. But sir, after 61 session was assembled, at that time, I salute great Parliament of India, great Parliament from Assam, Hamburuwa, who had spoke, who had fought for Assam and who have given warmth to the government from this house, sir. This Parliament also equally witness of imposing emergency in our country. Because for the first time, emergency was declared, revoked in our country. And at that time, Parliament was not, not functioning, Parliament was dissolved. Our honourable Prime Minister always says, India is the mother of democracy. Yes, Prime Minister is very right, India is the mother of democracy. But one thing, Santu Lucendi, you should remember, but history and said, MCN Greece was the first country of the world who revoked democracy. But this is not correct. This is not correct. In Bihar, first Indian democracy started in Boisali. It was started in Boisali, not 500 years ago, it was started 600 years ago. And Boisali of our country is the first place of democracy started. Where in Boisali town, it was 600 years ago, 707,000 people, locally elected people, selected people, sit together to make a decision and this is the first democratic decision of our country. Madam, we are going to new house today. This house will be the witness of modern technology, modern art. We hope, we believe incoming house, where we are going to tomorrow, will bring more important law for our country, for development of our country and financially to improve our country, many more discussion with this place. I remember, I have seen very, very important person dignitaries functioning in this house. Just two minutes, then I can.
Five minute ka.
Okay, just two minutes. I remember Keke Narayan as a vice president of our country, who shared the house. I remember Pharoosh Singh Shekharat. I remember Hamid Ansari. I remember Thangkan Naiduji for their contribution to our parliamentary democracy. Especially, I must speak one thing from the my heart. I salute Thangkan Naiduji because from this year, always Thangkan Naidu encouraging all the Member of House to speak their mother tongue. He was a very knowledgeable person, always he encouraging about the mother tongue. Definitely, Thangkan Naidu has a great, great contribution to this house. Equally, our present Chairman also always given us guidance, speaking about the, our history, especially in the legal side, he always given us the guidance. Maam, I remember, if I not speaking, this is not fair. आई हैव गोट ओपोरर्सनिटी तू विटनेस तस्वीर ऑफ़ बसपे जी मदद प्रेजेंटेशन ऑफ़ पर्दा मुखर जी वंडरफुल ओरतरिस्ट पर्सनिटी ऑफ़ मैडम सुश्मा जी लॉन्ड्रेड स्पीकर ओरूम जपली जी आई एम लर्न डी मेंटिंग 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 थिंग फ्रॉम दिस पीपल सर मैम रिमेंबरिंग आई रिमेंबरिंग माय फर्स्ट डे इन डी लाइफ व्हेन आई वाज़ डी स्टूडेंट ऑफ़ क्लास 8 आई हैव सीन दिस पार्लिमेंट बिल्डिंग फ्रॉम डी आउटसाइड एंड इन डी 1996 आई एंटर डिस्टिंग आज ए मेंबर ऑफ़ पार्लिमेंट एंड दिस इस डी ब्यूटी ऑफ़ आवर डेमोक्रेसी माय फैमिली डोंट हैव एनी पॉलिटिकल बैकग्राउंड आई एम नॉट सो आई एम आई एम नॉट ए सन ऑफ़ एनी मिनिस्टर आई एम नॉट ए सन ऑफ़ एनी एमपी आई वाज़ नॉट ए सन ऑफ़ एनी पॉलिटिशियन बट आई एम ए सन ऑफ़ डी सोन ऑफ़ डी सोइ आई एम ए सन ऑफ़ डी सोइ एंड डेमोक्री दिस इस डी ब्यूटी ऑफ़ डेमोक्रेसी आई एम इलेक्टेड फ्रॉम सन ऑफ़ डी सोइ ऑफ़ दिस वंडरफुल पार्लिमेंट डेफिनेटली इफ आई नॉट स्पीकिंग अबाउट डी माय पॉलिटिकल पार्टी देन इट विल बी नॉट फेयर आई एम गेटिंग दिस ओपोरर्सनिटी माय पॉलिटिकल पार्टी असम गनपुरी शक इस डी रीजनल पॉलिटिकल पार्टी विथ डी नेशनल आउटलू एंड आई एम ग्रेटफुल फॉर माय कंट्री फ्रॉम माय आई एम इन माय लाइफ आई एम वर्किंग ओनली वैन पार्टी दिस इस माय पार्टी दिस इस असम गनपुरी शक स्टील आई एम डी मेंबर ऑफ़ असम गनपुरी शक एंड आई एम रियली ग्रेटफुल तू डी माय पार्टी फॉर सेन मी तू सेन मी तू लुकशवा फॉर सेन मी तू राज्यशवा आज ए मेंबर ऑफ़ पार्लिमेंट विथ दिस आई बिलीव वी ऑल मेंबर्स गैदरिंग वह इन आवर लास्ट डे ऑफ़ दिस बिल्डिंग आवर वी ऑलवेज रिमेंबरिंग आवर मेमोरी इन डिस्टिंग एंड फ्रॉम टुमरू इन न्यू बिल्डिंग वी स्टार्ट आवर आवर न्यू पार्लिमेंट की लाइफ आवर न्यू डेमोक्रेटिक लाइफ विथ दिस वर्ड आई कॉन्ट थैंक यू थैंक यू वेरी मच
थैंक यू श्री जोसके बोनी
सर टुडे वी गादर हियर तू रिफ्लेक्ट अपऑन एन एक्स्ट्रा ऑर्डिनरी जानी मोर दन 70 ईयर्स ऑफ़ इंडियन पार्लिमेंट फॉर त्री क्वार्टर्स ऑफ़ एन सेंचुरी इट वाज़ सर्व्ड आस ए कॉन्नरस्टोन ऑफ़ आवर नेशन्स गवनेंस इट इस डी जानी मार्क्ड बाय ट्राइल्स ट्राइफन्स एंड अनहील्डिंग कमिटमेंट तू डी आइडियल ऑफ़ डेमोक्रेटिक रिपब्लिक डी फेमस ऑफ़ आवर कंस्टिट्यूशन एनविशंट ए वाइब्रेंट डेमोक्रेसी वह एवरी सिटिजन इरेस्पेक्टिव ऑफ़ कास, क्रेड और जेंटर हैव ए ओइस एंड ए ओट आवर पार्लिमेंट वाज़ इंटरेस्टेड विथ डी सैक्रिट ड्यूटी ऑफ़ अपहोल्डिंग दिस प्रिंसिपल्स इन लास्ट 7 डेकेड्स मेंटी लैटिन अमेरिकन एंड अफ्रोयाचियन कंट्रीज सेड अलोन विथ अस सांक एंड डिसप्टेड इवन डी माइटी उसससर एंड डी एंटर ईस्टर्न यूरोपियन नेशंस कॉलास्ट लाइक ए पैलेस ऑफ़ कार्ड्स बट वी कीप ऑन सेलिंग बिकॉज़ ऑफ़ डी मोस्ट ऑफ़ आवर शिप डी फ्लैग ऑफ़ पार्लिमेंट की डेमोक्रेसी फ्लटर्स वी हैव सीन हीटेड डिबेट्स फायरी डिस्कशन्स एंड पश्चानेट अक्यूमेंट डी वेरी एसेंस ऑफ़ पार्लिमेंट की डेमोक्रेसी ओवर डी ईयर्स इट वाज़ प्लेड ए पिविटर रोल इन शेपिंग इंडिया's डेस्टिनी इट वाज़ बीन सोर्स ऑफ़ प्रोग्रेसिव डिजिलेशन फ्रॉम डी इरराइकेशन ऑफ़ अनटचेबिलिटी तू डी एस्टैब्लिश मोर जेंटर इक्वलिटी फ्रॉम कोम्प्रिहेंसिव लैंड रिफॉर्म्स तू डी लिबराइजेशन ऑफ़ आवर इकोनॉमी आज वी सेलेब्रेट डी रिमार्कबल जानी लेट अस अलसो अक्नोलेज डी चैलेंजेस वी फेस आवर पार्लिमेंट लाइक एनी अदर इंस्टिट्यूशंस हाज़ हैव इट्स शेर ऑफ़ अप्स एंड डाउन इट इस डी अनडेनेबल फैक्ट डेट रिसेंट ईयर्स हाव विटनेस इंस्टेंस ऑफ़ अनडेमोक्रेटिक पार्लिमेंट की मेथड्स एंड प्रोसीजर्स विच थर्टन डी वेरी एसेंस ऑफ़ डेमोक्रेसी देयर हाव बीन ओकेशन्स वेयर लेजिस्टेटिव डिबेट्स हाव बीन कर्टेल ओपोजिशन्स ओइस साइलेंस्ड एंड क्रूशियर बिल्स पास्ट विथ डी ड्यू डिस्कशन्स एंड स्क्रूटनी डी इंटीग्रिटी ऑफ़ डी पार्लिमेंट कमिटी एंड इंटरनल पार्ट ऑफ़ डी डेमोक्रेटिक सिस्टम हाव आते टाइम्स बीन कॉम्प्रोमाइज्ड डिले इन अपॉइंटमेंट्स एंड डी पॉलिटिक पॉलिटाइजेशन ऑफ़ दिस कमिटीज हाव हिंडर डेयर अफेक्टिवनेस ओनली 25% ऑफ़ डी बिल्स वाज़ रिफ़ार्ड तू दिस कमिटीज सच अन लॉर रिफरल रेट ऑफ़ बिल्स तू डी कमिटी ड्यूरिंग डी 16th लोकसभा क्लीयरली शोज़ डी गवर्नमेंट इस नॉट ओपन तू डी स्क्रूटनी एंड एंकेजमेंट डेट डी कमिटी ऑफर्स डी सुप्रेशन ऑफ़ डी डिसेंट बी इट फ्रॉम डी सिविल सोसाइटी अकादमिया और डी मीडिया इस डी मैटर ऑफ़ डी कंसर्न ए थ्राइविंग डेमोक्रेसी एंकर्जिस डायवर्स प्रोस्पेक्टिव एंड रिस्पेक्ट डी राइट ऑफ़ डिसेंट रिसेंट इंस्टेंट इन्वॉल्विंग कर्टेलमेंट ऑफ़ फ्री स्पीच कास्ट डाउट ऑन डी गवर्नमेंट's कमिटमेंट तू दिस डेमोक्रेटिक वैल्यूज डी रॉबर्स डेमोक्रेसी थ्राइव्स ऑन ओपन कम्युनिकेशन एंड डी फ्री एक्सचेंज ऑफ़ आइडियास कर्टेलिंग दिस फंडामेंटल राइट्स पॉसेस डी थ्रेट तू डी हेल्थ ऑफ़ डेमोक्रेसी विथ डी इन्नाग्रेशन ऑफ़ डी न्यू पार्लिमेंट बिल्डिंग लेट अस अंडेस्पेट ए टाफरमेट ट्रांसफरमेटिव शिफ्ट इन आवर एंकेजमेंट विथ डी दिस पार्मांत इंस्टिट्यूशन मैं दिस सिंबल ऑफ़ प्रोग्रेस एंपॉवर अस ऑल तू बिकम डी कलेक्टिव ओइस ऑफ़ डी पीपल ऑफ़ डी नेशन स्टेरिंग आवर डेमोक्रेसी टुवर्स डी ब्राइटर एंड मोर इंडूसी फ्यूचर मैं आवर पार्लिमेंट कंटिन्यू तू बी डी बेकन ऑफ़ होप एंड डी ओइस ऑफ़ डी पीपल फॉर जनरेशन डिटकम थैंक यू
मिस्टर प्रफुल पटेल
थैंक यू चेयरमैन सर आई गेट अप तू स्पीक प्रॉब्ली फॉर डी
माइक
लास्ट आई गेट अप तू आई गेट अप तू स्पीक प्रॉब्ली फॉर डी लास्ट टाइम इन दिस वेरी अगस्त बिल्डिंग एंड
हो कैन यू बी सो सर
वेल आई सेड प्रोबेबली एंड आई एम सर वी आर ऑल फिल्ड विथ डी सेंस ऑफ़
तुम टुमरू वी आर मीटिंग डॉ. केशव देफरू आई एम सी
एंड ऑफकॉज़ वी आर ऑल
मी एंड प्रफुल पटेल गो टुगेदर इन पार्लिमेंट
ably provided us and stood the test of time. A country, I think when we go abroad and we see many countries and we look at their democracies, of course, there are very many shining examples. But no country, as, again I repeat, as populous as India, hundred and forty crore people, speaking so many languages, so many dialects, so many religions, so many states, so many ethnicities, can be remaining together as one is sometimes, I think, really an astonishment for many people in the world. We recently had the G twenty summit in India and I am sure whatever we, though we could not participate ourselves, but as government of India as projected and as seen by us and all the world, I am sure that every single leader who came to India would have been proud of what India has achieved in its last seventy-five years. It is not a mean feat, sir. We have ourselves, when we came to parliament, I remember, we were you and me and all of us, many who are in there in the past, Ram Gopal ji ko bhi yaad hoga, ke hum pehle 25 telephone ke connection kisko dey, ya gas ke cylinder hum kisko hum apne MP quota se dey. Yahan se humari shuruat hoti thi Ke Shorao Ki. And wo din bhi humne dekhe, ke telephone ka connection, agar normal course me hum lagayen, to 15, 15, 20, 20 saal ke baad humko number laga tha. To us, or gas ke connection ki bhi wahi paristriti thi. Or ye ek member of parliament ka privilege mana jata tha. To us zamane se lekar aaj, Hardeep ji, aap petroleum mantri hai, aapko maaloom hai ke aaj kitne bade paimane par, humare desh me na keval gas ki baat karen, ya telephone ki baat karen, lekin saare, pure tarah se humare desh ki jo aam taor par jo pragati hui hai, ye ek dunya ke liye bahut bada misal bani hui hai. And isliye 75 varsh, jab hum pure karte hai, amritkal ki baat karte hai, or is sadan se, naye sadan me jane ki baat karte hai, to aaj ka Bharat or bhavishya ka Bharat kaisa hona chahiye, adhunik Bharat kaisa hona chahiye, iske liye nishchitra is sadan me ek achhi charcha honi chahiye, or manthan hona chahiye, or har vikti ka yahan par jo sujav hai, uska ek ahm mahatva hota hai. Har sansat sadas se jo yahan par baitha hai, ye sadan me ya us sadan me, unki anubhav ka pura istmaal karke, desh hit me or jan hit me hum logon ne uska istmaal karke, uska faedar utane ka kam karna chahiye. Aaj desh me kya kya baatein nahi hoti hai, aaj hum dekhte hai ke, kitna visamtaai hone ke baad, kitni matlab garivi bhi hai, amiri bhi hai, sab kuch hotey hue bhi, log mil jul kar prembhav se rehte hai, ye humare Bharat ki sanskriti ka bahut bada abhinang hai. Or tabhi hum ye saari baaton ko, koi bhi samusyaay aati hai, baday aati usko par kar pate hai, kyunki humare desh me sahenshilti aor sabko ek dusre ke saath lekar chalne ki humare man me bhavana hai. Or ye humare samvidhan ne bhi humko diya hai. Jo ek vikti ko ek vote ka adhikaar, bahut logon ko shayad maaloom bhi nahi hogaa, hum America ke democracy ki bahut badi baatein karte hai. Lekin America ke democracy me bhi, jo kali chamri ke log the, jo African descent ke log the, unko bhi vote ka adhikaar, 1960 ke darsat me, jab Martin Luther King ne ladai ladhi uske baad mila, tab tak unko barabarhi ka adhikaar nahi tha. Lekin humare desh me, doctor Baba Sahib Ambedkar aur unke saath humari constituent assembly ne, humare founding fathers ne, is desh me sabhi ko barabarhi ka adhikaar, humare samvidhan me 1950 me humko diya, jo humare aap me ek bahut badi uplabdi rahi hai, jo aur vishwa ke koi bade deson me nahi rahi hai. Lekin nishchitra naye bhavan me, ek adhunik Bharat ki, or bhavishya ke Bharat ki, uski bhi jala humko nazar aayegi. Ek aur hum chandrayaan pahunche, ek aur hum humare desh me itna tak humko nazar aayegi. Ek aur hum chandrayaan pahunche, ek aur hum humare desh me itna tantr or vigyan ka aaj upiyog kar raha hai. Aaj humara desh technology me, vishwa me ek agrani sthaant prapta kar chuka hai. America ki or vishwa ki badi badi jo company hai, technology company hai, un saare companies ke jo promuk log hai, whaake promuk innovators hai, scientist hai, wo humare bhartiye hai, ye humare liye bahut bade garb ki baat hai. Or aise ek adhunik yug me jab hum ja raha hai, or bhavishya ke Bharat ka, or naye Bharat ka sapna jab hum dekhe raha hai, naujavan Bharat ka sapna dekhe raha hai, to nishchitra naye sadan ka bhi ek ahm, uska ek mahatva rahega. Or mujhe viswaz hai, ke aapke nethriton me, humare sadan ka sucharu roop se, naye sadan me bhi kam ka jarii rahega, or naye sadan ke maadhyam se, humari desh ki jo yuvaon ki, or bhavishya ki, piri ki jo aakansha hai, apexha hai, uski jarul purti hogi. Isi viswaz ke saath, humare desh ke 75 varsh pure hue, humare desh ke logon ko, or humare desh ke pradhammantri ji ko bahut bahut bhadai dete hue, main apne do shadon ko viram deta hu.
No, the honourable member has put across his points with positivity, and that is what is required. At an occasion like this, we all have to converge to see Bharat blossoms, politics apart. So that's a very important contribution. Shri Bhuvneshwar Kalita.
Thank you honourable chairman for giving me the opportunity.
Kya pata, kon kitni galaz jake baita huwa hai?
Thank you sir, for giving me the opportunity to speak on this historic occasion of Rajasabha, to speak on the parliamentary journey of seventy-five years, starting from Sambidhan Sabha. Sir, today I remember when I came first to Rajasabha in 1984, when Justice Hidayatullah was the, was presiding over that chair, and, and he was followed by of course, our Bankat Ramanji, Sangadyal Sharma ji. And today, you are in the seat sir, and I thank you for that, that the Indian democracy and Indian parliament has come over years of development and strengthening the democracy in this country. So today, I congratulate the new vice chairman for taking up the chair. Thank you. Today, as we assemble here, to reflect upon the parliamentary journey of seventy-five years, starting from inception of the Sambidhan Sabha, we embark on a profound exploration of our nation's democratic evolution. This remarkable journey has been marked by achievements, experiences, memories, and invaluable lessons that have not only saved our parliamentary institutions, but have also left an indelible imprint on the course of our nation's history. Madam Chair, I, while speaking on the, on these seventy-five years of our journey, we must remember about some of the key milestones in the history of Indian parliament. Madam, 1946, the constituent assembly convened for the first time on December 9. So our journey starts from there, and in 1950, India adopted its constitution on January 26, a momentous event for Indian parliamentary democracy. Madam, in 1952, the first general elections were held, marking the initiation of our democracy. And in 1956, the State Reorganizations Act has adopted, leading to reshaping of state boundaries. There was a struggle, and the then members of the constituent assembly had given shape to this country, and particularly by reorganizing the states for the convenience of the people and the administration. In 1957, with the second general election, the things have started moving, and in 1961, Goa, Daman and Dhu were, new states were, the new states got liberation. They were liberated and they were recognized as state. Madam, one historic occasion we must remember in this regard is that for the first time, the preamble of the constitution was amended. We all remember the 42nd amendment, and in 75, 77, of course, that was the period that the Indian democracy will remember, and the parliamentarians particularly, and the people of this country will remember because of its effects on the people. Madam, in 1986, a historic bill was passed, the Muslim women protection of rights on divorce act was enacted. This is one historic legislation where the women of all religion, all communities were given equal power, and that is, that equal power and equal opportunity and equal right. So this one, we must remember during the discussion of this, in this debate. And the economic liberalization came in 1991, during the prime ministership of PV Narasimha Raoji. And today, we are step by step, step, we are ahead to liberalize the economy and the benefits of the economy, reaching to the poor and vulnerable sections because of that. And today, the country is progressing, the country has got remarkable progress in the economic field, where today, India is considered as the fifth largest economy in the world. And very soon, our honourable prime minister has publicly announced that within next few years, India will be one of the three top economies of the world. Madam, another remarkable event during the progress of this democracy, during the progress of parliament was the GST. The GST was, goods and services tax was implemented and streamlining the taxation system. One nation, one tax was the motto, and today, we have seen that the national exacar is enriched by GST and, and remarkable tax collection has been made, and which is helping the development of this country. So I, I remember, and the country will remember this GST taxation for the benefit and for the, and for the progress of this country. Madam, one nation, one tax, but till 1919, 2019, till 2019, this country had two constitution, two, two flags, and two, and this was possible to make one nation, one flag, and one constitution by the amendment brought by, under Abrogation Act of Article 370, which was brought in 2019, which says, we can be proud of being one nation, one flag, and one constitution. And I congratulate the government for that. Madam, we, madam, I, I, I did, I did not disturb you, although you said certain objectionable thing, including balkanization of the country, so please don't do that. And, and madam, the great thing, the great war that India fought was the Covid-19 pandemic. That India not only come out of this pandemic successfully, but also helped other nations, neighboring countries to fight with this. And the biggest achievement was the vaccines that India manufactured, and vaccines. And the entire country was vaccinated, and today, we are safe, safe in terms of healthcare. Madam, while talking about the achievements, what, during the seventy-five years of our journey, what achievements this country has made? Madam, the main achievement which we can today discuss is the inclusivity. These efforts towards inclusivity, one of our speaker was giving an example with a senior leader, that it is not only India, other parts of the world also had the inclusivity in terms of women representation. The women representation has increased from 5% in 1951 to 14% in 2019. And the number of voters, numbers of, number of voters increased dramatically from 173.2 million in 1951 to 912 million 2019. So this is not, this is not a less achievement, this is the, this has strengthened the democracy of this country, these things have improved, and this is, this has brought achievement to our democracy, to our parliamentary democracy. Madam, some of the, some of the experience and some of the achievements that we have made is the 2023 world we are today. Today, we are sitting here in the Rajasabha sambar, and some of our members have become emotional also, that maybe from tomorrow, we will be going to the new building. This new building is the, is that we have to cross a line. Up to this seventy-five years, we have achieved a lot, but from here, we have to go, we have to make a leap forward, so that country is, this country becomes the developed economy. So next twenty-five years, next twenty-five years, in the new building of parliament, we are having our amritkal, where India will, India will reach the, in the line of developed nation. So that will be our effort, and everyone of us should, should make our efforts in our own way. Every Indian, every single citizen, citizen should make their own effort to make this country a developed nation in the, in, by 2024, 2047, when we will be completing our hundred years of Indian parliament and Indian democracy. Sir, in the, now I am, I am going to conclude because there are some more speakers, they have, they are also, and, and this special station is today convened to commemorate the seventy-five year of journey of our parliament. What is our experience during this period? Sir, madam, to conclude my speech here, I, I want to say that our journey through parliamentary evolution of India over past seventy-five years has been one of both reflection and insight. While we have faced certain challenges and shifts in the parliamentary dynamics, it is essential to recognize the significant efforts made to foster inclusivity within our democratic institutions. The rise of women's representation, the active engagement of citizens in public debates, the crucial role of parliamentary committees, and the passage of legislation aimed to, aimed at social welfare and lever rights are testaments of our commitment to inclusivity. Madam, as we commemorate the key milestones in the history of the Indian parliament, we are reminded of the enduring spirit of our democracy. From the adoption of constitution in 1950, to the recent inauguration of a new parliament building in 2023, these events signify our nation's growth, resilience, and adaptability in the face of challenges. As we move forward, madam, it is imperative that we continue to uphold the principles of democracy, inclusivity, and transparency that have been the corners, have been the cornerstones of our parliamentary democracy. By learning from our past and embracing the opportunities of the future, we can ensure that our democratic institutions remain robust and responsive to the ever-changing needs and aspirations of our diverse and dynamic nation. Let us celebrate this journey, madam. Let us celebrate this journey with pride and commitment to a more inclusive and vibrant future for Indian democracy. Thank you vice chair for giving me the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Manish Adash, Vikramjit Singh Saini.
Honourable Chairman sir and my fellow parliamentarians, today when I stand here to speak on this historic occasion of the transition from historic parliament house to the iconic new parliament building, representing the new India, as India approaches a major milestone in the seventy-fifth year of the parliament. Parliament house is not just a building of brick and mortar, whereas it is a, an living institution which has to save, to be safeguarded, embrace the idea of India. It is the fundamental temper of our world's largest democracy. Indian parliament is an aspiring story of our civilization's strive for respect and resources, with our values intact as the largest democracy in the world. We embody the unique fiber of our being, unity in diversity, secularism, pluralism, social justice, and equal fundamental rights for each citizen. On this historic occasion, chairman, I would like to remember and pay homage to our ancestors, and as my father used to narrate, the horrors of partition still haunt us. I think Punjab and Punjabi suffered the most out of it. There were about 2 million people who lost their lives, and about 14 million people had to abandon their homes in the giant exodus.
Lakho log bhagar ho gaye, aur unhone Bharat ko, India ko, Bharat, apni matr bhumi ko, apni janam bhumi mana, aur apna sab kuch, apna karobar, apne bartan, apna jaidaade, apna sab kuch chod ke, lakho Punjabi safar karte hue, Bharat ko chuna, Bharat ko mana, or fir as a refugee, they started their career, or fir refugee se build up kiya. Ye unki desh bhakti ki sabse badi nishani hai, aur unhone is desh bhakti ka abhi tak patriotism humare samne hai. I also pay homage to all the great Sikh leaders who spurned the offer of then Muhammad Ali Jinnah, and decided to keep, upkeep India as their motherland, and Punjabis and Sikhs have been proving their patriotism till today. We Sikhs are not by chance Indians, we are proudly by choice Indians. Honourable Chairman sir, we also pay tribute to them. Dehe shiva, var mohay eh, shub karman te kabhuna taru, jab aav ki od niddhan banay, at hi raan me tab juj maru. I would also like to remember on this historic occasion, the Shahidi Azam Bhagat Singh, who drew the attention of the British samrajya in this very own parliament to further strengthen the freedom struggle. In this same parliament building, while presenting the constitution to our country, Dr. Bhim Rao Ambedkar had said, however good a constitution may be, if those who are implementing are not good, it will prove to be a bad. However, bad a constitution may be, if those implementing it are good, it will prove to be good. So on us, as parliamentarians, on seventy-fifth year of the parliament, the dream voice and aspirations of a nation suppressed by a colonial rule came to surface. As they say, with great power comes great responsibility. We all sit here as the public representatives. We are emblematic of the aspirations of 1.4 billion people who wants us to serve them. We represent them, we are their voice, we are their eyes, we are their ears. Eradicating poverty, unemployment, corruption, agrarian crisis, casteism, communal hatred have no place for India, and this parliament have to work for the fundamental things like ensuring health, education, infrastructure, nation's inclusive development, women empowerment, youth empowerment. Ya amritkal tabi hi amrit hoga, agar hum vidya ka, shiksha ka amrit, sehat ka amrit, health ka amrit, rozgar ka amrit, har ek gaam gaam me, har ek bhartiyo ko pahunchayenge. So we, as representatives of our nationals, we have to conduct ourselves, define the character of the august houses, and therefore our conduct withholds our respect to the underlying values and nobleness of this esteemed institution forged for our safeguarding by our four leaders. Honourable Chairman, the disruptions which happens in the parliament act as a hurdle in this fundamental process for a smooth functioning of parliament, I personally think, with my experience of one year, both treasury and opposition have to together play a positive and constructive role, so that optimum productivity of this institution is maintained. I take this historic opportunity to pay homage to stalwarts like my elder brother, Shri Arun Jeetli ji, my elder, dearest sister who given me love for, as a brother for twenty-five years, Shrimati Shushma Savraj ji, and we pray for the long life of stalwart doctor Manmohan Singh ji, who is here with us despite his ill health. It was doctor Manmohan Singh ji who brought radical changes to the economy in 91, and he had said, kuch aise bhi manzir, tariq ki nazron me, kuch aise bhi manzir hai, tariq ki nazron me, lamhaon ne khata ki, sadiyon ne saza pay. It is our humble invocation to every individual sitting here, both from government, treasury benches, and opposition, that we all should commit to this parliament, that in the new parliament house, we will ensure healthy debates, discussions, least disruptions, and adjournments, and we do maximum work for the nation building. Jai Hind.
Thank you. Manish Adash, Shrimati, Mamta Mohanta.
Dhanyabad, aap sabhi ko meri sada bhi sahna raha hai. Mere party, Vijayujantadal ke taraf se is pavitra bhroh me mujhe bolne ka moka diya, isliye dhanyabad deti hai. Mera desh Bharat, dharm, phas, bann aur jati ke daire me se aage hum sabhi ek hai. Hum keval bhartiye hai, aap sabhi Bharat varsh ka ittihad jante hai, Bharat. Bharat desh kaise aur kooshadin hua, kitne bolidan, tyaak samarpan ke baad shadin Bharat hume hasi hua. In sabhi sangrami vikshitay ko main is pavitra bhroh se naman karti hu, sradhanjali yapan karti hu. Shadin Bharat ke sabhi log ko shaasan podhati me rakke suvida denekhi. Shadin Bharat ke sabhi log ko shaasan podhati me rakke suvida denekhi samay me, desh ko samvidhan ki abashakta parhi, jo sabhi bhartiyo ko savanata pradan kare. Shadin proneta, Baba Sahib, Bhim Rao, Ramji, Ambedkar ko bhi is bhroh se naman karti hu. Jiska, jiske kalam ki taakar se is pulis pradhan samaj me, mohilaay bhi savanata prapt kar raha hai. 1950 january 26 ko, is samvidhan lagu hone ke baad, vanatantra Bharat ka shuruat hua. Tabi se jati bann, dharm, sikha, adi, sabhi khaitro me, sabhi ko saman suvida mila. Is samvidhan ke chaltay hue, desh me shaasan podhati Is sambidhan ke chaltay hue, desh me shasan podhati lagu huwa. Is prajatantra, athatkan tantr me vidhai ka, karjapalika aur nyai palika ko samaan gurut diya gaya. Aaj hum twenty-one century me pahunch gaye. Vish ke, anyo desh ke hisaab se, yaha ka loktantra aur shaduha huwa hai. Ek adivasi mahila aaj raastropat, bharat desh ka sabse badi padobi, bahamohim raastropati ki padobi me obastapit hai. Main ek adivasi jillah se ake yaha, apshab ke samne kuch kha pa rahi hoon. Isi se badi baat kya hai? Mahila ke vikas ka aur kya udharan do? Aaj agar ap kehi bhi jao, to jada tar ilaka me mahila jillah collector, jillah SP mahila, sarkari karvachari jada payenge. Shikha khaitro me, ap dekhe IIT, IIM, MBBS, UPS, sabhi khaitro me mahila ko dabdaba hai. Bharat varsha me satri, saasshat se jada adivasi varga hai. Bharat ke eight point six percent inka sankhya hai. Aaj ke hisaab se sankhya bad gayi hai. Desh gathan ke samay, sahi is varga ko gurut diya gaya hai. Sabhi raj, adivasi varga ke samajik, aarthik vikas ta tha, unka saskriti ke surakshya, phas ka surakshya diya ja rahe. Unke vikas ke liye satantra mantraalay banaya gaya hai. Sabse badi baat hai ki, unke phasamay unhe shikha diya ja rahe. Lekin adivasi sampradai ke anchalik phas ko surakshya detey hue, prathamik shikha vyobostha me shaamil karna jaruri hai aur sambidhan ke oshtham porichad me shaamil karna abashakta hai. Shikha khaitro me bharat ke pavon bhoomi se chant ka jatraa hi sabse badi udharan hai. Yaha kitne visshavidyalay, voishahik visshavidyalay, research visshavidyalay, samay kitne onestan hai. Yaha se lakho sankhya me vidyathee nikaltay, jo desh, videsh me bharat ka naam rason karte hai. Is desh me seventy-seven percent se jada shikhi the. Eighty-four percent se jada mahila aur seventy-one percent se jada purus shikhi the. Aur kushikhaatro ki baat kahu to yaha sixty percent kisan hai, jinko hum bhagwan maante hai. Kyunki ye log hume do box ke khane ke vyobostha me jootay hai. Sarkar bhi in kisanon ke liye bahut chajanabonaye hai. Prati var shatantra budget kiya jata hai. Shash khaitro me bhi bodhlabaya hai. Sabhi rok ka ilaj turant ho pa rahe. Govana govane, shilpa, technology, vigyan khaitro me, hum bahut aage hai. Aaj humara desh bahut aage hai. Inne shansad gurah se bharat varsha ka naya ityaaas likha jayega. Shabko badhai dekhar mera bhaktava rakti hoon. Namaskar.
Dr. Amar Patnaik. Sometimes it is very good to catch someone off guard. Then the productivity and contribution is more genuine and authentic.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman Sir. So it's actually indeed a privilege for me to be present here, speaking about seventy-five years of Parliament, of the largest and one of the most diverse democracies of the world. It's no mean feat, sir, that parliamentary democracy has flourished in this country because of this Parliament. What is currently happening or is about to happen is that we would be moving in a symbolic fashion from old to the new, from new to the aspirational, and from a democracy which was marked by bills and acts which led the foundation or which will probably, which will be the foundation for several such new bills and acts in the future in the new building. Sir, I would like to speak about a speech which Dr. Ambhedkar made in the Law College of University of Delhi way back in nineteen forty-eight. He says, there could be no doubt that one of the countries which could boast of a great ancient civilization was India. It had parliamentary institutions when people of Europe were mere nomads. It is not that India did not know what is democracy. There was a time when India was studied with republics and even where there were monarchies, they were either elected or limited. It is not that India did not know parliaments or parliamentary procedure. A study of the Vinay Pitaaka and the Buddhist Vikshu Sanghas discloses that not only there were parliaments, but the sanghas were nothing but parliaments. But the sanghas knew and observed all the rules of parliamentary procedure known to modern times. So I would concur with what other members were referring to, to say that democracy did not really originate in Greek, but in Greece, but it originated much, much, many, many years before in this particular land. Sir, if we are talking about Parliament, I would like to think that since we knew about the parliamentary functioning for a long time and since we are talking about the Constituent Assembly, the Constituent Assembly gave us the Constitution. But it is the Parliament that helps to make the Constitution a living document by the process of amendments. And that is how each one has enabled and strengthened the other and these amendments have actually made the Parliament, made the functioning of the Parliament closure to the socio-economic and political reality of each of the times, the entire history of this particular seventy-five years. So the role of Parliament, in a sense, anywhere in the world would be fourfold. So one, to make laws which will be evolving with the times. Second, to pass the budget. Third, to raise national, state, and local issues. And number four, to hold the executive to account by various procedures, a question and answer, and committees, and PSC, and COPO, and other such matters. Now, if we talk about the first and the foremost duty of Parliament, that is to make laws, I know that the Parliament has met several laws. There are more than hundred amendments which have been passed. But I would like to concentrate on a few. And those are, the first one, on the center-state relations. Sir, the Parliament, right from the time the Constituent Assembly debates have taken place, has been cognizant of the fact that the states have a very important role to play in this, in democracy. In fact, Renuka Ray, she was a member of the Constituent Assembly, while agreeing with Pandit Kujur, she says, it is necessary that the center should be in a position to see that provinces do not fall behind in regard to the minimum standards of development. But agreeing with Pandit Kujur, it is also not possible for a province to administer its responsibilities in an adequate manner if its financial position is unstable or uncertain. Therefore, the Parliament's job is threefold. One, legislative relations, administrative relations, and financial relations. While on the first two front, I think there has not been much divergence except occasional allegations of center legislating on the state list, the problem has been the financial relation, the devolution of funds. And I think this is where our Chief Minister, my leader, Honorable Naveen Patnaik, has always been saying that the cess and surcharge which comes to the central kitty should be made a part of the divisible pool. I think this is what we have to look forward in the next twenty-five years to be happening, to make the states actually financially independent and financially sustainable to take the entire goal of the nation forward. The second aspect that I would like to talk about is on the issue of women, sir. So on the issue of women, the Parliament has passed several landmark legislations and many of them have already been spoken about here. One is the Hindu Marriage Act. It removed polygamy, marriage of a maiden and that of a widow, the registration of Hindu marriage, the divorce. The Hindu Succession Act, which is very significant because it gave property rights to women. The Hindu Succession Amendment Act, Child Marriage Act, and several such acts relating to women. But I think it stopped short of one particular last legislation and that is reservation for women in the parliaments and the assemblies. And that you know, sir. The leader, Honorable Naveen Patnaik, has been taking it forward for a long, long period of time, sent emissaries to all political parties. We have spoken here all the time to bring this legislation so that women, the gender parity and the gender equity, the theme reaches its final conclusion by these Parliament, whether here or in the new building. And the last point, sir, that I would like to talk about is environmental constitutionalism. Sir, this is the Parliament which has passed most of the environmental laws, starting with Air Pollution Act, Prevention of Air Pollution, Prevention of Water Pollution, Environmental Protection Act. Several such laws have been passed and that is how the Parliament has responded to the existential crisis that is facing this world at large, which is happening because of climate change. I think the Parliament has responded very well, but there are two gaps which probably could be brought in and that is how the Parliament of India would have responded to the world and that is to bring in a legislation to ensure that net zero is reached in a fixed period of time and incentives are given for proper environmental response. So last, so last point, our Parliament, while we transition from here to that building, would also mark a transition in the way the Parliament of India is responding to technology, sir. So we are moving from a physical, more of a physical Parliament to a Parliament which is both physical and digital sansad, sir. It will be a hyb, it is not a hybrid, but that will be the way forward, sir. So I think with this, I would end my speech. Thank you so much for giving me these opportunities, sir.
Well, you have very well audited. That's your background. Shri Tiruchi Shiva.
Thank you, Chairman Sir. Sir. Thank you, Chairman Sir. Sir, called us a special session, sir. We are still not aware of the business to be transacted in the remaining four days. Your shock or surprise may be awaiting.
We'll have a business advisory committee and we'll have a business advisory committee tomorrow and you'll be enlightened.
As of now.
And for tomorrow, you know everything.
Okay, sir.
Go ahead.
As of now, I am telling. So a shocker, surprise, or nothing is awaiting and we are also awaiting. Sir, we have completed seventy-five glorious years of independence and seventy-two successful years of journey of the Parliament. Sir, this milestone makes it important to recall the hopes, the ideals we have cherished, we have accomplished in this Parliament, fulfilling those visions of the people who fought for freedom and those who drafted the Constitution. Sir, at the outset, I would like to pay my tributes to those who laid down their lives for our freedom, the independence which we are enjoying. Starting from Pulithavan, Veerabandia, Kattapuman, Marudh Brothers, Vellanachar, Khuyili, and Telakar, Gokale, Makatma Gandhi, Nehru, Sadar Patel, VOC, and unsung heroes and unsung heroines, which is very, very important, sir. Sir, I think this is the right time to tell that. In a freedom struggle in Tamil Nadu, many women participated with involvement. One lady participated with a one-year child in her hand. And when the police attempted to disperse the crowd, they opened fire and when the crowd dispersed, she fell in a place. The flag which she was holding was in another place. The child fell in another place. And the bullet that was fired hit the infant and the child died, sir. A child who knows nothing sacrificed his life and that mother of the child named Kalimal, she didn't hesitate. She again took the flag and marched on. So so many unsung heroines or unsung heroes who have to be recollected at this very proud moment. Sir, democracy is a popular sovereignty. The concept of this popular sovereignty is attaining its completion by way of the functioning of the Parliament. Sir, in post the first Indian general election in nineteen fifty-two, the Manchester Guardian commented, parliamentary institutions have not had a very good time in Asia. All that is happening in Asia throws a spotlight on the Parliament in Delhi as the one institution of the kind which is working in an exemplary way. Sir, there are two salient features which has brought India to as a focus, as a largest democracy. One is our Constitution and another is that Parliament. Sir, Thomas Jefferson, the architect of America, once said that, no constitution will survive the test of time more than twenty years. But ours is very vibrant even after seventy-two years because of the amending provisions. We have changed to time and ours is not only the longest and it has been discussed with a very long period of nearly three years. Sir, democracy, when it came into existence, some people say Greece, some people say somewhere else, but we are the predecessors, we are the foreigners in everything. For example, in Tamil Nadu, in Tamil Nadu, sir, early Chola period, that was in second, third century, some excavations near Chennai, Uthramiru, brought out the fact that there was a kudaavoli system. There is a Yarsan path in which people will write on the palm leaves their choice of candidate and deposit in that and a child would pick up and that person will be the sarpansh of that area. So this democracy has been in India for more than two thousand years, that too from the southern years, sir. Sir, coming to the Parliament. Sir, sentiments are not attached only to humans, of course to buildings too. I can recollect many things. And even if you move to a rich-looking new Parliament, sir, I think you or I, many of us, would visit this Parliament and especially the central hall. How can we forget this, sir? How many things have happened which is in history. Sir, the foundation stone for this Parliament was laid in February nineteen twenty-one by Duke of Kannat. And it was inaugurated by Vaisra Irwin in nineteen twenty-seven. Six years it took place. Sir, we should be very happy to note that the buildings were designed by Sir Herbert Basker along with Edwin Lewin, architects, are the architects of the new imperial capital. That is not the issue, sir. What I would like to highlight here is the sandstone columns in our Parliament is a state of the art. And it is said that two thousand five hundred stone cutters have been employed to design the top of the Parliament and almost it took so many years. Two thousand five hundred stone cutters and machines were employed to shape the marble there. And the central hall, sir, originally it was designated to be a library. Sir, you know very well everything. And later the Constituent Assembly sat there for four years, from forty-six to fifty. And after that, sir, it's a surprise that Supreme Court had its sittings here in the central hall, till it migrated to nineteen fifty-eight in the Prasad Building. And this central hall has witnessed a lot. Sir, I can hear two sounds. In June nineteen twenty-nine, the record, the blast of bomb which was thrown by the revolutionary Bhagat Singh and HK Butt to attain freedom. And thereafter in two thousand one, there was a terrorist attack in the Parliament which was to foil our freedom and a challenge to democracy. But this Parliament withstood that, sir. Thanks to the design and construction of this as well as the security guards who were very much awake and acted to the situation. Sir, this circular shape of this Parliament is a reminiscence of the room, Colosseum, they say. Sir, see, I have been here for more than two decades, sir. I've been once in Lok Sabha and the fourth term here, sir. No other place in the world I love than this Parliament premises. For many reasons, for many reasons. Sir, we have been contributing our service through this Parliament. We voice out the people's aspirations. We fulfill their expectations. We redress their grievances by urging the government to understand and act. So this is it. This is the setup of a Parliament. We make the government accountable. And this way we have worked a lot and have contributed and we are setting a trend to the whole world, sir. And this central hall has seen so many. Again, sir, you know very well, it starts from Richard Nixon, then Eisenhower, then.
Aninamroh, many have come.
Sir?
Many have come.
Ah, Gurashiv, sir, Margaret Thatcher, Barack Obama, along with our presidents have addressed the joint sessions of Parliament after the general election and before the commencement of every year. And people like you, sir, as vice presidents, what all they have done. And people like you, sir, as vice presidents, what all they have done. Sir, all these are reminiscences.
So, what's your point, sir?
Coming, sir, I'm praising about this building.
We are attaching our certificate.
When we are celebrating seventy-five years of independence, sir, we, I have to exalt the building, sir, the parliament. It's not just a building, sir. How many laws? See, in the first two terms of this parliament, nineteen-fifty-two and fifty-seven, it's only seven hundred laws have been enacted in this parliament. Seven hundred laws. And moreover, in those first fifteen years till sixty-seven, the legacy of the freedom circle continued by Congress and as well as opposition parties were there. Who are all there? Communists, the socialists, as well as the culturally conservative Johnsons.
Sir, you are getting sentimental beyond sentiment.
Sir. Socialist, liberal, Sutrapati. And sir, after the DMK entered into the parliament, the doors were open for the regional parties. In a federal setup, the regional parties should have a very important place and it cannot be dispensed of. It was established only after DMK came here. Our first founder leader, Anna, how his voice echoed in this august upper house, sir, it is still in the annals of history. Sir, I would, sir, I also visualize, who all have been here? Pandit Nehru, Dr. Ambedkar, Lal Bagadur Shastry, Kirpalani, Madhu Dantavade, Bhajmayaji, Adwaniji, Ramanuragya and our beloved Anna, until Morosali Maran, sir, your colleague, when you were in the Ministry of VP Singh, sir. His performance in Doha Conference is still, yeah, history. Sir, coming to all these points, sir. Sir, I think I have some time, sir.
No, sir. No, what I am doing is that the main opposition party, their entire time had been taken by the honorable L O P. But I would still accommodate some of them, given their huge experience. They had been the situation. I am rationally, uniformly curtailing time, more of the ruling party, but of others also. So, please cooperate with me.
Sir, I could hear though I was not there, the tryst with destiny speech of Pandit Nehru.
Hmm?
The tryst with destiny, the speech delivered by Pandit Nehru at the stroke of the midnight hour, sir.
No, what I said was that we had tryst with destiny.
Sir?
We had tryst with destiny.
Uh-huh.
In fifteenth August to nineteen-forty-seven.
Yes, sir. Long years ago, we had a tryst with destiny.
At midnight, rolling out a GST regime.
When the whole world sleeps, India.
After a gap of seventy years.
Will awake to life and freedom, sir. He started his speech. Sir, I, I had the privilege of being here during the golden jubilee of the independence, sir. And in the central hall, we heard the speeches of Makatma Gandhi and Neetaji Subhasandrabos and that's a very green memory. So, also these speeches, sir. And after the speech of Pandit Nehru, very important here is to, we have to recollect this mentioning of Dr. Ambedkar, the architect of our constitution, because this is the right time. When we are speaking about constitution, we have to preserve also. So, I have to quote only two things, one of Ambedkar's and another of Anna. However, a constitution may be, quote, Dr. Ambedkar. However, good, a constitution may be. If those who are implementing it are not good, it will prove to be bad. Okay, sir. However, bad a constitution may be, if those implementing it are good, it will prove to be good. If those who are called to work it happen to be a good lot. The constitution can provide only the organs of states such as legislature, executive and judiciary. The factors on which the working of those organs of the state depends are the people and the political parties. They will set up as their instruments to carry out their wishes and their politics.
That is the matter.
Climaxy, sir. If I find the constitution misuse, I shall be the first to burn it. I'll be the first to burn it, sir. It was said by none other than Dr. Ambedkar, sir. So, also during his last retreat in the Constituent Assembly, he congratulated everyone, those who supported and those who dissented. The proceedings of this Constituent Assembly would have been very dull if all members had yielded to the rule of party discipline. Party discipline in all its rigidity would have converted this assembly into a gathering of yes-men. So, he says that, he goes on to thank all those who dissented also.
It has relevance, sir. It has a relevance.
Yeah, everything has relevance, sir.
All I can say, Dr. Ambedkar had been very prophetic.
Very?
Very, very prophetic.
Yes, sir.
I wish.
That's why I quote, sir.
The people sitting in this house would be in a position to take a call while being here. That's something which has eluded us.
Two things I, I quoted very much, sir, here. However, a constitution may be good. If those who are implementing it are good, it won't prove to be bad, number one. And second, he has said if it is misuse, he will be number one to burn.
Thank you.
Sir, and our, our late leader Anna, very important, sir. He entered into this parliament and said, "I, I am from the Dravidian stock. I have something distinct and different to offer to the nation at large." He started and very important, he spoke during the official languages amendment act, sir. Sorry.
Please conclude.
Sir, sir. Yeah, if it is uniformity, quote, Anna spoke. If it is uniformity that you are going to aim at, you are not going to achieve it, come what may. This country consists of different ethnic elements, different cultural elements and different linguistic groups. It is only unity within this diversity that we should arrive at and not by destroying the fine niceties of this diversity, mistaking uniformity for unity. May I ask, members of this house and the Prime Minister, whether language alone is the cementing force needed for the unity of this country? There are regional imbalances, there are regional leanings, there are linguistic leanings. All these things have got to be bridged if you want to have a sort of unity without uniformity for this country. Unquote, sir.
Thank you.
Unquote, sir. Sir, this parliament has experienced very well. It has flourished, all the diversity, sir. Our social, regional, linguistic, ethnic, religion, everything. But that has to be maintained. That is our foremost wish, sir. Sir, many things have to be observed. I don't know, sir, why you are arming up. Then you have been liberal with everyone, sir.
See, even your time is over.
Yeah, sir. Sir, sir, sir.
Yes.
Now, give me, give me two more minutes. Let me, let me, let me conclude, sir. Let me conclude, sir. Sir, everyone is optimistic that when we move to the new parliament, it's a new building, but our convention will be the same. Our functioning will be the same. We will be upholding democracy as the constitution, which is our guiding light and guardian. And it is a responsibility and duty of everyone. Sir, the parliament understands and establishes whoever is in the opposition will be the ruling party next time. So, this is of course democracy. The parliament understands, it has been repeated. Sir, I would like to say only one thing, sir. In the recent days, the space for the opposition is shrinking. There has been a decline in the ability of the parliament to hold the government accountable. With fewer days of working, scrutiny of legislative proposals is weakening. Expansive executive control over the legislative process persists. They got frequent, government resorts to ordinances than legislation. Sir, this is only our concern, sir. At least we have to be free. Because, sir, you, you, sir, you know very well.
Experience of journey. You are right.
Yes, sir.
But when I look within.
Yes, sir.
I find lost opportunities. Enough opportunity was available. Why that was not availed? We have to be very rational, committed. It is good to speak these things.
Yes, sir.
Good to talk of sublimity. But I keep a diary and mind you, I am in pain.
Sir, I have been.
I did everything in spite of perception whatever be around.
Sir, we are talking about governments, not you, sir.
To have people there. Let us hope, let us hope, pray and wish that we will avail every opportunity.
Yes, sir.
To make a contribution.
That's great, sir.
In this great theatre.
Sir, we repose our confidence upon you, sir.
Without disturbance, without disruption. Shri S. Nirenjan ready.
Sir, only last sentence, last sentence. Sir, the ideals of Anna, the Dravidian policy and, sir, we are second to none in upholding the sovereignty of this country, sir. When Chinese aggression came, we gave up our policy, the individual Dravidanad. And when the Bangladesh War came, our then Chief Minister, Dr. Kalinger, gave six crore rupees the first ever in the state.
Shri S. Nirenjan ready. Five minutes. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you Chairperson. Sir, I think it is my fortune that I finally got to address the house with you being in the chair, maybe on the last day of the house being in session.
In this.
In this house. Sir, parliamentary journey of seventy-five years is quite a historic occasion for someone like me to have an opportunity to speak. Sir, I regard myself as someone who is relatively inexperienced and young parliamentarian because I have only completed one year. Maybe I bring the advantage of fresh eyes to see the ongoings of the parliament to maybe give some inputs of mine, sir. And, sir, but I have been old student of the constitution. I was going to actually speak little more about it, sir, until I realized you have much more experience than me about understanding the constitution. Sir, I think the single biggest achievement of our constitution has been that it has managed to survive. It has managed to survive, sir, despite some challenges it faced during some emergencies. It has managed to survive despite it being tested during a long coalition period when the country came out democratically rich. Sir, it has continued to serve the country most positively. Sir, while we speak of the new Parliament House and where the functioning may shift, sir, I remind myself that we belong to the Rajasabha, which is a continuous house and we are serving under a constitution which is a continuous document. So, both of these are going to be permanent features, sir, that would possibly guide the functioning of our house even in the new parliament. Sir, my passion with this constitution subject started with my reading of the Constituent Assembly debates, sir. Today's topic is Samvidhan Sabha and the constitution working for seventy-five years. Sir, every time I read the Constituent Assembly debates, they are an education in itself because the quality of debates, the kind of divergent views that were expressed in a very productive manner and the symbiotic manner in which the constitution came to be forged, sir, resulted in the most prolix constitution and the most living and breathing constitution, sir. So, in my view, when someone says that the Indian constitution is possibly one of the most amended constitution with more than hundred amendments, it is a salute to the constitution that the constitution permits such changes to be made having regard to the diversity and the advances of the society. Sir, we have remained up to date with our constitution. It is possibly the most brilliant legal document that the world has seen, sir. Sir, in terms of the learnings and challenges, sir, I think we have completed seventy-two years of being a republic. We have completed more than seventy-five years from the time the Constituent Assembly originally sat to prepare the constitution document. Sir, I think when we now move into the new house with possibly new infrastructure and digital infrastructure, sir, we may have to be mindful of a few challenges we may have having regard to the learnings of the past. Sir, one of the challenges that I would be looking at and I, I'm quite sure, sir, the government would steer us through these challenges, would be the role of states. Sir, I would like to just, maybe, sir, my inexperience and my green eyes, it, it allows me to see something where I find that Rajasabha increasingly is becoming like an eco-chamber of the Lok Sabha where we debate the same issues on the same footings and on the same concerns. Sir, we are a council of.